Pastor Jason Spencer of Image Church. And following the invocation, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We affirm over our police chief that he will receive the blueprint that is needed in this season of lawlessness, that he will be empowered by you in his decision making regarding the assignments of the men and women who protect us. We affirm over councilmen and women that they will be united for what is best for their communities. They will also gain new strategies to rebuild and to engage those individuals in their sphere of influence. We thank you, Father, for this open season, a season of change, a season of hope, a season of unity, and a season of renewal. We thank you. Amen.
Amen, Pastor. Councilor Maxwell, I believe you were the last one in school, so if you go ahead and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're moving on to the, approving the agenda. City Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes. For the public's knowledge, we do have Spanish, Mong, and Punjabi translators available. Also, there was a special meeting notice that was posted for today's meeting under consent. File ID 21-23120. Actions pertaining to Overstreet Lighting Project to the Tower District. These are sponsored by its councilmember Soria and councilmember Arias. The following items are being requested to be removed from the agenda with no date return. File ID 21-23113, Item 1I. Resolution to authorize the dissolution of the Capitol Project Oversight Board is being requested to be removed from the agenda indefinitely by Councilmember Asparza. File ID 21-23089, Item 1T. Approve an agreement with Wallace, Roberts, and Todd is being requested to be removed from the agenda indefinitely by Councilmember Maxwell. The following items are being requested to be pulled from the agenda to a future date. File ID 21-22923, Item 1L. Actions pertaining to the vehicle mileage, miles traveled is being requested to be pulled and continued to August 19th by Councilmember Maxwell. And the following items are being requested to be pulled from consent calendar and moved to contested consent for further discussion. File ID 21-22977, Item 1D. Actions related to the third agreement to the Food and Beverage Concession Agreement is being requested by Councilmember Maxwell. File ID 21-22871-01, Item 1K. Resolution adopting the submission of substantial amendment 2020-01 to Fiscal Year 2020-2021 Annual Action Plan is being moved from consent calendar to contested consent by Councilmember Maxwell. And File ID 21-23032, Item 1S as in SAM. Award requirements contract for custodial services is being removed from consent calendar and moved to contested consent by Councilmember Maxwell. Those are the changes.
Okay, Clerk, so I have Items 1I and 1T being continued indefinitely, and I have 1L, 1D as in dog, 1K, 1S as in SAM, being moved to contested consent.
Item 1L is being moved to August 19th at the request of Councilmember Maxwell.
Got it. Okay, do councilmembers have any additional changes to the agenda?
Council President.
All right, so I have Tyler Maxwell punched up first.
Thank you, Council Vice President. I just wanted to make a point of clarification on Item 1T. That's the agreement with WRT for the Parks Master Plan. I just think there was a miscommunication last time I had tabled it so that the administration could talk to the Parks Committee. They did reach out to the Measure P Commission, but I would specifically like for a meeting amongst the council subcommittee, and I would be amenable to maybe placing this on a special council meeting if there's an urgency involved, but I do think that the committee should have that due diligence of having the contractor or the WRT folks talk to the subcommittee, go over the scope of the project before the formal vote.
Yeah, Council Vice President, we would agree, administration would agree, and I do apologize to Councilmember Maxwell. I heard commission, he said committee, and that was on me, so the commission has seen it. Now we want to bring it to the committee for the committee to see it, and I appreciate that we'll work with the Council President to look at scheduling a special meeting so we could get the contract approved and move on for the Parks Commission.
Sounds good. I'm sure there's no shortage of work here. I'm sure we can cobble together a special meeting next week, no problem. Councilmember Soria, you're punched up.
I did want to pull item, I believe it's 1M from consent to contested consent, which is related to the local housing trust fund. Was that pulled?
Is that 1N or 1M?
1M as in Mary.
Okay, that was not pulled yet.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bretfield, you were punched up.
Yes, I wanted to pull Item 1G and Item 1L.
So Item 1G and Item 1L is being continued already to the following meeting.
Oh, both of them?
No, just 1G, you pulled that now? That's, we're gonna hear that on contested consent. 1L has already been continued to the following meeting.
So 1G.
Just 1G. Councilmember Arias?
Thank you, Council. I want to table Item 1J as in Jack, so that staff has the opportunity to provide the council the usage of employees of this program. I'd like to see some data of how many employees are actually using the program. I haven't seen it yet.
Oh, I believe that was sent last night to you. Obviously, you haven't had a chance to see it yet, so that's fine.
What about if we just pull it for contested consent? And you can present the information then?
That would be great.
Okay, so Item 1J to contested consent.
I do want to also pull to contested consent 1H.
Okay.
Additionally, 1N as in Nancy.
Okay.
And 1W.
Why even have a consent calendar? All right.
Thank you, Council President Chavez.
Asparza, wrong Latino member. Councilmember Karbasi.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. In light of the, all the items pulled, I do have a request. We have an item on general administration, 3A and 3B. Two items, but really it's going to be one issue. I was wondering if we could possibly hear those before contested consent. Some folks from the community and some folks from the development side may want to comment, and I don't know how long some of these items are going to take.
This is 2A and 2B?
3A.
Oh, 3A and 3B.
If the colleagues have no objection. They both relate to development in the Sierra Sky Park area.
Sure, okay. Yeah, we can go ahead and do that. You anticipate that'll be a pretty long item?
No, I think it'll be a quick item. We can get out of the way, just the folks who want to participate, anticipate contested consent, and the other items are going to be pretty long.
Yeah, it got pretty long. Yeah, we can accommodate.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other changes to the agenda? I don't see anybody else punched up. And just to clarify, the special meeting that was announced by the city clerk, that is going, it is a consent item, so we're not hearing that on its own, that it's going to be included when we vote on consent. All right, I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second. All right, roll call.
Councilmember Soria?
Yes.
Councilmember Karbasi?
Aye.
Councilmember Maxwell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bretfield?
Yes.
Vice President Asparza?
Aye.
And Council President Chavez?
Yes.
All right, we have the agenda. Now we'll move on to ceremonial presentations. First up, we have a proclamation for Cambodia's Day of Remembrance, and that is sponsored by Councilmember Karbasi.
Thank you, everyone. If we can be joined by Corporal Danny Kim and members of the community, come up to the podium. Good morning, colleagues. Mayor, thank you so much for joining us today. Corporal Kim, congratulations on the promotion. Chief, thank you for that. You know, Cambodian Day of Remembrance usually is May 20th, but every day is another day where we have to acknowledge that we have special populations in our community, like the Armenian community that faced the genocide, and our Cambodian community faced genocide as well at the hands of the Khmer Rouge, where over a million people were killed. And we're very proud that despite all the heartache and challenges you faced, you've made Fresno your home, and your children are making Fresno their home, and that's continuing. And we have some of our elders here, and I only mean that out of respect, not age. And thank you so much, and we look forward to hearing from you, and then our clerk will read into the record our proclamation. Corporal Kim?
Thank you. First and foremost, thank you, the council, for giving us this opportunity to recognize the Cambodian Khmer Rouge survivor. Having with me here, I have all the elders, those who survived the Khmer Rouge regime, including myself. We survived three years, eight months, and 20 days of the Holocaust, so to speak, but we have a death camp in Cambodia. We were evacuated, so this is history in the making for the Cambodian community in Fresno, as well as the folks throughout the United States. And thank you, Councilmember Karbasi, and all the councilmembers who allowed us this opportunity, and thank you so much, the community, for taking the time to have this honor.
Good morning. My name is Supet Ranu. I'm working behalf of Cambodian in Fresno area, and then I would like to thank the city council, Luis Charey. Is she now?
He's on Zoom. He's here, he can hear you.
Okay, thanks. And then thank to me here, and Chief, and everybody in here. I am the one that survived from the Khmer Rouge too, from April 17, 1975 through January 7, 1979. That my life risked during that time. I cannot live with my family. I need to lie. I cannot tell them the truth, because I was a student during that time. They want to kill all the students, teachers, and government officials. So my family was government official. So I need to hide everything, not my background, just my words, and need to lie to them too. Thank you very much for you letting me today in the City Hall. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone here. First, I would like to thank Mayor Dyer and all the city council that recognized the Cambodian worst killing field. And I would like, you know, the US government to recognize like Armenian genocide also, because that's one of the worst in the last centuries in the world history. Thank you so much.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much. Thank you, the whole council here, and Mayor Dyer. Thank you very much for making this day a Cambodian remembrance. My name is Setan Nim, and I survived the Khmer Rouge. I'm the youngest one in the family of 10, and I was separated during the Khmer Rouge from my family since 1975, when I was about six years old at that time, working in the hard labor. And 1987, I mean, 1981, we came to the United States. I came with my step-parents after living in the refugee camp escaping from the Khmer Rouge. And 1987, when I graduated from high school here, I just found out that half of my siblings, which means five of them were killed during the Khmer Rouge. So right now, I still have half of my families, but most of them are in Cambodia. I'm the only one that is biological, well, my biological sister is here in the United States. When we came to, 1981, came to the United States, I didn't know even my sister was here in California until I wrote a letter to look for my family members in 1987, and I found out that my sister also lived in California in Long Beach, so that's how I met my sister. We were separated. I mean, if you, if you ask for any Cambodian families here in Fresno County, you, you will find out that most of them have lost their family members during the Khmer Rouge. I would say at least 95% of them, they will tell you that they have lost family members. So today is very special for us that the city council recognizes us the Day of Cambodian People Who Survive from their regime, and we appreciate that very much. Thank you, Mr. Karbasi, for putting this together. Thank you so much, and thank you, Danny, for inviting us and let us be here. Thank you so much.
So while we have the clerk read this into the record, if my colleagues want to come up for a photo with the group, and any comments you want to make, Mayor, if you would join us. And thank you all for sharing. I know how difficult it can be, but we have to remember our history, and thank you for the call for the US government to recognize the killing fields.
Whereas the National Day of Remembrance, formerly called the National Day of Hatred, which falls on May 20th, is an annual event in Cambodia. It commemorates the Cambodian genocide of the Khmer Rouge regime that ruled the country between 1975 and 1979. It became a national holiday in 2018. The annual observance marks the day in 1975 when the communist regime of Pol Pot and Khmer Rouge began the mass killings of Cambodian genocide. And whereas the Cambodian genocide was a result of a social engineering project by the Khmer Rouge attempting to create a classless agrarian society, the regime would ultimately collapse when the neighboring Vietnam invaded, establishing an occupation that would last more than a decade. And whereas, and whereas lasting for four years, the Cambodian genocide was an explosion of mass violence that saw between 1.5 and 3 million people killed at the hands of Khmer Rouge. The Khmer Rouge has taken power in the country following the Cambodian Civil War. During the brutal four-year rule, the Khmer Rouge was responsible for the deaths of nearly a quarter of Cambodians, including ethnic minorities, Buddhists and Cam Muslims died under the regime. And whereas, the terror and widespread violence of the regime in 1970s has been compared to prior egregious acts from regimes in the early 20th century, but has received less recognition globally. Cambodia's National Day of Remembrance reminds Cambodians of the dark mark on the country's history and hopes to bring it to light globally of the atrocities. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Jerry Dyer and the Fresno City Council members do hereby recognize Cambodia's Day of Remembrance.
Thank you, Clerk. One last picture with the chief, and then we're good. Thank you. Well, you don't want to stand with us? Thank you so much, everyone. Want to do one more? Okay. You guys can photobomb this photo. Come on, let's do this. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Chairman.
Fantastic. Thank you all for being here. So now we're going to turn to the city clerk for recognition of our summer employees of the quarter recipients.
Thank you. The following are the Summer EOQ Award recipients. From Airports Department, we have Elizabeth Salinas and Brandon Gilson. From the City Attorney's Office and the Code Enforcement Department, we have Tina Griffin and Pamela Madewell. From Finance Department, Zarina Lozano and Aaron Smith, or excuse me, Aaron Evans. From Fire Department, Brian Price. From Public Utilities, Matthew Borunda and Sandra Samora and Chombo Pompak. From Personnel Department, Blair Nelson. From Information Services Department, we have Robert West. Planning and Development, Samba Rooks and Marcela Martinez. From Police Department, Ross Teraguchi, Mamprit Appal, Jeffrey Delagardo, Soufania Sina Savisuk. And from Public Works Department, Rudy Yabara, Hugo Mendoza, John Lowe, John Stanbolian. And from Transportation Department, we have Ray Ramos, Belinda McMillan Hayner, Linda Taylor, Aubrey Strapp. And from Parks, Francesca Edson. Congratulations to those who have won the EOQ Summer Awards.
Thank you, Clerk. Congratulations to all of our Summer Employee of the Quarter recipients. Now we'll move on to councilmember comments. We'll go ahead and go in numerical order. Councilmember Soria, you are up.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Just a couple announcements. One, I want to thank the Public Works staff and folks in the mayor's office who have helped us to, for tomorrow, we're going to be seeing the reopening of the Tower District Streetscape Construction Project that has been happening. That has been three years in the making, so I do want to thank the staff that started and when we applied for the federal grant. We see that the construction is going to make a tremendous difference in the Olive Avenue Corridor, and also just all the beautifying efforts that my office and Councilmember Arias has partnered up with, with even our own council district money to beautify that neighborhood with art and overstreet lighting, which is included in this agenda. The other thing I wanted to just say on that event, we invite folks to come out to the ribbon cutting. It is happening on Saturday at 6:00 PM, when we are also going to be doing some painting of the crosswalks or repainting to do the retouch that evening, so we invite folks to come out, sorry, actually tomorrow, to do that, and then on Saturday at 2:00 PM for the ribbon cutting and reopening of Olive Avenue. We encourage folks to come out and support all the small businesses that continue to stay open and are looking for your support. And I think those are all the, the events that we have coming up, but I do want to also just share, we had a community meeting for a park that we're trying to build in the Fresno High area. It was very well attended. We want to thank our parks, staff, and also Public Works for coming out and making a presentation and hearing what the community desires and their vision for that area. So we're looking forward to continuing in the process and making that pocket park, which is highly needed in one of the areas that is considered a desert when it comes to green space. And I do want to thank my colleagues for supporting those efforts through the budget process and as we move along in designing that project and making it a reality. Thank you.
Councilwoman Karbasi? Councilmember Arias?
Thank you, Council President. For the record, since Councilmember Chavez isn't here in person, I'm going to do a lot more complaints than thank yous, but it's been a long couple of weeks since we last met. A couple of friends. First, let me start off with thanking Ryan. He's a gentleman who's keeping us safe here. He also cleans our offices in the morning, disinfects every doorknob, every door handle, every inch of this chamber, so if we remain safe, it's because Ryan has made sure that he puts himself at risk for our safety, so please, as you're in the audience, follow the rules and make sure we keep each other safe. On the homeless front, we've been working with the administration to get the intersection of Los Angeles and California cleaned up. It's become a very dangerous situation for the neighbors, and I've received the commitment of the city manager that that area will be cleaned up over the next, within seven days after the police department's done doing their work. I also want to make sure that the public knows that although we celebrate the small wins and being able to clean up the freeways, that the off-ramp program is not meant to be a solution to homelessness. It's a solution to the freeways, and it's been successful, and we're happy with that. We now have to move on to the neighborhoods, and we need to do so before kids start walking to school in the next couple of weeks. So I am going to be a lot more impatient now, city manager and mayor. When I, we've allowed these encampments to exist during the pandemic. We knew that we're getting motels open and operational. We've acquired a couple more motels. Those are being renovated as we speak, but once we have those rooms secured, we really have to make sure that the neighborhoods, the parks, the schools, the safe routes to schools are clear of homeless encampments, because our kids should not have to return to walking to school and have to walk through what we've seen over the last couple, few months that we've gone through this pandemic. So if I'm a little more impatient with your staff, no, it's for a reason. I drive, bike, and walk those neighborhoods every day, and over the next two weeks, my routine has been a month before school starts, I visit every single school before it opens, make sure that those routes are safe, that the curbs are freshly painted, that parents know which stop signs and intersections are lit up. It's also critical, I think, that our city staff really prioritize all these new intersections that we're putting up near schools, that they be operational at least a month before school starts, because it's really hard for parents to get used to a new traffic signal the day before, the first day of school. So I'll be sending you all a bunch of requests over the next few weeks as I do the school site visits and just get ready for the influx of seen bus, buses roll down the streets, and kids walking and biking to school. On the vacant building ordinance, as you probably heard, we started the first inspection of our own, city-owned building. We've identified a few items that need to be addressed, reactivating the alarm system in the Gochaks Building, operationalizing the fire suppression system. If that building goes on fire without a fire suppression system, it threatens all the adjacent buildings, as well as resecuring it, because there's clear evidence of people living inside the building. I know the city manager and the mayor are working on bringing it to council as a surplus, but we just have to, this is a reminder that we need to reassess all our buildings. I also have a city-owned building, the Old Fire Station in West Fresno, that has been abandoned for years now. It's boarded up, the roof is caved in, and it's an ice horn, it's adjacent and attached to a school site. So this is time for us to reevaluate all our vacant buildings and make sure that we're either getting rid of them or redeveloping them to some useful purpose and not just letting them, you know, deteriorate away. Neighborhood improvements. This year, we allocated a record amount of money for neighborhood improvements. We're starting to submit our project proposals to Public Works, and we're starting to hear that some of these projects, even though they're show already today, may not be done for at least a year because of the, they're short-staffed, and I'm sure sidewalk folks are, got a lot of work to do, but it's my hope that we would have staffed up to make sure that all these projects get done, because I don't want to have to be here this time next year approving carryover funds for things that we promised a year before, and it's just a matter of, you know, not having Public Works, not having sufficient staff in Public Works to get those projects accomplished. On the vaccine mandates and masks, our COVID committee, that includes the mayor and the manager, met on Monday, and there's a couple of, you know, challenging new facts that have come to fruition. As you know, the variant is active in Fresno. We are down to five available ICU beds in community hospital. They are beginning to convert their conference rooms to hospital beds again, and I don't want to have to, you know, see the trailers, you know, the freezers in the parking lot again and the makeshift hospital outside, because we're not taking any action. The vaccine rate of city employees is extremely low. Quite frankly, in my view, it's disgusting, when only a quarter of your employees that are essential to the running of the city have been vaccinated. I'm hoping that the city staff and the mayor figure out a way to, you know, work that. If not, we, this council have no other option but to consider mandating vaccines. If not, we, this council have no other option but to consider mandating vaccines as part of the employment and returning to work in this building. A lot of you, I'm assuming, have been vaccinated. That's why you don't have your mask. But we need to make sure every single able-bodied employee that's essential is vaccinated. If not, that we have an understanding of why they're not vaccinated. Because we have to be leading the effort of vaccinations, not be at the tail end of it. And then on mask mandates, I heard from the news yesterday that the mayor is indicating there'll be no mask mandate at this point. And what I'm trying to understand, city manager and mayor, is have we met with the public health officer? Have, has Dr. Vora officially advised us on whether we're ready for, to consider mask mandate to get in the city? I haven't heard from him in a while.
We, we are going to be setting up a meeting with the county health department. Greg just got back today. But we're going to be having that meeting. We know what our vaccine rate here is in Fresno, 56.4%. We know that we have 13 COVID patients in ICU beds, 18 ICU beds available currently. So we're following that. We were at, I believe, 5.5 per thousand, 100,000 population of positivity rate. So we're monitoring that very, very closely. I believe the state is double that. And so understandably so, why there may be some difference at the state level versus us. But we are going to be setting up that meeting with the county health department so that we can have a, not just a conversation, but to have a joint plan going forward as to how we deal with issues. Yesterday, the interviews with me with the media were strictly about employees, not about folks in the community. And it was about whether or not we're going to do any type of mask mandate here at City Hall for unva, or for vaccinated employees. And my answer was that we currently have a mask mandate for unvaccinated employees and visitors. But we have yet to mandate that for vaccinated and that we'll have those conversations shortly.
Thank you, Mayor. And just a reminder to the general public, Fresno, the city and the county have half the healthcare capacity of the state of California. So although they have a lot more capacity, we have a lot less and we saw that early on in the pandemic. I invite Dr. Vora to present to the COVID committee so that we all get the information and we can be on the same page. Because the last thing we need is more conflicting messages from the council and the administration. We'd love to be on the same page and be supportive of making sure, one, our city employees all get vaccinated. And two, that the general public, especially those hard-to-serve areas, get vaccinated. Because that's the ultimate protection during this pandemic. And then last thing, Mayor, Chinatown and Tower cleanup. So Soraya and I spend a lot of time getting dedicated and routine cleanups there. I know with our approval of Beautify Fresno, you guys are going to reevaluate how those cleanups are deployed. I just want to be crystal clear that routine cleanups of those two commercial corridors have been extremely important, given the propensity of homeless residents. I don't want to rely on volunteer efforts to give the routine cleanup to those two corridors. It's the routine cleanup that's kept the downtown Fulton corridor clean and we need to make sure that we do that. So as you guys develop your plans, I know our office and your office has a committee. You just want to be thoughtful of, volunteers are great, but they don't go after the real stuff that unfortunately exists in the city when it comes to trash and, you know, hygiene.
Councilman Arias, I want to add to that. I don't want any surprises on my end in terms of how you guys are rolling out, what you guys are planning to do in my area. Because in the budget, we were very specific in allocating dollars to continue the cleanup of Tower District and Chinatown. And we've developed a pilot project that has worked. So I don't see why it should be that difficult to kind of just continue that and continue to fund that. And I get it, we just passed the budget about a month ago. But we need to, if we want to make sure that the city continues to be clean, especially in these areas, we need to kind of get on it and, and, you know, continue with those, some of those contracts.
I'll let the city manager comment on the specifics. But I can tell you, city manager and I drove through Chinatown, all through Chinatown yesterday to look at the status. And so we've had conversations about how we're going to pursue those in every one of the districts. As you know, council district seven is a little bit unique with the pilot project. But we'll make sure we have a plan for you folks and we'll get it. But I'll let the city manager comment on it.
Yeah, so we had a meeting with the contractor that's working on Chinatown this week and just trying to understand, because we have now more resources. And so it's like, how do we really blitz the downtown area with these, not volunteer base, but with these resources? They've got trucks, they've got cleaners. We've got trucks now, we've got cleaners. So we're going to reconfigure, we're going to actually be able to provide a higher level of service in Chinatown than you get now. And then we got to meet with your contractor over in the Tower District as well. We just want to just understand their path, their routine and how they're doing. And so we'll adjust everything. But now that you guys have approved the resources for more equipment and staff, complement that with the contracts that we have with these two vendors, we're going to actually increase the level of service that we've been providing.
What's that timeframe?
So with the, with the contractor in Chinatown, we believe we can make that adjustment starting next week, what we want to do. And then we got to still meet with your contractor down in Chinatown, I mean, the Tower District about how we want to adjust it. So it'll be in the next few weeks that we're making these adjustments. Because they have active contracts, they have term dates on them, and then you guys approve the money. So we'll just put amendments on to keep them going.
Thank you. And in full transparency, Mayor and City Manager, I do intend to bring forward a recommendation to this body to mandate vaccines and/or testing for the unvaccinated, as other major cities have done. So I will wait for the meeting with Dr. Vora, for you all to go through your process. But the numbers have, you know, ballooned over the last couple of days. And it's one of those things that's going to require some immediate action. So.
Sure.
I, our next meeting is August 19th, so we have some time. But I do want to be very upfront and transparent with you all.
Yeah, and I think it's important to get to our city attorney to weigh in because we have a legal opinion that says we are not able as a city to mandate vaccines for employees at this point in time until we receive formal FDA approval beyond the emergency.
We can talk to, I don't want to discuss it right now, but we can talk to our city attorney later. But I will tell you, cities have done it, Department of Veterans of First has done it, hospital systems have done it. Those are all things that we'll discuss during our COVID committee so we can, you know, flush everything through. And then last thing, and this is just more of a general complaint, City Manager. You know, we've been working on this tower beautification for three years, as councilwoman indicated. And I have found it extremely frustrating on the amount of pushback that we get from mid-management and low-level staff when it comes to doing something as simple as putting up lights. Every week, it's a different obstacle. Every week, we have to pull in Andy Benelli, you know, Scott Moser to reinforce and reaffirm and reconfirm that this project's going forward. And what I struggle with, City Manager in general, is I find myself in this space on a constant basis. But I know we can do much quicker because we put up flagpoles in a couple of days. And I'm sure there was any permitting, there wasn't a whole lot of bureaucracy. So I just want to express my gratitude to the department directors. But my frustration with some rank and file who just find it a point to add one more obstacle to something that's existed there for years. The lights in the Tower District have been there for 10 years. Upgrading them to LED should not have been, requires a special meeting or multiple meetings over several months. So it's my frustration. And lastly, Mayor, I want to say thank you for standing with the governor and the rest of us with the signage of Assembly Bill 133. A lot of us in this city and county in the Valley benefit from the undocumented workforce and they've never had the ability to get healthcare. And this pandemic has demonstrated that they're essential workers. They're the backbone of the ag industry, which is a backbone of the city. And as people say, our jobs depend on ag. But as oftentimes missing is, ag depends on immigrants, especially undocumented immigrants. And so for you as a mayor to stand with the rest of us to ensure that another population is provided healthcare coverage, especially during a pandemic, is critically important. Especially because that bill also makes available $2 billion to actually house the mentally ill in our state. Ever since the dismantling of the mental health program by Governor Reagan, we've never recovered. And as we house thousands of homeless residents in motels, we have to be able to transition some of them to mental health facilities that still don't exist in this county. So to my friends on the board of supervisors, the money is there now, the excuses are gone. It's time for them to apply and commit to constructing mental health facilities to transition some of our homeless residents. If they don't, I think it's going to be on the city to step forward and apply for those funds. Because we can't allow Fresno County and the Valley to be passed up when it comes to state funding for mental health facilities that are desperately needed. If any of you have paid attention to a homeless challenge, a lot of severe mental health patients are the face of our homeless population. And some people have done wonders with being able to de-escalate, provide some support. But there is no facility in our county where folks can be transitioned to on a long-term stay. In this county, if you have a crisis, we'll support you for 72 hours. After that, you're on your own. And a lot of our residents on the streets are a reflection of that broken mental health system. And we need a dedicated facility in this county. So thank you, Mayor, for stepping up and being a mayor that governs and hasn't engaged in the ideological, political rhetoric. So I didn't vote for you, but if you keep it up, I might vote for you the second time.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I think what you just said is so important that got lost in the entire package, was the housing of folks that are faced with mental health. We've missed that for many, many years. And I think the focus on a lot of people was the, the medical assistance to those undocumented over the age of 50, 238,000 people in the state of California, but it's only 0.005% of our population. But I think the impact that we're going to see on mental health is going to be tremendous in the state of California. So thank you.
Councilmember Arias, is that everything? Oh, really? Okay. I can't wait for Brettafield. I think he almost had a stroke listening to you. Time for lunch. Yeah, let's call lunch break now. So we're going on to District Four, Councilmember Maxwell.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Good morning, everybody. I'll be a lot more succinct in my comments this morning. Couple of quick updates. This past Tuesday, my council colleague, Councilmember Sparza and myself, announced the hard launch of the City of Fresno's eviction protection program. Personally, this is something I think is going to be a game changer for the renters and the tenants in our city who make up over half of the population of Fresno and have often been at a disadvantage when it comes to their rights as tenants. What the eviction protection program will do is ensure that if these folks are being suspected of being unlawfully evicted, they will be provided with free mediation services and legal counsel, if that's something that they're interested in. And the hope there is to help in the long term, prevent homelessness, not on the back end, but on the front end. It's more cost-effective. We know it costs $3 to $5 million for every one of these motels that we're renovating to house a few dozen homeless folks. What the eviction protection program will do is ensure that these folks don't end up on the streets due to an illegal eviction. So if you're interested in applying for the program, you could do it over the phone at 559-621-8400. You could apply online at www.fresno.gov/epp. Or you could do it in person here at City Hall on the third floor, room 3065. Second quick update, next Thursday, or next Wednesday, at Melody Park off of Shields and Fowler, my office will be holding our first of three Beat the Heat events. This theme is going to be Welcome to the Circus. It's going to be from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. It's open to everybody, open to the public. We're going to have free food, water slide, face painting, carnival games, music by B95, and Pfizer vaccines for anyone 12 years or older. So we encourage everyone to come out and I want to thank our sponsors for the event. Calviva, Anthem Blue Cross, PG&E, and Donaghy Sales for helping ensure that we're able to do some outreach to the community, get people vaccinated, provide free food, and a good time for the neighborhood. And that'll conclude my remarks. Thank you, Council Vice President.
All right, we have Council President Chavez online. I think he's going to pass. Councilmember Brettafield?
Thank you. Yeah, I wasn't planning on making any comments, but I have to make some comments. First of all, I'm going to oppose any mandatory vaccine mandates for City of Fresno employees as I oppose any mandatory vaccines for people. People are smart enough to look out for their own healthcare and their own medical needs. They don't need government or any politicians, as we've seen over the last 15, 16 months, who are drunk with power, destroying their lives, shutting down their businesses, telling them, don't wear a mask, you don't need a mask, wear one mask, wear two masks, wear three masks, wear eye goggles, get a vaccine, you don't need a vaccine. So I would have hoped that we would have learned all of the mistakes over the last 15 months of how not to deal with a pandemic, from Dr. Fauci to politicians. But we haven't. And obviously, there's more to come. There are people who want to mandate masks. Again, whether you're vaccinated, remember we were told if you get vaccinated, you don't need a mask. Well, that goalpost has changed, all the goalposts have changed. We started some 16 months ago with just 14 days to stop the spread to, you don't need a mask, and then you do need a mask, and two masks are better than one. When the vaccines were being worked on, politicians who are now in power but weren't in power then said, don't trust the vaccine if it comes. Now they're in power, they say, trust the vaccine, get a vaccine. We encourage you to get a vaccine. Now it's a mandated of vaccines. By the way, this is still an experimental vaccine, not approved by the FDA. And again, I'm not anti-vaccine. If people want to get a vaccine, get a vaccine. They obviously have been very effective, but there are some people who don't want to get a vaccine and they should be able not to get a vaccine if they don't want. Government shouldn't be telling people what to do and what to put into their bodies. It just shouldn't be doing it. And we certainly shouldn't be doing it here at the City of Fresno. We had a four-color-coded system that was invented by Governor Newsom that went away in June. By the way, with the numbers that are going on now, we would actually, I'm told, be back in the red color-coded system, which would mean shutdowns. Thankfully, the governor is facing a recall, so he's not instituting that. And so people are still operating their businesses. There's been a lot of terrible things that have occurred as a result of this pandemic by government and government officials. Oh, by the way, all government officials, including those here, always got a paycheck, never lost a paycheck while they shut down everybody's businesses and they lost paychecks. Now we have people who are on public assistance, who are on unemployment. There are businesses who can't get employees because of government's mishandling of the pandemic. So I am not going to support any mandates of people injecting vaccines into their body if they don't want to have it. And that's not what we should be doing. I disagree with it wherever it's being done. And I think there are a lot of terrible things that are taking place in this country due to this pandemic and how it's being mishandled by government officials. So I would have hoped we would have learned something from the past. I suspect we have learned nothing from certain government officials. But I want to be very clear, I'm going to oppose anything as anti-American as forcing people to inject things into their body when they don't want it. This is still America, this is still a free country, and we need to oppose these kinds of mandates. If you want to wear a mask, and we have people in our audience who are wearing a mask, please wear a mask. If you need to be wearing a mask, wear a mask. But if you don't want to wear a mask, people should not be forced to wear a mask. And they should not be forced to have vaccines if they don't want to have vaccines. So I fear we're going down a path again that was destructive. We have forced children to be wearing masks when they're going back to school. I completely disagree with that as well. The, we already know from the science, and we always say the science, that children aren't significantly affected, but yet children are going to be forced to breathe in their own carbon dioxide throughout the day and all of these things that are not healthy for them, and yet that's, that's taking place as well. So we shall see where this goes, but I want to be on record since we're talking about that, that I oppose this. And as far as Dr. Vora, Dr. Vora has been wrong. He has taken his lead from the public health officer, Dr. Galey in California, up in Sacramento, who said that he misled the Californians and shut down restaurants because he wanted people to stay home. So he lost his credibility, Vora's lost his credibility, we know Fauci's lost his credibility. So it'd be nice to get back to some credibility and common sense. And that's what's been missing in this whole effort. So hopefully, we're not going to go down too mandating, but I think my colleague said that's what they're going to be pursuing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brettafield, sharing your thoughts. I think there was no doubt about where you I think there was no doubt about where you stood on that, but good to hear it. If you go back and listen to this, I was listening, it sounds like almost like a Dr. Seuss kind of book. You might have written one there. I hear they're in demand. Well, I'll save my comments for, I don't want to get too much of a back and forth. We got a lot of people here, discuss a lot of business. So I have my own thoughts on the COVID discussion, the vaccine discussion. But I think, it sounds like we have an item coming at some point where we're all going to get to, kind of go back and forth on that. I'll be last in our comments. And then we'll give the mayor and the city manager a few moments as well to give any updates. So tonight, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., we have the original District 7 Beat the Heat community events over at Romaine Park. We've been doing a lot of outreach in our district, but the entire community is welcome to join us. It will be a bit hot. The community pool should be open, and we will have water slide for the kids as well as different community resources and activities. So it should be a great time at Romaine Park tonight. And actually, it was Councilmember Maxwell, when he worked in my office, who again, put together the original D7 Beat the Heat. So good luck on your ones over East and D4 as well. Additionally, as far as events go, National Night Out is coming up next Tuesday, August 3rd. There are a number of different events across my district. If you are looking to get out and engage the community, reach out to your council member and find out where your National Night Out may be happening closest to your neighborhood. I'm sure all of us have several of them going on. And Mayor, I had a question for you. And this will be a good segue into your comments. But my last question and comment on my end was the 56% vaccination rate that you had brought up. That seems kind of generous. Was that county-wide folks who had gotten at least one shot? Or is that city residents only? Where was that coming from?
The 56.4% was the number of those that are eligible for a vaccine, which is 12, over 12, 12-plus age. So that was the number, 56.4 county-wide. And then in terms of people that are 65 and older, that number was just under 86% of people vaccinated in the county of Fresno. And I was updated earlier today, the numbers of this morning. So Monday, we were at 5.5 people per 100,000 population positivity. As of this morning, we are at seven. Oh, eight? Eight in the county of Fresno? So 8.4 of this morning, that's all facets jump from Monday.
Okay. All right. Well, that will conclude my comments, council comments. And again, I'll turn it over to the mayor and the city manager for their updates.
Let's keep it brief on my end. We, Saturday, we were in Councilmember Maxwell's district at Melody Park. We had a Beautify Fresno event with about 120 volunteers. And we also did a Lovele Park adoption by the 144th Fighter Wing. And they've agreed to, once a month, go out and keep that park clean. So 144th Fighter Wing, special thanks to them. We now have 330 of our youth who have been sent to Camp Fresno with day camp, the three-day camps. We have them up there right now. We have a handful of those left. And we anticipate we'll be up over 400 by the end of this summer. All of the 9,000 Chaffee Zoo tickets have been distributed, and they will be done by August 15th in terms of attendance. And those went to many of our, well, all of our underserved youth that we were able to provide them to and their families. So that will go through August 15th. And that is really it. I'll turn the rest over to the city manager.
Thank you, City Council. I wanted to update you on a few things. Just, we're starting the new year, just kind of getting you in the rhythm of some reports we're going to be sending out. So first ones you got, we're starting to give you the advanced piece quarterly reports on their progress to date and what they're performing. We gave you an update on the local housing trust fund. There were some questions from last meeting, so we gave you an update on just kind of where that is and what qualifies. How do we keep the dollars clean so they don't create, you know, prevailing wage issues or other issues? So we gave some guidance on that. Another one we'll continue to provide you is the progress report on our LTAs within the police department. So that'll be a routine one we'll start to continue to do. Gave you an update on our police fire, legal fireworks efforts during last year. So now we're going to take that, model it, and then see what we need to do for New Year's, and then get ready for the next Fourth of July. Quarterly report, again, you guys had asked for kind of continuous monitoring on our hiring activity for the police department, so we're continuing to do that as well. Give you those. Those will be reports you'll continue to get. The other one we had asked for, and we saw, was the economic incentive update. So we've talked about it before, but we do need to have a discussion about how do we want to revamp, revisit our economic incentive programs for economic development. So I look forward to having that discussion with council.
City manager, I do want to say thank you for that. For two years, I've been asking for the data on the $70 million incentives that we've given, and we've never received anything until now. So thank you for it. In my perfect world, we would also know where those folks were hired from. Either hired from Clovis or Badera versus Fresno. But, you know, you guys are doing a great job on the level of information you've provided to us.
Okay. And then we gave you an update on broadband access for some of our underserved communities. We're kind of going through, there's a consortium of public agencies in the county that are looking at that issue. And we'll continue to monitor that. We, you know, we have a good backbone network for our fiber optics, so it's just how do we leverage that and get it deployed out into some of these areas? And then I'm going to let Assistant City Manager White update on another item. But I do want to announce that on Friday, tomorrow, I will be issuing three preliminary approval letters for cannabis licenses on the retail side and six on the non-retail side. By ordinance, we are required to issue at least three cannabis licenses for the social equity applicants. And so those are the three that will be preliminarily receiving letters tomorrow, that they have been awarded a preliminary. They got to go through all their work, but three of them will go out tomorrow, and then the non-retail as well. So as we continue this, this is the start of the process to start rolling out these preliminary approvals for these folks. And then it's preliminary because they still got to go through background checks, CUP, they got to do a lot of other stuff. So I'll give you that update on the cannabis, and then I'll let Assistant City Manager White talk about an update on the tower.
Thank you. Two items. First of all, Councilmember Arias, with regard to the abandoned fire station in West Fresno, I just wanted to clarify for the record that the city no longer owns that property. It's my understanding that in 2017, it was sold to a private party. And I believe that, I understand from staff that that staff reported information was provided to your office last week. But so if, obviously, if there are issues with a privately-owned building, we should definitely be working with code enforcement on that?
Assistant City Manager, my understanding is we still retain ownership. We just leased it. So let's offline, because there's a lot of mixed messaging on that.
Okay, yeah, that's not our understanding. So certainly, we'll work on that offline. And then I did want to address your comments with regard to your tower light project and your frustration with the timeline on that. And I think that what the difference of this project was is this was not a public works project. This was a D1, D3 project. And I think that, no disrespect to you and your staff, but there's a lot of intricacies in doing a public works project. You know, there's insurance requirements, there's prevailing wage issues, there's, you know, all sorts of noticing traffic control. And as you know, when you get an item on the agenda to approve a public works project, the lead time is months long because of all of the hoops that have to be gone through. So on this project, you guys went ahead and moved forward to manage the project on your own, which you're entitled to. And obviously, when, you know, there was an issue that came up this week, because you have your contracting authority up to $50,000, when you got to the point of having to do some additional work, it bumped you up against the limit for the $50,000. So I think to the contrary, on Monday, that was brought to our attention and the City Attorney's Office's attention. And we were able to come up with a resolution, I think, within two hours in order for you to be able to get those lights installed. It was brought to us at 3:00 p.m. And it's my understanding, by that night, the contractor that you hired from San Diego that had already mobilized their crews here from out of town, was able to get that work done. So it was a little bit of a unique circumstance because it didn't go through the traditional process. And, but I do understand your frustration, but that was a little weird one because it was a project that you guys were managing on your own.
Assistant City Manager, what I would add is that the most recent challenge is just the straw that broke the camel's back for me. Because this project could have been led by Public Works, but it was requested that it not be a Public Works project. So we got to figure out, when there is a project that's an administration's priority, Public Works takes off and does it. When we have a priority that the council has funded and approved, we have to go through the process. And, I mean, I enjoyed the process because I got to see what every developer and applicant complains about. You know, the multiple hoops, and I get them. There's safety protocols, there's building code, all that kind of stuff. But we routinely get a second or third opinion that's opposite to the first approval that we had received on what the project was needed to be done. So we just got put to the wringer, which has given me a new appreciation for what people go through when they go through planning and permitting. And now I have firsthand knowledge and experience of it, and I don't want to repeat it. So I don't want to be in the project management business.
Yeah, we definitely would prefer that Public Works handle projects. So when you're, if you're being told that, I know that we don't want staff telling you, "No, we don't want to do this project. We want the district to do a project." That is incorrect. They have never been given that direction. And we would absolutely prefer, especially for something that's $126,000, that it be going through the formal city process. So please notify us if that should happen again, because that's not the direction that staff has been given.
City managers, so this project is unique that it started before you guys were in place. And the staff's been knowing that we've been working on this for years. So it did come to our surprise, the additional requirements that we had to do, which we didn't have a problem with, but they are kind of, you know, brought up last minute. And when we are trying to meet timelines and trying to work within the schedule that you guys set for the street scape, we wanted to make sure that we maximize the opportunity of the street closure. And so when requirements are kind of brought up at the, you know, 11th hour, to some degree, because we've been knowing we're going to do this project for over a year, way before your time. So it hasn't been a secret that this has been a project. It didn't come through Public Works because there hasn't been a priority from any administration to beautify the tower. It has really taken myself, and now Councilmember Arias, who has been supportive of my efforts, to try to beautify that neighborhood with our own district money. The City of Fresno, in terms of our general fund budget, when we look at the allocations, has not put one penny. It has to have, it has come from my infrastructure budget.
Right.
And so that's the challenge, that there hasn't been an administration that has championed the tower ever, at least in my time, while I've been in council. And so, yeah, so there's a little bit of frustration because we do feel like I have to lead the efforts to pay any attention to the Tower District when it comes to some of these smaller things.
Yeah, and I understand. And I think certainly from the funding, and I think our concern is when, whether it's your district budget funds or public work funds, obviously, they're public funds. And so we want to make sure that the public funds are being spent consistent with what the policies are of the city. So I'm glad that, I was actually very thankful that your office brought this to our attention because it was going, you know, it could have gone down a path that would have, you know, violated processes. That would not have been a good thing. So I'm very happy that once you cross to that, you know, 126 number that we were brought in. But understand and know that there are always going to be projects that you guys are going to fund out of your district budgets. But yes, we still do want to make sure that we're going through a process that staff is involved in to make sure everything's being complied with. So thank you, thank you, Councilmember.
All right, all right. It is now 10:07. I think we're finally going to get to our jobs and vote on something. So going to the consent calendar, I have so far from council members. We have items I, 1T, and 1L that are removed from the consent calendar. I have items 1D as in Dog, 1G, 1H, 1J, 1K, 1M as in Mary, 1N as in Nelson, 1S, 1W that are pulled for contested consent. Are there any other items? All right, great. I'm not sure we can handle any more. So before we actually vote on the consent agenda, we're going to open it up for unscheduled communication. This is probably a comment on the consent agenda, any of the items that start with the 1. The special meeting item, which is also on the consent agenda. Any closed session items. And again, just general unscheduled communication. So what I'm going to do is begin with Zoom. Here are a couple of folks on Zoom who are there. And then I'll go with our comment cards. And then anybody else who has not punched up or submitted a comment card will have the opportunity to speak. So clerk, we're going to go ahead and hear the folks who are on Zoom first. So if you're on Zoom, be sure to raise your hand on Zoom, and we'll get to you first before we start with the comment cards. First up, we have Lisa. And given the number of cards that we do have, I'm going to limit the comments to one minute. You might have about 10 seconds of a leeway before I cut you off. But let's all try to be respectful and give everybody the equal amount of time. So we'll do one-minute comments today. Lisa, you are up.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Lisa. Lisa, you muted yourself, I believe. There you go.
Hi, Nelson?
Yeah, there you are.
Can you hear me again?
Yes, please begin.
Oh, no. Okay. All right, first off, I'm Miguel Arias's office for Dog Park. And going forward with that, I would like to go to Soria and Arias for Olive Avenue. I am looking forward to the opening. I'm so jazzed, so excited. And also, thank you, Representative of District 1, that I've seen in a very long time. Your public outreach and public participation is an excellent example. Now I want to go on to face masks. We're at 46% vaccination in Fresno County. And the big question is, what happens after the Delta variant? What happens when Lambda comes to visit? And then what happens when Escalon comes to visit? I think that we should be face masking all the time until this thing is done. Because the only way you can eradicate COVID is by getting the inoculation rate up. And I would hope that the city, and in fact, I would encourage the city to mandate full vaccination of their staff. Because there's only two reasons why a person would not be vaccinated.
Lisa, can you conclude?
That is religious reasons and a medical reason. That's it. Those are the only two outs, Scott.
Thank you, Lisa. Next up, we have Brandy. You have one minute.
Okay, well, one, I do want to mention that it is when people are preparing for two or three minutes. That is unfair to move it to one. I want to continue to ask, as you guys are talking about areas to clear for the homeless, that you consider, that you ensure that when you are clearing people, that there's a place for them? And also consider that there are people outside your project areas who have been left behind. I want to read something from a post, someone commented on your live feed today and said, "I am a homeless, I am homeless with a baby in NICU that will be discharged with medical equipment. All shelters are full. I've been staying in my car. All I wanted was an opportunity to acquire low-income housing. I've tried to get help practically everywhere, and no one, there is nothing." I want to read a text I got months ago from someone I've been working with for a year. "Please know that everything, I know everything's full, so is there anything someone can help me with? My brother, please, I'm desperate. He had, they need to get us out of here. He has got diabetes. I don't know what to do. I want to give up." I spoke recently with a 70-year-old veteran who served two tours, who wants housing, and he is not on your path with a project and needs to be included. I spoke recently to a group of people who said outreach went out to them, got their names, but nothing happened. And I know outreach workers are being sent, but can't do anything for them if there's no shelters. And as these motels are opening, they aren't being considered. So I ask that you could stop the sweeps and also consider those who are outside these project project areas that aren't on school paths that need housing.
Brandy, can you conclude? We're past the minute now.
Okay. That'll be all for today.
Thank you. Next up, we have Griselle online.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, you have one minute to speak. Thank you.
Hi. Right now, I'm at the Pavarello House looking for a shelter for myself and my daughters. There, everything is full. The family navigator, family navigator, has reached to Visalia Madera for me to actually stay in a shelter for my kids. I have a baby that's in NICU that will be discharged in a couple of weeks. Where am I going to go with him? The shelters are full. I was a working mom. My son was born premature in March 22nd, at 25 weeks, one pound, three ounces. I stayed with him during his NICU stay at the charity house. I tried to apply for county services for homeless assistance, but Fresno shut me down because the charity house resides in Madera County, and they forced me to apply for Madera County benefits. So neither county wants to assist me. My FMLA has expired. The only resource that I will have from now on is $51 from SSI for my son. How are you guys preventing homelessness? How are you guys helping this shelter with the people when there is no more shelters, like for myself? I need help. I reached everybody that's possible. I reached Fox, and somebody said, Liz told me, that a council member would reach out back to me, and nobody did. I have CRA on my case right now because I feel like nobody helped me. A lot has happened. My son has diaphragm paralysis, and he's a rare case in NICU. And he has finally reached nine counts, has had pneumonia, has had all the machines possible to survive. I advocated for his life, but what kind of life am I going to give him if I am homeless now? When I was working as an admin assistant, making more than $36,000 a month, single mom, never received food stamps or low-income housing. Now that I'm on a waitlist for everything, and nobody can help me, and I was living here in Fresno, and I'm walking through the Pavarello House right now. And all I want is help.
Griselle, you're online, so you know, typically we'd have somebody probably come down and grab your information. But what I'm going to do is have the city clerk collect your information via the Zoom.
Council President, we got her number from some folks, and we just send it to HB's, and HB's can follow up with the person.
Yeah. They're about to send me to Visalia or Madera, but that's not fair. And I keep saying, I was a Fresno County resident. I was homeless after giving birth.
Yeah, Griselle, you'll be hearing from our city folks here. Thank you for sharing your story, the courage to share. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President, can I just interject quickly? And I don't know where the mayor went, but again, I think this is a clear example of the importance of why we need to prioritize, no, I just saw him, why we need to prioritize our shelters for our family and children. That is my priority. And I've been, I think every other week while we're up here, I'm stating that. And I get that you have your initiative of getting people off the highways and so forth, but we need to expand in whatever shape or form as we're putting together, you know, the future rehab of, you know, these low-barrier shelters that these families and kids get prioritized. It's time. I don't want to hear another Griselle, you know, who is a, you know, formerly working mom, single mom, having to call us desperately because she has nowhere to go. So I think we need to reevaluate our priorities as a city.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Soraya. All right, going to move on to our cards now. So I have a stack here of, again, folks who want to speak on unscheduled communication, our consent items. If you have not submitted a card, no worries. As soon as we get through the cards, you will have the opportunity to speak. Again, we have a one-minute limit this morning. And first up, we'll have Ricky Goodwin.
My name is Ricky Goodwin. I live at 1111 North Sherman Courts, apartment 742. And I want to complain about, can you stop and talk to our manager so we can keep our place clean? Because kids keep it dirty out there. Because every time I call the manager, he do not come and do his job to see how the apartment looks. If you go over there right now and look, see how strict the apartment is, you'll see. Then if you go over there and see where I live at, you see how clean it is. Somebody needs to go out there and talk to the manager, call him up. Because every time I call the police, they make a complaint about the people over there, they always tell me to talk to the manager. Police say they can't do nothing, but the manager can, but he'll never show up. I call him on the phone, he never answered. I leave answering, answering on the service, he never called me back. He should. I've been living out there over 15 years, paying my rent, everything. I don't bother nobody out there, but they bother me.
Sir, what's the address, what's the address again?
1111 North Sherman Courts.
Say that again.
1111 North Sherman Courts.
Thank you. That may be something our code enforcement can help with. Councilmember Arias will get that into the right hands.
Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker is going to be Michelle. I cannot, the last name's not legible. Start with the D. Michelle, you are next.
First off, I am a human being, just like everybody else that has a roof over their head.
Michelle, can you speak into the, bring the microphone down, and yeah, you have a minute.
Okay. First off, I'm a human being, just like everybody else that has a roof over their head, okay? I'm from Massachusetts. I've been put in fear, controlled, raped. My car literally set on fire, lost everything. I was majoring in criminal justice, broke my leg, can't run, can't bend my ankle. They just sent my dog, injected him with methamphetamine. I've been to Hope, I've been to MAP, I haven't called the chief of police when he was mayor, when it was dire, who I met at a traffic banquet when I was trafficked out here, too doped out and trafficked. Call me if you ever need anything. Call him, call him, call him. No message returned, even when he's now mayor. He don't call me. I sleep on the ground like an animal. I piss and shit on the ground like an animal. If it wasn't for this new chief that allowed me to stay in a tent in front of the police department, I don't know where I'd be. And I still get harassed every night. I thank God I'm not using drugs or drinking. You can't look down on people like that. We're all human beings, and we deserve the right to have a roof overhead, especially when you can't even defend yourself when you're from another state. If I could get home right now, I would. But I ended up troubled for being with the wrong person, which I am now going through a divorce with. Almost killed my dog, almost killed me, strangled me twice, had to revive me. Killed my baby, beat me so bad I couldn't get out of bed for a week. Beat me on a daily basis. Whenever I go to the police or anything, I get no help. When are you going to help me? I'm a human being. They're human beings. No wonder why we're living the way we're living, because you're judging us, because you're profiling us. Why don't you get to know us, know why we're out there? I'm not out there by choice. I bet you half of them are not out there by choice either. We deserve rights too. I deserve to feel safe not having anybody in this state. Nobody. And I got to deal with it every day. And with the broken leg and screws coming out, I still push and push and push on, because ain't nobody going to do it for me. I have rights, and I deserve a roof over my head. And if I don't get one today, where I can be safe till I get my stuff done and go home to my ill-dying mother, I'm going to take further action, because I'm tired. I'm tired. I'm begging, and begging, and begging, and begging for help. I'm 53 years old, and look at me. I don't dress like this. I thank God my dog's alive. How am I going to defend myself? How am I supposed to run? I can't even walk.
Michelle, it's, the one minute has passed. Do you want to wrap up if you're, if you're finished?
I've been doped out, I've been trafficked on those streets. I had to sell my ass on those streets.
Mr. Vice President? Thank you.
Let's see how many, let's see how many human beings have had, because I had to get on the barber phone, 559-703, no, 30, what's my number? 307-3838. Let's see if I get a roof over my head today. Let's see if anybody cares.
Michelle, can I ask you a question real quick, if that's okay? First of all, can we get you anything? Would you like water or a tissue or anything right now?
Did you? No, I want a roof over my head.
Well, that's what I want to talk to you about.
I want to feel safe.
Michelle, do you have family, you said your mom, in Massachusetts though, right?
Yes. I'm a dying mother, but I have a 12-hour community, a 12-hour DUI thing I have to fix. I have to go to Harvard. This doesn't happen to me until I met this asshole. I got to get a divorce from him.
Right. The question I want to ask, we have some folks that are willing to help. If we helped you and your, what's your dog's name?
Shadow.
Shadow. Go back to Massachusetts to be with your mom. Is that something that would help you?
Really?
If you need help getting back.
And then you can come get me on a warrant for 12-hour DUI class.
Okay. Yeah, Councilmember, I appreciate your inquiry. Maybe you continue offline.
I would love to go with my mom.
Yeah, we're going to move on to the next speaker. Thank you, Michelle. Our next speaker is going to be Carla.
Good afternoon, councilmembers, mayor and staff. My name is Carla Martinez, and I'm a policy advocate with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. We are glad to see the city take the first step in alleviating the housing crisis in Fresno by formally establishing a local housing trust fund. This will allow millions of dollars to go into alleviating the housing crisis in Fresno, and the city will now be in compliance with program number five. However, the current project being proposed for the local housing trust fund lacks the initiative to make significant strides in addressing the housing shortages and leaves existing units behind. We ask the city to expand the local housing trust fund programs and include the following programs: housing rehabilitation programs, first-time homeowner assistance programs, acquisition of abandoned buildings and underutilized lots, housing rights education, and eviction protection program, tenant assistance, and temporary housing, and community oversight. We hope to continue working with the city and see these programs implemented in order to alleviate the housing crisis and keep Fresno housed. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. Next up, we have Fernando Paul Elizondo. Welcome, Fernando. You have one minute. Thank you.
Hurry up, my minute's going fast. Hello. I'm here because I see that there's an injustice to the homeless and to the city of Fresno taxpayers, which I am one of them. This so-called code enforcement of yours has turned into code extortion. It's all about money. Some of these people are out in the streets because of the code extortion, okay? And like this young lady said earlier, you guys never get back to nobody. I'm one of those that you never got back to. But help is on the way. My next step is going to the Federal Bureau of Investigation. There's too much conspiracy going on here. And this is it. I gave you guys a chance a year ago. Nobody does nothing. Everybody just pushes it along, like Mr. Cassadian wants to send her abroad, get rid of her, hide her. That's not the issue. That's not the way you handle things. You got to take care of these people like you would take care of yourself. You said the people in Washington didn't miss any paychecks. Did you guys miss any paychecks? I don't think so. Right? All right then. So the main matter here is, either you do your job, or you go push hamburger, flip hamburgers or something that you can handle. And as far as the city attorney, you are in violation of the law. You're a city attorney. You should know the law. You're vowed to protect, and so have all of you. You should, if you're really supposed to protect the cities, the citizens of Fresno, you would take that vaccine because that would protect us. See? But you don't want to do it. Why? Or maybe you did do it for discouraging somebody else.
Fernando, the one minute's up. Finish up your comments, please.
Yeah, but what happened? Didn't you just say that this is America, freedom of speech? See, you can't even comply with your own things. See? This is freedom of speech, right?
We have the freedom, but we have, we're expecting everyone's time today to the best of our ability, given the many folks who want to speak.
Especially when it started getting hot. Help is on its way. The Federal Bureau of Investigation will have a grand jury indictment against you.
Thank you, Fernando. Looking forward to it.
Welcome, Dez. You have one minute. Thank you. Hey, unfortunately, because you marked it down to one minute, we have individuals that are going to go ahead and recuse their time to me, so I have enough time for my speech. Thank you.
How long, well, so are you speaking now, or?
I have four minutes.
You have four minutes?
I need four minutes.
Well, I'm not sure that's how it works. I mean, each person is...
Well, they're willing to give up their time. Everybody came here with their three-minute speech, but since it's changed after we walked in, they're willing to give up their time.
Well, that's, we're not yielding or transferring. I mean, each person is welcome to...
That's not fair. I don't get to, I don't get to speak then.
Dez, you're using up your one minute now. Am I going to go ahead and begin it?
No, I'm not using up my one minute. I just came up to let you know that they're going to recuse.
Well, you and everybody else who submitted a card or did not submit a card is welcome to speak for one minute.
Am I being denied to recuse the time, so I have enough time to speak? Here, I'll go ahead and speak. You can shut off the mic if you want.
Please speak.
Good morning. I am here today to demand shelter for all. What I mean for shelter is providing shelter for all individuals seeking shelter. Many of our unhoused residents in the inner city of Fresno have been left out of all of these motels that have been purchased. Any individual seeking shelter should be able to walk up to any low-barrier shelter and be able to have a safe place to stay. Currently, Project Off-Ramp only takes individuals living on the highway. This project started back in February, and today we are already coming into August, which means for five months, people have been neglected shelter in our own city. Our city is sending a message to our unhoused community that they need to go to an unsafe location in order to be sheltered. So we are here to demand shelter for all, not for some, not for a project, not for media attention. Shelter for all. I'm also here to demand to stop the sweeps because we do not have enough shelter beds and will not have enough shelter beds provided to all unhoused individuals in our community. If we do not have enough shelter beds available, our city shall not remove any unhoused individual from any public property. Cleaning up our city is okay. We can keep California clean, but stop making them move and stop forcing them off the highway just to seek shelter. Our city has enough funding to open up several assisted camps, which means many resources, staff, security, porta-potties, showers to be provided, and we're still waiting on that mobile shower. A safe gated location so individuals wanting shelter can be assessed and stay in a safe location until a shelter bed is provided. I am asking you to look into how much does the cleanup cost? How much, what is the bill for the past year? How many fires have we had in our cities? How many deaths have we had in our, on our city streets? How many calls have you had to our city's buildings' private property because of homelessness? How much property damage has been done to the city and to private owners? We can save the city money with assisted camps, so either you leave them where they are, or you provide a safe place. We need to look into how many beds we have available at our shelters, and if every single shelter is using every single room that was purchased with the state money. How many clients are per case manager? We are having a lot of individuals that are not being processed because the case managers are stating they have too many clients on their list, so they cannot process them in 90 days. When are we going to put security back at these motels? I have had several complaints of the individuals, especially at Days Inn, stating that staff and security are not there at night, which is allowing criminal activity to be performed on property at this shelter.
Dez, so the time is...
We do not have enough ADA rooms. We have a lot of individuals out here on the streets in wheelchairs and walkers, and we are not providing enough shelter space for the individuals at ADA.
I'm going to go ahead and call the cards in order.
...individuals offered shelter, and we do not provide a shelter bed. So shelter for all.
Thank you. So our next speaker is going to be Elizabeth. Elizabeth Lake.
Good morning. My name is Elizabeth Lake. I'm here to fight for this housing because I have a voucher that I'm sitting on right now, and Fresno is the worst place. I've been fighting for different departments. They deny my housing voucher. They potentially put me, like, if I'm a drug addict, alcoholic, I don't do any of that, and I just got out of a domestic violence. I don't do any of that, and I just got out of a domestic violence. Due to my domestic violence, I've been cow surfing, and I am demanding help for housing. I have a voucher that in less than 30 days, I'm gonna be in the street once again. My voucher supposed to have been- The funding was supposed to have been in December. Obviously, it is ending August 26th. I am literally fighting for housing right now. It's not fair for any of us, whether it's the people in the street or myself. It's not fair because they mark us like we're bad people, and all we do, all we want is a chance. That's it. Give us a chance. And I got out of my domestic violence because of the drugs that my ex-husband was doing, and I'm not dealing with abuse. So I just demand housing. If you guys can help. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Ricky Sherman, are you still in the audience here today? Ricky, who is on Sherman? Okay. All right, our next speaker is going to be- Let's see here. Josefa Vega.
Hi, good morning, Council. I'm a resident of District Seven, 93702. My name is Josefa Vega, and I'm here in support of Shelter For All to house our unhoused neighbors. I demand for fair and equitable housing now. Our neighbors have had to endure not only the pandemic but continuing rising temperatures with little to no support. In addition to housing, I demand the allocation of additional funding to support their mental health and provide substance use resources. Like the women mentioned, Michelle, she, all she wanted was support. These are human beings, and by us continuing to dehumanize them, by stripping them of their rights, by profiling them, we're part of the problem, and we're not addressing their immediate needs. There are vacant homes throughout Fresno that should be repurposed to house our neighbors. The solutions are crystal clear, and they should not be put off any longer. The housing crisis, as we know, is manufactured. We know that there are plenty of unoccupied houses in Fresno that can be repurposed and to serve our unhoused neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Josefa. Next speaker is Cheyenne.
Hi, my name is Cheyenne, and I am all for opening up the shelters to all the homeless. And I mean, Project Off-Ramp has been a benefit, but also has been a downfall because there has been many left behind on the freeways, and they're not sheltered. Yeah, I see it as this way. We get to go back into AC. We get to go back to a home where we can shower. They don't. They are out there, left in the heat. Hundred-four degrees. Guess how hot the pavement is? The sidewalk. I have seen some down in Chinatown that have been, that has nothing but just themselves sitting on a hot sidewalk. Would you guys like to sit on a hot sidewalk? I don't think so. Do you guys like your AC? I'm pretty sure you do. So just think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Ryan. Ryan's gonna be our next speaker. Ryan Rendall. Not the Ryan changing the mic. Yeah, Ryan, you're there. You might, you want to, you got something to say? I'm kidding. Welcome, Ryan.
Hello. I've spent the last few months driving around the scorching summer heat distributing waters and other necessary supplies for survival to our homeless community here in Fresno. During my time, I've seen people displaced from sweeps done by the city, sometimes losing all their belongings and leaving them without even the most basic shelter from the sun. For example, one of the men I've been seeing regularly, Douglas, had his tent, food, and all other belongings swept away in the police, when the police came through to clear the area. How do we plan to address the homeless crisis if while claiming to do so, we continue displacing them, which keeps us from getting them the resources they need to survive as well as place them in a housing? It seems counterintuitive to the goals we're hearing the city has for solving our community's homeless crisis, and I think many of us here would like to know if our community leaders genuinely believe that these sweeps are effective ways in caring for the homeless in Fresno. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Gordy.
I'm gonna close my eyes because I'm ADHD. You gave me a minute, so I just don't want to get unfocused. So I apologize. I am, my name is Gordy Ochner Bermudez, and I am a comeback story, just like Dez and a lot of people here who used to be homeless. I'm working on a nonprofit called Solutions For Dignity, and I believe that's what all these people are looking for, is dignity. I believe it's also really important, and I want to share that when you guys get up while the community is speaking, that you- We voted for you guys, and we're asking for your help. So when you're on your phones and you get up and you go to lunch, it takes away our dignity, and it affects us to come up here and not feel like we're heard. I also want to encourage for the sweeps to stop because you're affecting my friends who I work with daily on the streets. I do work with mentally ill in the- They're not all mentally ill. I just want to say that. I want to say that. We all have conditions in our lives, and so I just want to ask for whoever is helping the community really quick. My ideology is, really, coming to break anonymity is to come to the homeless. And I think Dezzy has presented too with the ideology of like AA and NA. You basically rehabilitate our homeless and ask them, and you help them to help the homeless. And it really has helped me, that worked to help me get me sober. Like you guys couldn't get me sober. The police couldn't get me sober. My family couldn't get me sober. But other people who experienced my trauma, my pain, could. And so I think that's what I'm asking for, is to be open to the people who may not have PhDs in what you have, but who definitely had PhDs in life, on life terms. So thank you.
Thank you, Gordy. Robert McCloskey. Robert?
I just want to go on record. Objecting to being cut to one minute. I think it's disrespectful and does reflect a historical negative judgmental attitude to those that are unhoused, and this has got to end. I just wanted to talk about costs. Not only the human costs, which we've heard a lot about today, but the cost to me as a taxpayer, as a property owner. The cost to me and other people that fund this city government, that is, the taxpayers of the city and county. We need to know how much is being appropriated to the Homeless Task Force, also known as the HART team, the actual budget and expenditures for 2021, 2022, the proposed overtime and actual overtime expenditures for this group, the organization chart, including vacancies for fiscal year 2021, 22, especially a copy of the policy and procedure manuals for the Homeless Task Force, and a list of all employees or job classifications of all city employees, contractors assigned to the Homeless Task Force. I have made this request formally on behalf of We Are Not Invisible. This is a request under the California Public Records Act. You will all copy that request. We need to look at the overall cost of emergency room visits, hospitalizations, the endless cycle for people being arrested for misdemeanors and then failure to appear. Very, very expensive to the city of Fresno. The money that could be saved by a Housing First approach in addition to temporarily establish some safe camps so people aren't living in such hazardous, dangerous conditions that leads them to emergency room visits, that leads them to being arrested for loitering and other things. This could save enough money to provide much more assistance for a Housing First approach. Everywhere Housing First has been implemented, that endless cycle of from homelessness to jail, back to homelessness has been broken.
Mr. McCloskey, can you wrap the comments up in a few more seconds?
I urge you to go back to what the city was talking about a few years ago. That is, a direct Housing First approach, where we can really get housing permanently for people. And until that point, I'm in agreement. We need safe camps being supported by the city and the county. Let's have some humane solutions. As I always say, get repetitive every meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda. Linda is our next speaker. Linda?
Good morning, Councilmembers. I'm a high school civics teacher, and I just really want to take a moment to demystify the math about housing when it comes to the needs in our community. First of all, people in my family are contractors, and I know it's about $150 a square foot to build a 1,500-square-foot, three-bedroom family home. Maybe, let's say, a quarter of a million dollars, $250,000. When you consider that hundreds of millions of dollars have been flooding into the city and county to address the needs of the unhoused in our community, that basically means that we could have built 800 houses. Imagine the impact of that on the lives of 3,000 to 5,000 unsheltered people in our community. And does that mean something?
That means we would like you to-
Wrap it up?
Wrap it up, please. Thank you. Thank you for respecting the time limit.
Okay. Well, to wrap it up, I just want to say that if we would start from the premise that the primary need of people is housing, not mental health services, not anything else, then we could really address this problem and see huge results, not to mention jobs, et cetera, for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. And just for the public's record and knowledge, the one-minute time limit today applies to all items based on the number, vast number of cards we have on many different items. The next speaker card we have is Ashley Wall. Ashley, you are next. Ashley? Okay. Move on to Cruz. Cruz, you're going to be next.
I can barely walk. The reason I'm here is because I was in a shelter, and I had a little bit of a problem with the guy I was with. And they put me out. They put both of us out. We even went to jail. And after that, I haven't been able to get shelter. I'm 67 years old. I can't be out there and in the heat. I don't even have my medication because Task Force took everything, threw everything away. So what am I supposed to do because of that? And yet, I walked over there with opening other shelters, and they tell me, no, we don't take walk-ins. They're very rude, too. They need to be trained or whatever it is they need to. But stop looking at us like we're just a disease. And I would like to get in one of those motels because I don't want to be out. I've been attacked, and I'm too old to be getting attacked. I mean, I was walking dizzy and everything because the guy hit me on the head so hard that I didn't even know which way I was going. So I really need to be in a motel until they give me housing. And Maria from Housing Authorities, she promised me an apartment since last year in August. I'm still out here. So what, why promise something like that and you're not gonna comply? This is wrong, the way they're running things. So I would appreciate it if somebody were to give me a voucher so I can go in there and give it to the people that are running the motels. I don't care. I just need a place to be at. I don't even want a tent anymore. They'd already sliced up my tent, and what I need is a voucher to go in there.
Thank you, Cruz.
Motels. Okay, thank you.
All right, so we have one more hand up on Zoom, and then, so I'll take this Zoom speaker, and then, following the Zoom speaker, if there's anybody else who did not submit a comment card who would like to speak on the consent items or unscheduled communication, at that point, you have the opportunity. But first off, we'll take Caesar Casamayor.
Peace. Thank you, Mr. Sparza. My name is S. Casamayor. I live in District Seven. I want to focus on the youth and the example that the city council continues to portray, which is a dismissal of community, a continued assault on the most vulnerable by not really taking into account what we're saying. The lady spoke about the millions of dollars in our community that have not been used properly. I'm seeing how a lot of the nonprofit organizations continue to feed themselves and need a lot of us who are in the grassroots out here to fend for ourselves. It is not fair. There is a lot of conversations that are being had behind closed doors in the benefit of our community without having us present. I don't want to name organizations, but I think Mr. Gary Brederfield about a year ago mentioned how friends help friends each other out, especially in our communities, and I think that needs to change because the example that you're showing the youth is that you have to play this game of acting a certain way to get into these circles of where the funding is at. And I think that's wrong. And I hope that your brothers and sisters that's in the city council, please be inclusive and stop the exclusiveness like they do in other cities. If we are gonna be one Fresno, then we have to be inclusive of all of us. If we continue going this route, y'all only showing the real character of yourselves and why y'all giving to the youth. So with that, thank you for the time. Dez, thank you for being a voice to the community and being consistent and keeping it a thousand. Thank you.
Thank you, Caesar.
Thank you, Caesar.
Okay. All right, that wraps up our public comment on Zoom. Any last speakers on unscheduled communication or consent?
Council President, if I may-
One speaker here?
If I may also suggest before the speaker, we've allocated millions of dollars for homeless housing and services. It might be worthwhile to have the CEOs of all those agencies present at council meetings so that when people come in asking for help, somebody can help them. Just an invitation, because I know we look to HB's and we look to everyone else here, but it's those organizations that, you know, Pabralo House, Turning Point, Marge and Mason Center, we have funded every other meeting, more and more money. So I think they should, you know, be invited to be at council meetings and be accessible to people who want help.
Yeah, and we're getting, we're getting communication from them during the course of this. They're ready, they're ready to talk to folks. Now, we have a capacity issue. Without question, we have a capacity issue, but they are available to do the assessments, meet with the folks, and try and get them in the queue. But all of those agencies you just mentioned But all of those agencies you just mentioned have the ability to receive these folks, do the assessments. We have a capacity issue, though.
Right, and it did be helpful to see them here and have them hear directly from these folks. And I also want to simply say that, you know, we started this journey on providing housing. People just wanted off the streets, and we've done that to hundreds of folks, for hundreds of folks. But, you know, housing, three meals a day, social services, paying all the utility costs, all the personnel costs, all the mental health services, it is extremely costly. And at some point, this city's going to have to wrestle with, once we house everyone, we're going to need them to get back up and start working, because in order to make room for more people, we have to get people on their feet. It's, you know, we can't sustain free housing, free meals, free utilities, free services, with no workforce that's working to help themselves and us be able to help more people. So just know that, as a guy who has taken all the shelters in his district, I have visited every motel, just about met with every single person in the motel, I have walked every encampment in my district, I know the complexity of the homeless issue, and we are trying to do our best. We have more motels and rooms coming online. But we also have to be ready to expect people to get back on their feet and work to help contribute to the solution, because all of us have to, you know, do our part in helping resolve this issue.
And start applying the one-minute limit to the council members as well. So we have Lance, and then, following Lance, we'll have Justin. Welcome, Lance.
Hi, thank you. Mr. Escada, you were on Thursday night, weren't you?
Friday night, I think it was Friday night, right?
Friday night, Friday night. Thank you, that was appreciated. You obviously had your ears open and-
Oh, yeah.
... in the ground. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I just wanted to encourage you guys to keep your shoulder on the wheel. Like, I mean, I hear you, like, and you seem to have good hearts, you know, just, I hope your hours are long. I hope this stuff keeps you up at night, not to degrade your lifestyle, but, I mean, man, this is a mountain of a problem. And if there's any way to make things like temporary situations, like safe camps, you know, I don't know if that's possible, but like, these really inexpensive, I don't know if it's possible, but these seemingly relatively inexpensive people to make people safe, give them a little community dignity, bathroom showers, hopefully, and lockers. But please, keep working hard, and thank you. It sounds like there's some rationality on the council about vaccine being mandatory and things that should obviously, rationally, be sought by society. So thank you for your work.
Thank you, Lance. We'll have Justin. I believe you have spoken already.
I sit on take his place, he's not here.
Well, so I declined that rule a little earlier, so we're not yielding time at this moment.
No, I thought that democracy-
So you have spoken, you've probably tried your one minute.
I'm a Vietnam veteran-
So Justin will be the next speaker.
This is how you treat me. I can imagine how you treat the rest. You understand? The whole thing here is to help people, not help yourselves. You guys are helping the developers. Yeah, that's it. Everybody's getting a kickback.
Mr. Lazzondo, please be seated, or, you know, but whatever you want to do, but we're moving on with the meeting. Thank you. So public comments, looks we have a couple more folks popping up. All right, it continues. So on Zoom, we have Ruben.
Ruben Lucero. Yeah, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you have one minute.
Hello, good afternoon, council members and staff. My name is Ruben, I'm with Fresno Barrios Unidos, and I'm here to comment regarding the local housing trust fund. And I'm just here to ask the city that they expand the local housing trust fund programs and include some of the following. And that would be transitional housing for youth coming home from incarceration, first-time homeowners assistance programs, acquisition of abandoned buildings and underutilized lots, housing eviction program protection, tenant assistance and temporary housing, and also, community oversight. The local housing trust fund program must be community-led, with tenants having decision-making authority and oversight on all activities and programs related to the trust fund. And that's about all I wanted to comment, and I hope to continue working with the city and to ensure that these programs are implemented in Fresno County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruben. Next speaker will be Alexandros.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Alexandros, you have one minute.
There is some very good points made, obviously regarding the need of housing, the need of services for people, how so many of us, either homeless or not, who deal with substance abuse, mental health issues, who need support. But, and I'm not going to say anything else about that, but I want to pose to the city council is, you know, what's going to happen if you don't address the issue of homelessness, especially in the context of our devolving economy, the COVID-19 crisis, as well as just the general decline in the United States economy in general? We know, like Martin Luther King said, you know, the riot is the language of the unheard. And, you know, where the city is playing with fire if they don't address the needs of the people that they are elected to support, protect, and represent. And if we just keep on kicking this can down the road, like what's happened for decades in Fresno, then, you know, you know-
Alexandros, you're past the one minute. Can you go ahead and give your closing comments?
The point is, if Fresno, if the city of Fresno does not address housing, mental health issues, and whatnot, Fresno's going to become chaotic, it's going to be, it's become a horrible place to live, it's just going to, it's going to be a, it's going to be just a squandered opportunity for a beautiful valley and a city. And so I really urge the city council to invest in the people of Fresno.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ruben Espinoza. Ruben, you have one minute to speak.
Welcome, council. My name is Ruben, and I want to touch on shelter. There are folks that don't live on the highway that need shelter, and I also wanted to uplift the housing trust fund, that it requires transitional housing for youth returning home from, like, juvenile hall, and the acquisition of lots and abandoned buildings, and uplifting that tenants also have decision-making power. And that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ruben. Okay, that will conclude public comment. Public comment is now closed in terms of unscheduled communication. Of course, there will still be public comment on individual items, non-consent items, going forward. So, city attorney, the hearing on redistricting, are we required to do that at 11:00, or is it 11:00 or sometime thereafter?
Anytime thereafter is fine.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and accommodate the member from District 2's request to go ahead and hear 3A, 3B. Before we get there, do I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Motion by Councilmember Brederfield, second by Councilmember Arias. Is Council President Chavez online?
No, he is not.
He is not, okay. Any opposed? All right, motion passes, consent calendar passes. We'll now head on over to Item 3A, that is, Councilmember Carbasi.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So we're going to have Mr. Benelli from Public Works talk about staff's recommendation.
Good morning, I'm Andrew Benelli with Public Works Department. We're here with the request for a street vacation. This is a request filed by Ginder Development to vacate streets within the Sierra Sky Park area. The property in question is on the northeast corner of Blythe and Herndon. They're requesting to vacate initially two streets, Spats and Doolittle. After a meeting yesterday with homeowners in the area, we've determined that we're going to change that request. The developer is in agreement. So the changes that are going to be presented, West Spats Avenue is no longer being included in the right-of-way that's being vacated. And as part of the vacation of North Doolittle Avenue, a portion of North Doolittle will still be vacated, however, a portion of it will be realigned such that the amount of the right-of-way is approximately equal to the portion being vacated, and the street will be realigned to be adjacent and parallel to the existing runway at Sierra Sky Park. And the dedication of replacement right-of-way and construction of the North Doolittle Avenue realignment shall be a condition of the vacation. And the exhibits that you have in your current staff report will be replaced with new exhibits prior to the public hearing at our next council meeting on August 19th. We are also presenting Item 3B, which is a change in the ordinance. This change in the ordinance was necessitated due to the streets that are being vacated. There's also several parts of the ordinance that are outdated, just no longer fit with the map and the street system within Sierra Sky Park. So the changes to that section of the ordinance resolution are Section 14-190C of the proposed ordinance shall be updated to provide that the southern 75 feet of Spats Avenue shall not be designated for aircraft use. Section, I should say, aircraft use, that's parking or taxiing. Section 14-1905A of the proposed ordinance shall be updated to clarify that aircraft may park on Spats Avenue between Doolittle Avenue and a .300 feet west of Doolittle Avenue, and they may park on that portion of the realigned Doolittle Avenue between Spats Avenue and Herndon Avenue. I'd be happy to answer any questions. This has been something we've worked on for a long time, and we hope that we can reach a conclusion at the next hearing on the 19th.
Thank you, Andrew. Is a motion in order?
Motion by Councilmember Carbasi, and second by Councilmember Soria.
Any opposed?
Can I ask just a quick question?
Sure.
Councilmember, I know you had a district meeting or a community meeting about this, because I shared with you-
Sure.
-people that expressed some concerns-
Absolutely. So this has been an ongoing issue for many, many years, and I think that what we had yesterday was, we had members of the community come out, the city got involved, kind of as a mediator, Assistant City Manager White did a fantastic job of working to get everyone focused. The developer came out, Mr. Ginder, and thank you for that. And everyone got together, and we said, okay, the neighborhood's not against development, they just want to make sure it's done in a way that preserves the integrity of one of the very few community neighborhoods that has an airport and residents that have airplanes. And we went through the list of concerns they had, along with their attorney, and we came up with some accommodations. There's still work to be done, but I can go through the list if you want, we can look at a map. But, you know, we're moving in the, and we're all rolling in the same direction, and we're getting very, very close to, if we just, if we do our part as a city, they'll be content, and everyone's happy.
No, I appreciate that, because I had somebody that I shared with you express a concern, and you said you're having the district meeting, and that's about all you can do, is try to address the concerns the best you can.
Yeah, fortunately, the developer and the residents that were there put everything aside and worked together towards a resolution. That's the way it needs to be. So, thank you.
And Councilmember Carbasi-
So we have a-
Yes.
I want to make sure I read this correctly into the record.
Yes.
Our city attorney has asked me to correct this. We will be editing Section 14-1901C of the ordinance, and also Section 14-1905A.
Thank you. So, city attorney, can we take them, do we have to do it one at a time, or can we do them all in one motion, both items?
Has this gone out to the public?
So, you want to make a motion to do both, and I'll-
If we can, but it hasn't gone out to the public yet.
So-
I'll amend my motion to include 3A and 3B. Please.
Councilmember Soria, is that acceptable to you? So we have a motion to approve 3A and 3B in a second. Going to go ahead and go to public comments on Items 3A and 3B. Seeing no public comments, public comment is now closed. Any opposition to approving Items 3A and 3B? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, so we stand corrected on the redistricting hearing. It does have to be held promptly at 11:00. We're only seven minutes late, I think that's well within the grace period. Going to introduce our consultants, the demographer, Jeff Tipton.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Do we have an advancer for the slideshow? While I'm waiting for the advancer, I want to apologize, especially, I spoke with the leadership of Club One. By law, everyone, the redistricting public hearings must start at a set time, so it's out of no disrespect for all of the other agenda items and all the comments that were made earlier.
And Council President, for the record, before Dr. Tipton begins, this is a fourth public presentation and hearing on redistricting, so we are keeping tabs, and we'll have a half dozen more public hearings prior to considering final maps.
Yes.
Great, so as part of this process, as was mentioned, this is the, as far as this public hearings, working toward redistricting, this is the second one. We will have four more. The next one will be in August, August 19th at 6:00 p.m. And then we're going to hold three on a Saturday in south, central, and north parts of Fresno. Also part of the process, we must wait for the census data to arrive in California. It's not expected to arrive until mid to late August, and from there, California will take the data and adjust it with all of the inmates who are in the California prison system. Based on where those particular inmates lived, we'll replace those individuals, not literally, but where they previously lived, and apply the data accordingly in those various jurisdictions. So that's supposed to come out in early October, and then, then we can really start looking at draft maps. But everything that I speak of today is about estimated data. We feel really comfortable about the estimated data, but it really won't be the actual, actual data until that California database is released in early October. From there, we would love to have residents, anybody, draft maps as part of this process. And council will look at the draft maps at its November 4th meeting. There are deadlines to submit maps. Folks could submit maps now, but the deadline to submit draft maps is October 21st, and then we will post all those draft maps. Whether they are in compliance or not, they'll be posted to the redistricting website by October 28th. At that particular meeting, we're going to ask council to pare down the draft maps to two or three, as we go into the final public hearing on December 2nd. That doesn't mean draft maps cannot be submitted, they can still be submitted, but we're trying to narrow things down and really focus as to making sure on that December 2nd public hearing, that we come out of it with a draft map with new districts for the city of Fresno, and with adoption a week later via the second reading of the ordinance, excuse me. So how's it work? Basically, we have to follow the federal laws. We want the districts in equal population. Sometimes that's difficult to do, but the Supreme Court has allowed some variance, there's a little bit of room for variance. We also have to follow the Federal Voting Rights Act, and also, no racial gerrymandering. With the Fair Maps Act, there are priorities that we must follow in particular order. When we're looking at designing districts for redistricting, the districts must be geographically contiguous. We cannot divide neighborhoods or communities of interest, and I'll talk a little bit about those in a second. We must have easily identifiable boundaries, things like roads, highways, canals, parks, that residents would know where the district lines are. And the districts must be compact. We can't have tentacles reaching into other particular districts just to grab people for a variety of reasons. And what is prohibited is, we shall not favor or discriminate against a political party. Now, if we can answer yes to all of those that I just mentioned, the column on the left and the center column, then we can consider those maps for potential adoption. We can also look at traditional redistricting principles to the column on the right, but we must follow the column on the left and the column in the middle column. Any draft maps that don't meet the column on the left and the middle column, while they will come before council, we will recognize those as not being in compliance with both federal and state law. So between now and our October Saturdays, or, excuse me, our October Saturday meetings, as we're looking to get input from the community, as what are the neighborhoods in Fresno, what are the districts? And when I talk about districts, like Tower District and things like that, and what are the geographic boundaries? So we're looking, trying to get as much input as possible, and I'll talk about how folks can submit interest, or, excuse me, submit information here in a second. We're also looking at communities of interest. Communities of interest could be a particular area that where folks have a shared or economic interest, social interest, et cetera. It could be things like HOAs, homeowners associations- It could be things like HOAs, homeowners associations, that where we have shared common interest that would help define a community of interest. And communities of interest may not include relationships with political parties, incumbents, or political candidates. So we're trying to get all this data as, as much as we can between now and October to help inform council when they come, when the draft maps come before them, they'll be positioned for success in that respect. So this is a blank sheet because we want to fill this sheet up between now and October with the input from the community on what are the neighborhoods in Fresno, what are the communities of interest? We'd love to be able to, to fill this sheet up in multiple sheets as well. The city has contracted with National Demographics to provide mapping tools for folks to use to draw maps, anywhere from basically a drawing a map on a napkin all the way to high-end, computerized, technical stuff that would require some patience and some skill. But nonetheless, you can still submit a map that you believe represents the districts in the city of Fresno. You can put that on a napkin. We'll do the best we can to represent your work. When folks submit maps, we're going to ask for their name and their contact information purely to be able to get ahold of them so we can best represent their ideas when we are drafting their map. When maps come before council, while maps are public record, whoever submitted them, the maps will not be named in the person, by the person's name. The maps will likely come with map 101, map 102, map 103, et cetera. NDC will supply two or three maps that council could consider, but we would love it if somebody from the, from the city of Fresno were to be the author of the next district's map. So the, the tools that the city has contracted with is a, there's one of them is called a simple map review tool, and every, every draft map that is created, regardless of its compliance, will be placed on this review tool. And this is basically an internet service where folks could look to see all the draft maps that have been submitted. They can look at them in singularly, or they can layer them on top of each other to see the differences between the maps that have been drafted. Another one is a simple map drawing tool. This representation is purely for illustration only. There will be the city of Fresno on this simple drawing tool, but basically it takes the city of Fresno and, and divides the city into population units, and inside those population units will be a population figure. And the intention here is to get individuals to essentially color in the districts in Fresno and use those population figures to see if they will have equal population in all of the districts. If they'd like to use Excel, it's the same principle. Instead of the population figures in those population units, it's a population identifier. And they take that identifier number, drop it into an Excel file based on what district they want that number to go into, and all of the data are produced for the, the author of that particular map. And all, all of the data, the citizen voting age population, language spoken at home, income level, educational level, voting patterns, et cetera, it'll all be populated. And we will provide the data that I'm just talking about right now, the robust data with every draft map that is submitted. There's also a tool called District R. This is a tool that's been created by Tuft University. It's a great tool to help draw communities of interest. It's also a nice tool to help draw districts. It's really simple to use. I, I say that because I can do it, and I have difficulty at times with some of these things. But the city of Fresno's District R tool is not yet live. They told us it would be live today, and I checked right before I came here. It is not live yet. So I think they're about two days behind based on their promises. Then we have MapTitude, an online districting, redistricting tool. It requires a lot of patience, as I had mentioned. It is, it is something that one could do if they take the time and don't get discouraged when they make mistakes. It is very, very robust tool that will provide all the data in all the districts that an author drafts. And, and all these tools that I'm mentioning, there's a segment, segment on there where it shows the individual how to submit these particular drafts to be, to be up for consideration. As I had mentioned on District R, that unfortunately is in English only. You can maybe use a Google translator or something to translate it, but with the MapTitude, it's available in six languages as depicted here. So we'd love for you to share your thoughts. There's a redistricting website that is on this particular slide with also an email address and phone number. We'd love to get as much community involvement in the process, defining neighborhoods, defining communities of interest, submitting draft maps, either and, it'd be great. And so for the sake of the public hearing, it's the top two questions that we really are looking at. If there are any questions about the mapping tools, I'd be happy to address those. What we really are looking for by the October 16th meeting, it's not necessarily action. We're looking for council to have a deep discussion between now and that, and those October Saturday meetings, to come up a, a list or recognize the list of neighborhoods and communities of interest that have been submitted and thought about. It's not necessarily action, just want to make sure that's clear. And that particular slide will be cleaned up at the next public hearing. So with that, that concludes my presentation. Be happy to entertain any questions council might have before you go to the public.
Any questions on the part of council members before we go out to the public on this item?
No.
Okay. All right, well, now I'll open up. Thank you, Jeff, for the presentation. I appreciate you giving that presentation every time, as if it's the first time, because every time, although it's our fourth update, every time you give it, there's new people who are watching who have never seen it and need to be filled in on our redistricting process. So at this time, I will open the public hearing on the redistricting hearing here in the city of Fresno. Any members of the public wish to comment or give input, either on Zoom or here in Okay.
Thank you, Doctor.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Tipton. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. City Attorney, there's no vote or anything of that nature that's to the end of the item?
No action today.
Okay, no further action on this item. Okay, all right, so, so far, well, not so far, let's see. What we have left here in the agenda, we have nine items of contested consent. We have item 2A with many, many comment cards, and we have item 4A, I believe. It is 11:20. I don't think we're going to, if we, if we begin item 2A, I'm not sure we'll be able to get through that. So let's go back to our original order and take on contested consent in the, in alphabetical order. 1D was pulled up by Councilmember Maxwell, who is missing in action. Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll.
I also pulled that one, Council President, and I just got one question for the Director.
Well, let's, let's go over to 1G, let's go over to 1G, who Councilmember Brettafield pulled. See if we can power through these before lunch.
Okay, just a quick question on the social equity part. Can you just define how, how we are defining the social equity business for this?
Sure. Good morning, Council. I'm Jennifer Reese. I'm the project manager for cannabis in the city manager's office. So a social equity business is a business that applied through our social equity application process and receives a preliminary permit approval.
Okay, but what's the equity part versus one of the other businesses that aren't defined as social equity?
So there was a separate application process for the social equity versus the standard, and the social equity eligibility criteria is outlined in our ordinance. There's six different ways that they could qualify for that. It includes a previous cannabis conviction, low income. It included a previous membership in a cannabis cooperative. So there's a few combinations in the ordinance about how they could qualify.
And so why are they getting the consultant services versus the other folks that aren't filing under the social equity?
So our ordinance says that we will provide technical assistance for cannabis social equity applicants and businesses. So that is why. And then the state grant that we received is also for that purpose.
But is, I mean, I understand it's, it's, it's part of the ordinance, but what's, what's the rationale behind it? Why would they need?
It was my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, and Rena, you may have to help me, City Attorney's Office, there was an expectation that we wanted to make this type of honor opportunity available to individuals that may have been subjected to, you know, previous issues related to their engagement in cannabis of some sort, an arrest, or some other conviction related to that. And then also just the people, minority, low income, that we want to give those people a chance. The state of California wants to do that, and they're making money available to it, and our ordinance was written around that, that model.
Okay. You answered it. Thank you.
And if I may add too, just as a reminder to the public, the funds that we're using for this additional consulting services for these groups, it's not coming from the city's funding or revenue. It's coming from the fees collected by the city, by all the applicants, and from the state equity grant that we receive. So it's not coming from city revenue.
All right, have a motion? Motion by myself, seconded by Councilmember Soria. Any opposition?
No.
No. Two no votes. Motion passes 4-2. All right, going back to item 1D, this was pulled by Councilmembers Maxwell and Arias.
Director, just have one question on this concession agreement. Personal experience, I don't see those concessions being as nice and as good and as, you know, offerings of other airports. What are the plans for, you know, at what point do you go back to RFP? At what point do we expect to see improved concessions in the airport?
Great question. Kevin Michael, Director of Aviation, you know, with our existing concessions program we put in place in the early 2000s, the airport was an entirely different airport back then. We have grown significantly to the point where we're really getting a lot of national attention with concessionaires. And so we plan on putting an RFP out on the street just after the first of the year that coordinates with the expansion program going on at the airport. And that program is going to be a revamp of not just the new expansion, but the entire facility. We've got some balancing issues, like too much square footage up pre-screening, not enough back in the gate area. So we've done studies on that, what's the right mix? So this RFP process is going to look at all the existing areas, redo them, and whoever gets selected through this process, typically they'll come into an airport and they infuse millions of dollars to revamp it, a whole new look, if you will, new offerings. So we're pretty excited about that opportunity. And let me just add one thing to that, and that is there's going to be a local community outreach component of this effort. We are actually going to start this fall ahead of the RFP, meaning we want to educate the local business community, you know, what is it like to operate out of International Airport? What are the expectations? What are, what are the standards that have to be followed so that when this RFP hits the street after the first of the year, at least from a local standpoint, they really understand what they're getting into? And regardless of whoever ends up being selected and come before you for approval, you know, perhaps as soon as later this next spring, a big component of that is working with the local community to bring in, whether it's retail products, whether it's food and beverage offering. And that's really been the trend nationwide at airports, to try and be more inclusive on a local level. So that's going to be a big part of this effort.
So, so there would be a possibility that one day go to the airport, I can see taquitos de coya beer, I can see some of the local restaurants, you know, the, the local flavor of what Fresno has to offer.
Absolutely. Yes.
Why the wait of eight months? Why not go out to an RFP today?
So we're in the process of developing the RFP. I'm really not waiting eight months. What this item before you is about is we have two concessionaires out there currently. One concessionary agreement expires eight months prior to the other. This item takes the, the host agreement, which is the food and beverage, extends it eight more months, and so it terminates the exact same time as the other concessionaire we have out there retail. So the timing of that termination is absolutely perfect with regard to a transition to, whether it's one of these two, or whether it's somebody else new to a new team. And, and the termination is going to be in 2023. That's about a year and some before the new expansion opens up. So what'll happen is we get somebody onboard for a new program, they will start working on the existing facilities, get those up and running, and then work with the construction team through 2023 and early 2024 to develop the new concessions in the new area. So then they'll come online, you know, seamlessly when we're ready to open that up before the summer of '24.
So I appreciate that. I recently flew through the, the airport not too long ago, and I did have, have some dissatisfactions. I couldn't get a single bottle of water at any vendor. Every single one was out before a flight. You know, I'm vegetarian. The only option I had there were $30 fries and a beer. And, you know, we're the fifth largest city in California, and people flying in, I would expect to have, you know, not just for the vegetarians, right, but people who want something other than a $30 burger and beer. We would need to make sure that we're doing our due diligence, making sure that when people fly into the fifth largest city in the state of California, it's reflected in everything, including the food that we have. I think that's going to be something I'm looking for in these RFPs, is local preference going to be given to folks here operating in the city of Fresno?
So local preference is not permitted because there are federal regulations to that. However, the big thing here is the outreach, and that whomever gets the contract ultimately later in 2022, they will be required to consider and to embrace any local entity, whether it's food, beverage, or retail into the airport. And maybe it's a local firm that gets it, we don't know, right? So, and I appreciate the comments, and I agree. I mean, you know, coming out of this pandemic, even though from a, from a passenger standpoint, we've crossed the line from recovery to growth, and we're moving forward, you know, still it's a challenge for these retailers, and you see this all over, not just our community, but everywhere, just hiring back up, getting people back in there, and there are points in time when they are shorthanded, and you think, why are they, they should be open, they're not open, and what's the supply chain look like, all that kind of thing. So it's been a challenge, but we are working closely with them and staying in close communication.
So this outreach plan you've alluded to, what does that consist of?
It's, it's basically going to, going to be from a local business community perspective, here's what it's like to operate in an airport, here's what the expectations are, here's what you would be up against, here are the requirements, so that when this RFP hits the street, they'll understand, they'll know ahead of time what to expect. And then also, regardless of who gets selected, they'll know how to work with that entity, whoever it may be, to get their product, their business into the program.
Typically, how long are these contracts with these vendors?
You know, they range from 10 to 15 years typically, because what happens is, as I mentioned, they make huge investments into the facilities, you know, our facilities. And obviously, they got to recoup those costs, so it's pretty typical. We're around 15 years right now on our current ones, and it's, you know, it's, it's time to redo the whole program.
So around next February, I could most likely be voting on who's going to be in the airport for the next 10 years?
I would probably say a little later in the year. I think if we get the RFP out on the street after the first of the year, it's going to be out there for a good solid six or so weeks. Then there's going to be evaluation period, and ultimately, there'll be a recommendation that comes before you, laying out the process and what happened, and you can, and you'll be able to really see what their plan is, what their vision is. And we'll have drawings and renderings and offerings, and so you'll see that ahead of time.
I appreciate your diligence, Director. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead and make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion with the hope that one day I can have tacos and beer at the airport.
Yes.
I have a comment or maybe just even a question. So you're saying that you guys are going to do outreach, right? But beyond outreach, I think what a lot of our local businesses may have a challenge with is sometimes some of the onerous requirements that the federal government may have. I was just doing some local, I mean, some Google searches in terms of, unlike disadvantaged business enterprises in airport concessions, it looks like they've revised some regulatory information where, where we can work to give disadvantaged businesses kind of a, some help. So I would hope that beyond just outreach and telling people, hey, we may educate, I think that we should, we probably have money in our airports, we received significant amounts when it came to CARES Act. when it came to CARES Act and federal relief, so I think if we can get some additional dollars beyond to, to be, work beyond the outreach and education, that's going to be critical for me. I don't want to just, you say here today, hey, we're going to go and talk to these disadvantaged businesses, or go talk to the Hispanic and Black and Asian American chambers, and that's what that is, and that's where it ends. And then when we, when you come back and what you're proposing doesn't include any disadvantaged businesses, and you have a council that is upset, but you're going to say, well, they didn't apply, we did outreach, and, you know, these are the things that we outreach, but, you know what I mean? So I, I think for me, I'd like to see more than just the outreach and education substantiated so that we can really see an airport that is reflective and that supports our local businesses within the airport infrastructure.
Councilmember, if I may, we'll take that and run with it. Thank you. We appreciate that input. We will definitely take that and run with it.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second. Any opposition? All right, motion passes. So that was item one D. Onto item one H, just pulled by Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Council.
All right, you maybe get out of the pool the other day for this one, man, so.
Our Assistant City Manager goes on vacation and all the work stops in the building, so we're glad he's back. Just as context for the council, this is, the city applied or agreed to be the co-lead, the lead applicant for a state, a federal grant to help with the education, outreach, and vaccination of our most underserved zip codes in the city that are still significantly behind with vaccination rates. And in that proposal, we've gotten some questions about why doesn't include some of the major organizations that were originally part of the partnership, like the African-American Initiative under ELC and the Immigrant Coalition? So I wanted to just clarify for the public that there is still an opportunity, right, Assistant City Manager, for additional partners to be added to the proposal? Or is these partners set in stone?
These partners are pretty much set in stone. A number of those that you just mentioned, including the Coalition, were outreach to and declined to participate in this particular effort.
Okay.
But there's also a second effort in the county that they may also be eyeballing, where they'll be putting some of their funds out in their $3 million county grant.
Got it. So the, whoever's not included in this partnership is because they declined the participation?
If they were asked, yes. And specifically, I know the African-American Coalition was asked.
Got it. And the lead applicants for the record is West President Resource Center, Centro de la Familia?
Correct, sir.
And then my other really question for the City Manager and Assistant City Manager is, who in our staff is going to be the point person? Because now we're like the lead, and I know you wear different hats, and I don't want to bother you on vacation again, but this is a pretty significant body of work, so are we going to have a point person that will be managing this grant, City Manager?
Yeah, as we discussed yesterday, we just kind of want to build on the model we did with transformative climate cities, and so that, so that's Courtney Espinoza's been helping with that, leading it, so she'll be brought into the fold and help us manage this.
And I didn't mean to give her more work, but she has been very responsive and effective with the TCC work and with managing all the subcontractors that tend to be near the city. So I do appreciate that commitment of support. With that, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any opposed? All right, it's item one H. All right, let's power hour, power half an hour through the rest of these consent items. One J, also pulled by Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Council President. I just received the data, so thank you, Assistant City Manager, why I did get the email today. For the public's understanding, when we're doing all these contracts for our employees and services, I want to make sure that our employees are actually taking advantage of the services, and we're not simply, you know, doing consultant and contracting services that are not being taken advantage of. So according to the usage data, in 2019, on average, 53 families a month were using the social services or mental health services. In 2021, we're up to 73. That's sufficient, you know, confirmation for me that the services are being used. You know, mental health is critically important during the pandemic and even as we're trying to get through it, so I want to make sure that our employees are actually taking advantage of these services before we simply extend contracts and approve them. So with that information, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, second by Councilmember Brederfield. Any opposition? All right. Item one K, pulled by Councilmember Maxwell.
Yeah, we did have a meeting with Director Clark, the CDBG Subcommittee, this past Tuesday, I believe it was, and the committee came to the conclusion that at this time, we would like to parse the two different grants. There's a CDBG grant here and a home grant. So I'd like to make a motion to approve just the CDBG portion of this item at this time.
I'll second that motion. And just for the council's background understanding, we are approving the reprogramming of the CDBG funds in the amount of 1.6 million, but we are bifurcating the home funds at this time for 1.1. We will take that up at the next council meeting on August 19th, and it does require us to re-notice, I believe, but that's our recommendation as a CDBG committee.
Is there any issue with that from the administration?
Looking at Director Clark, and she's indicated, she's going to indicate to you right now.
Good morning, Council, Jennifer Clark. So, yes, it is, it is not a timeliness issue. We did, we do hope to utilize that those home dollars in our current NOFA that we just issued, we had almost $7 million in that NOFA, including this, these funds, and over, and almost $30 million in requests, so we know that there's a demand. So we would like for the council to approve it. However, we do understand you'd like more time to consider the home item. The CDBG is a little more timely, so I appreciate that.
Well, I think with that consideration comes the information that was requested at that Tuesday meeting as well.
Right, so we provided that yesterday. Yep, thank you.
And Councilmember Brederfield, just for background for you, we've gone, we put out a request for proposals, about 30-plus million dollars came in of requests from different developers and entities for housing funds. So what the council committee requested was, before we add more money to the home funds for housing projects, we'd like a list of every applicant that has requested funds, kind of a description of their project, location, that kind of information. We did get some information yesterday, I believe, but it didn't have the identified information of the applicant. So we'd like to see the, in essence, the quality and the scope of the kind of request we're getting before we put another million dollars into home funds, because as you saw today, everybody's asking us, why aren't we building it, and why aren't we doing it fast enough? So I think we'll get that and approve this at the next meeting.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second. Any opposition? All right, that was item one K. Let's keep up this pace. Onto item one M, as in Mary. This was pulled by Councilmember Soria, one M.
We, we also had pulled one L. Did we get to that?
That one L was continued to August 19th. We're on item one M now.
Yes, I think last time the council had requested that we go back and figure out if we could add additional dollars because of the significance in being able to get a one-to-one match from the state. I know that we allocated through the budget process a 1.5 kind of reoccurring from a source, I forget what the source was, but I wanted to see if there was an update on that, because I did not see an update on the staff report. If we were able to do that, I know that also folks have expressed some, some input, or given some input to expand the scope of the trust, which would include, I believe it's acquisition, maybe Councilmember Arias can chime in. There's a list of other things that we would like to expand the scope to have the ability to do as a trust.
Just for, for background purposes, this is the first time the city's actually establishing a housing trust fund that will allow us to draw down state resources. We recognize that staff's recommendation is to essentially start small and, you know, build over time, but we think it's important to just expand the scope of the trust fund now, as we initiated. And our last request was for the city staff to identify additional money, because at this point, we have the opportunity to get as much as $5 million for the fund, if we match it with local resources. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the establishment of the fund with the following changes, that the fund will also include housing rehabilitation programs, first-time home buyer assistance programs, acquisition of property for the purpose of development of housing, housing rights, education, eviction protection program, and tenant assistance for temporary housing. I like the scope of the fund to be expanded to include those areas, and with that.
Councilmember Arias, can I ask a quick question? If we expand the scope, that still wouldn't limit the department from utilizing the fund the way they intended to maximize the returns from the state?
Correct. It would, in my view, still contain all the scope that the staff is recommending, but we're adding additional areas that the fund is eligible to be used for. So I think we ought to have as broad as a fund as possible, in case we have some pretty innovative or unique programs that come to our attention. As you know, too, the state is making $12 billion available for housing of the homeless and affordable housing in the state, and I want to make sure that we can pull down as much resources available to us when the time comes that we might be eligible for that.
Councilmember Arias, which is why, so I support the expansion of the scope of what the trust would do, but I also want to make sure, which is the request that this council had in the previous meeting, was to maximize the opportunity. As we are creating a new trust fund, this is the only opportunity we have to maximize the one-to-one match. It's only given to the first, you know, when it's first created. I know that we only have $1.5 million currently slated in the budget, but I know that there may be an opportunity to increase, I don't know if the city manager can speak to that. I would motion, or to add to your motion, that, you know, we just finished the fiscal year, I know that we were probably either now reconciled the year in terms of the numbers, and typically, we see in October, we come back with some unanticipated additional dollars that, that were not utilized in the budget. So for the sake of those dollars, I would like to incorporate any of those that are general fund dollars that are not slated in our current proposed, or budget that we voted, but would be, would come back as a carryover to be utilized for the purpose of being able to match these dollars on a one-to-one basis. I don't know what that amount would be, but the goal would be to get to 5 million so that the city of Fresno could get $10 million as a startup.
I, I would agree to that friendly amendment.
I think the only question we'd have is on the eviction protection piece, because we'd like to coordinate that with the city attorneys, because we set up an account and we've set up a bunch of stuff with them. So if we could just have a little more discussion about that one before we kind of ink that deal, I think we'd like to do that. We did look at researching, putting dollars from, like, for example, the Lingo Project, we thought, hey, let's run that through there, but that'll turn that into a prevailing wage project, so we're like, okay, we're not going to do that. So those are the tricks we've got to kind of understand, is what kind of funds can we put in there? How does it change the color, and how does it impact these people's projects? So I think the fund, I like the idea of the funding, if the numbers come in, something, you know, looking at those, but otherwise, if the expectation is to move money, we're going to have to take it from something else that we've identified.
And City Manager, my intention is not to move the current allocation under the city attorneys into this fund. My intention is simply to add eviction protection program as an eligible use of the fund, once we build it and we have the resources. So I simply want to make it one more eligible use of the funds in the trust fund.
And I, I think, I think we can do that, I just want to, as we set it up, I just want to just make sure we coordinate with the city attorney before we adopt that real quick.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with deferring to you and the city attorney and, you know, working out those details.
Okay, and then we will continue to look for the dollars, but again, we want to make sure we're not coloring other projects, and it's like, okay, wow, we just, we just wiped that guy's project out.
No, and I'm okay with that, but, so what I brought up, we are, I'm assuming that your budget, folks, already reconciled, we're, you know, close to 30 days out after the fiscal year. Typically, this, you know, the council is used to in the fall, coming back and re-appropriating whatever unanticipated dollars that we didn't expect. So I'm asking as part of this motion that those dollars which haven't been slated to be utilized, to go to, towards the fund, to be able to do on a one-to-one.
And I think that's a perfect model to use, we just, the last closed session, we had a discussion about, you know, employee compensation as well, so those are, those are dollars that we'd be competing with that as well. So we'll definitely look to identify those sources of funds.
Well, I know, but I guess we have a timing issue. When is the application?
So the, the application is due the first week in August, and so here, here's the, the issue, we need to know a specific dollar amount, and it needs to be committed for this purpose. So while it could be placed into the fund later in the year, it needs to be specifically committed to as a part of this resolution.
Yeah, I think, I think where we are right now, we have one more month to go. I think financially, we still got the June number to get, and we haven't got that number yet. So if there's anything available in that, we just don't know. And I'd hate to say, tell the state, here's $2 million or $3.5 million we're going to add, and it doesn't show up. But we could always add more money after.
We could add more money, but it would, we would not receive the match.
We wouldn't receive the match, okay.
So City Manager, how much additional resources beyond the 1.5 are you comfortable that we can identify now and commit that's not allocated? Because as you referenced, those other conversations, none of that is set in stone. We're months away from saying those things in stone.
I, I think that, so, you know, I don't want to hurt anybody's feelings here, but we did do that allocation of money for the parks that was undesigned for anything, so I think if you guys are comfortable with that, we could take a little bit of that and put that in there, if you guys are okay with that.
Salary savings from vacant positions. I know we, we have.
Oh, we, but we dialed in the vacant position, so there's no, there's, none of the departments are budget, with the exception of pre-lease, none of the departments are budgeting any vacancies. Those dollars aren't there this year. Everything that's, we're going to hire those people, we're going to, and I told the department heads, do not expect to balance your budget on salary savings. And none of them did that.
How many vacant positions are we carrying in the police department that are going to be savings?
I think the vacancy rate is about 62, 68, it's a 60 number, I think, is what we've got, right? But those are not, again, with the way we, what we mentioned to you last time, programming, some of them coming on in September, December, March, so they're priced out, that they're not, that money's not supposed to be there, we're, we're spending it.
Yeah, so I think, you know, I took, reading the memo that you folks sent over about, about our request from the last meeting, I mean, I, you know, we allocated every dollar in the budget.
Yes.
We, I, I was asking for this money back in the budget, you know, to make, to get us to five. We've been looking for it since the last meeting, I, I don't think it's there at this time, given the time constraint. I think if we had a longer time constraint, that would help us, but this application, I believe, is due on Tuesday.
Correct.
Is the deadline. I'll, I'll support expanding the, the scope of the trust fund, with the understanding that, you know, I, I think our, one of our number one priorities is council should be aggressively expanding the housing stock in our city. And so, you know, there may be some dollars available for some of these other functions that, that were listed out, but I think we, we need to keep our eye on the ball in terms of increasing the housing stock.
So I'm just going, so the motion, one and a half, or you want me to pull some of the park?
Why can't we, if we make a motion today and we say, I anticipate, and I'll be really pissed if you guys come back in October and there's like millions of dollars that we're going to have to reallocate, because that's, that's typically, and, and I've been here seven years, that's typically what happens. So what I'm saying is, why can't we just even commit, say, at least one more million dollars so that we can start, two, two and a half million, that gets us to 5 million on a local trust fund, minimum? Like, I think that that's doable.
1 million? So make it to two and a half?
Well, it gets us to 5 million as a starting point, you know? I would love to be able to get to 10 million.
Oh, yeah, me too.
You guys have heard today, you know, the housing issues that we have, we're in a housing crisis, so I think that we should look for that, you know, for those additional dollars. I would be open to saying 1 million from that carryover, because I know there's going to be carryover, and also 1 million for parks, because housing is a huge issue in our community. I want to get as close as possible to getting a total of 10 million. That's what we should be doing, guys. This is, we're in a housing crisis, we're hearing people are homeless, kids are on the streets, you know, it's like, we have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, let's not Let's not like.
Councilwoman, I think we all agree, we're just trying to figure out where we're going to take the money from.
The priority, exactly.
Well, and that's what I said. I, I am giving you guys a couple options.
Well, I, I don't think the, the future, I mean, it's hard, I mean, if there's a way for us to do that, but I'm not sure maybe city attorney or Jennifer could clear up whether we can do the, any of the future anticipated dollars.
Let me, let me add an additional question before Director Clark gives her opinion, but if we were to put parks money in there, how long would that money be tied up for so we could receive the funds? We could be in guidelines? We could be within the guidelines to receive matching funds before we're then able to use that money for its original intended purpose of parks?
Once the money goes in, that's what it's going to be used for. It's going to be used for housing. And, and the state says, you put a dollar in, we'll put a dollar in. So once we commit it in there, it's going to be used for the housing.
City manager, I'm okay with adding a million dollars from expected carryover savings.
And then, not the parks?
No.
Okay, so one, so two and a half million?
Two and a half million, that'll get us to 5 million. It's not perfect, but it's, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a leap from where we've been.
Jennifer, does that, does that work? Can we add a million dollars from the anticipated salary savings?
Not salary savings.
Well, not salary, right, so it would be.
The carryover.
Carry, yeah.
As long as it is, right, as long as it is general fund, that we're not utilizing any special funds.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve with the expanded scope of work and add an additional million dollars for an establishment of the housing trust fund to be 2.5, making us eligible for a 2.5 million dollar match from the state.
Second.
Second. Any further comments from the council?
Any eligible applicants? It says that for profit developers, when working in partnership with a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, why do they have to be working with a 501(c)(3) to be a participant in building this kind of housing?
My name is Casey Lauderdale. I'm with the Long Range Planning Division.
Can't hear you.
Sorry. Hello, my name is Casey Lauderdale. I'm with the Long Range Planning Division. And to answer your question, the NOFA would still need to be designed after receiving the award. And the, what, what you're referencing is actually just priority points, it's not eligibility itself.
Okay, it's, it's under eligible applicant. So are you saying that they don't have to be affiliated with, with a 501(c)(3)?
Yes, I believe you're referencing Attachment A.
Second page of the staff report. Under eligible applicants. At the bottom of the second page.
Yes, that's listed as an example, but that will, the eligible applicants will be flushed out during the NOFA creation process.
It's not a requirement?
Yes.
Okay, because it seemed like that, you know, they had to be working with a 501(c)(3).
Yes.
But that's not their case?
But it, yeah, it, that, the NOFA will still need to be developed, so.
Okay.
Councilmember Karabassi?
Thank you, and I do appreciate the comments from my colleagues. I'm prepared to move forward and support this item. I just want to just clarify one thing. I'm glad that we're coming together to talk about how to fund and incentivize affordable housing. This is a great step in the right direction. But I also want to keep our focus on the big elephant in the room, and that's the market. And there's been challenges. And what could we do as a council to support policies that encourage people, like the people we have in the gallery today, who have jobs but are above the income requirements so that they won't spend half or three-quarters of their income just on rent alone? If we can break up this small group of developers and open it up and create more competition, it'll create more customers for developers, they'll have the ability to build more, because they're investors after all. And then the public and the market will respond to that, and we will deal with this 10 million unit shortage we have in the entire state. So thank you very much.
All right. Any, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any opposition to the amended motion? Seeing on the motion passes. That was 1M. We are at 11:57. I don't want to leave here till we finish at least the consent. We got three more items. So we'll go on to item 1N, as in Nelson. That was pulled by councilmember Arias.
Yeah, thank you, council president. Thank you, city manager and director, for problem solving the housing fund with us. My only question, Director Moser, is when do we anticipate meeting with the neighbors in the south, you know, Fresno area, not only the re-scoping of this project, but other, you know, street projects that we have planned in that area?
Scott, can I just respond real quick first? So we had a, Jennifer and I, she left, we had a conference call with the community related to the settlement agreement. On the, on the phone was the school, the school superintendent for, so August 16th is a open house, return to school at Orange Center Community, Orange Center School, and that'll be the kickoff for us.
Perfect.
We're going to start just using the school as a base of operation to start engaging with that community on the settlement agreement, the EIR, the traffic study.
Perfect.
Central Avenue.
Right, great. I just want to make sure that, you know, we don't have to have a lot more miscommunications and restarts. So thank you for that. With that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. We have motion and a second. Any opposition? All right. Item 1N passes. Go on to 1S. Councilmember Maxwell?
Yeah, who do we have? Is Robin coming? Excellent.
Good afternoon.
Would you remind me the name of the current contractor we have doing these services?
Lincoln Training Center.
And how long have they been contracted with the city for?
For five years.
And how long do they have left on their current contract?
It's, it's expired. They're currently in an extension.
What were some of the shortcomings that have led to this moment?
We, we've had multiple issues over the five years. We, it ran the gamut from trash cans not being emptied, restrooms not being cleaned. I asked my staff yesterday just to quickly run, print some emails they had, you know, regarding the shortcomings, and this is, for the most part, just this calendar year.
Excuse me, just really quick. We just want to clarify, the contract expired and we do regularly go out for custo, for RFPs when the custodial contract expires. So it wasn't that we're canceling the contract with them, it's just that it expired, we did an RFP, and the current provider was not the winning bid of the new contracts. I just wanted to clarify that little point. I'm sorry, Robin, go ahead.
Did they reapply?
I'm sorry?
Did they reapply the folks?
They did.
Okay.
So we, we interviewed four companies. They were one. They were the fourth from the lowest bid. The contractor we chose as a committee, a committee unanimously chose Scrub Can. They have our other contract, the other contract we oversee, they also have a transportation contract, and we've personally been working with them for three years, and they've done a wonderful job for us. A couple of representatives are here today, and there's just really no comparison. Like I said, this is emails from this calendar year about shortcomings. And my office isn't in this building, but Scott Moser could speak to, you know, the texts and emails he sends me, just, just him. So it, there's just been a lot of shortcomings.
So, so let me ask you this. I mean, that, that is very concerning, all of those shortcomings. Given that it's a possibility with whoever we contract with, is it prudent to award a three-year contract instead of maybe starting with a one-year and seeing how they perform and extending it based off of that? I don't want to end up in a situation like we are now and having to deal with that for three years. What are your thoughts on that?
Right. It just traditionally has been, because it's a, it's a difficult contract to transition just because, you know, the base knowledge of the building, there's, there are so many intricacies that have to, you know, be addressed in this building. And so it's, it's difficult, so it would really be hard for us to transition every year to a new company. Sometimes it takes a while for the companies to, you know, really get in the groove, get the right staffing. So sometimes I think a year wouldn't be enough time to, for them to show what they can do. And we work with them. My staff works with them daily. We were having quarterly meetings with them, you know? We really work with them to improve, to show them where they need to improve. So, you know, a year might or might not show what, what long-term they would, what they would present.
Fair enough. Is there any sort of exit clause or agreement that says if they're not meeting certain metrics that we're able to not go forward with the full length of the contract?
I believe there are. Brandon, do you know? Yes.
That is correct?
Yes.
Okay. I appreciate the clarification, and I'll make a motion to approve. I just wanted a little bit more of an understanding, and you provided that.
I'll second that, but I do have a question.
Okay.
I just had a question. I guess if we had so many complaints, why didn't we ever do anything about it?
And we did. We tried to address them as they came up. We, like I said, we had quarterly meetings with them.
No, but in terms of like terminating the contract, like if they're, if we're having, if that's the stack of emails, to me, that's unacceptable in terms of complaints, so.
Well, we, generally, we would have complaints, they would address them, you know, we would get promises of improvement, promises of more supervision, they would be better for a period of time, and then it would come back. So it wasn't necessarily a constant of the same problems, but they were just repetitive over and over, and we just continued to work with them and believe that they were going to provide what they needed to provide, and in the end, they just didn't.
Yeah, I just have a kind of a problem with that, prolonging it four or five years. That, to me, is unacceptable. I get giving people an opportunity to rectify and to, you know, address complaints or, you know, an adjustment period, but if we have five years, four years or five years of stacks like that, to me, I would have terminated the contract. If you would have asked me and came up here, I would have said like, we got to get out and go out to someone that's going to be more responsive and not have those same issues. So I want to make sure that whatever language we have in that out clause gives us the ability that if we have stacks of complaints like that, that we have the ability to get out if, if that's what we want to do as a, as a council and as a city.
Councilmember, we 100% agree. We are looking at some other contracts in other areas that we are in a similar situation, and we are moving on either collecting liquidated damages or moving forward, notifying people that they're in breach. So we completely agree that it's not acceptable, and so we'll rely on the city attorney's office if the out clause is sufficient enough, if we're having significant performance issues that we can move forward with putting a vendor in breach, but we completely agree it is unacceptable.
Council president, I do have some questions. I actually have spent quite a bit of time understanding custodial contracts in the city, primarily because they have a lot of windows and they never get cleaned, and I get to see all the stuff that's not being attended to. But about a year ago, we were in these chambers and staff was requesting that we award another custodial contract to manage the police department's headquarters, claiming that they had special needs that a more expensive contract needed to address. And if I recall correctly, that contract increased by 20 or 30% from the previous contractor. In this case, you're, you're recommending a bidder that wasn't the lowest bidder. You're recommending a pretty significantly more expensive bidder. What's your rationale for not picking the lowest responsive bidder?
It's designed as the best value. We don't necessarily choose the lowest. We had a committee who interviewed these four companies, and they had an opportunity to present to us, you know, what, what their services were. The, the lowest company, I believe, they just did not have the experience, they didn't present the experience to us for buildings like this, the size and what it would take to run this building. The second from lowest, we actually had them in this building before. They were very similar to Lincoln's performance. We, as a committee, thought that was their opportunity to say to us, we understand we had shortcomings when we were here before, but here's what we've done to improve. When we asked them the general question of what's your past experience, they didn't mention City of Fresno. So we, we took that to mean that they, you know, probably haven't changed.
And if I understand the history with this particular vendor?
Oh, correct.
If I understand the history with this particular vendor, they've never serviced this building?
They have not serviced this building. However, we have experience with them. They're also DBE, SBE, the, the lowest bidder was out of Utah, they have no local preference, presence.
Yeah. Do they have any experience with buildings of these, of this size?
Not necessarily. They, but they had the, we also weighed experience with the city. So like the one I talked about, we had, you know, Lincoln and the other one, we've had experience with them.
Got it.
So we weighed that also.
And Robin and councilmember, if I could chime in, Scrub Can is responsible for the fogging in our building, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So they, they do the disinfectant, the COVID disinfecting fogging in our building as needed, and including the weekly, I think we're on fog on Saturdays? And then when they came before us, maybe this time last year, when the Department of Transportation had hired them, we got unanimous accolades for selecting this, this particular vendor. They had been trying to break into this particular government market, and I think we were the first, and then since then, I think they picked up Parks in one other. Plus, again, with their COVID response, they've been good to us, so.
Yeah, assisting, assistant manager, and I was early on critical of us picking national companies versus local ones, and understanding how this building has historically kept local companies out with amongst a bunch of stuff, insurance requirements, lack of, you know, experience with the city, which how can they get experience if you're never going to give them a shot? But I also, given the sys, the history of the city, not terminating contracts for non-performance, I want to make sure that we don't bring somebody to this building, set them up for failure, and then blame it on them because we didn't do something or we weren't clear about expectations. So my questions have been posed, and I just want to make you aware of that. I am paying attention to all these custodial contracts. I struggle with understanding why they increased by 20 and 30% from one contract to the other, why everyone needs their specialty service provider. I don't, you know, I, I still have not been sold on why the building across the street from us needs a different provider than the building in front of us. So with that, I'll be supportive of this item, but just know that I'm watching closely.
Okay, thank you.
I have an additional question, council vice president. Do we ever have folks, whether through this contract or other service contracts, working in this building on Saturdays and Sundays as part of their job?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Do we have folks through this maintenance contract or other similar contracts working in this building on Saturdays and Sundays?
Not from the current janitorial. Scrub Can is here on Saturdays, fogging.
Fogging?
Mm-hmm.
What are their hours?
They leave at noon. Denny, what time do you start?
12.
I'm sorry? Eight to 12.
Okay. I just want to make sure, you know, I came in on a Saturday once and it was damn near 100 degrees inside this building. I want to make sure that if we're contracting, we're treating those folks, you know, it doesn't have to be as cold as it is in here right now.
Yeah.
But I want to make sure that those folks are not suffering through the 100-plus degree heat. They're city employees, as long as they're contracted with us, and I want to make sure that they get treated the same way everyone else in this building does. So what can we do to make sure that they're not dealing with that kind of heat? Can we put on some AC for a few hours?
From what I understand, it's on every day from 4:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Okay.
And if we, if there's, you know, an issue outside of those hours.
I don't think it is on the weekends.
I think when you encountered the sweltering temperatures, you were here after 10:00, and I have been in here on the weekends, and it, it warms up fast. So as soon as that air clicks off, it does warm up fast and get very stuffy. We could look at adjusting the hours. I, we can certainly look to find out what vendors are in the building on the weekends to make sure it's not sweltering for them. Understood. And then as far as, obviously, we don't want to be cooling this entire building for, you know, just two people that happen to come in at odd hours, and no disrespect.
I'm not asking it for myself. I'm really not.
Yeah, no, but for the, for the vendors agreed, we want to make sure that it's not sweltering in here, so we can look at adjusting the hours.
I appreciate that, thank you. So notes to city hall workers, please refrain from working in the building between 10:00 PM and 4:00 AM. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Are we done with our cross-examination on this contract?
Yes. Congratulations, Scrub Can, and don't disappoint us because we're paying attention.
Clerk, clerk, do we have a, did we have a motion already on the table for this?
Yeah, motion.
Any opposition? No opposition. Motion passes. One S. All right. One W. Make this quick. I think we're all hungry. One W. This is pulled by Councilmember Arias. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with the friendly amendment that we have council members serve on the, representing the city's broadband discussions with the local partners.
Second that.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I didn't, you want a council member as opposed to the administration?
Correct. In addition to the administration, if you look at the memo that you sent us, the county has elected officials supervisor on the committee. Other folks have elected officials and I personally represent the area that has the most like of broadband. So I'd like to make sure myself or another council member is on that committee discussing broadband access. As you may know, the Senate reached an agreement that's gonna set aside billions of dollars for broadband access. And the last thing I want is for us to develop an agreement with neighboring entities that doesn't take into account the neighborhoods that we represent.
Absolutely. I mean, I'm sure that's not a problem, but I did wanna make sure you were aware that the, the city was represented by, by the mayor in our office, but we can certainly talk about expanding that membership.
Yes. I, I wrote the memo. It's you and the mayor that are representing the city's interest.
And it was only one meeting. That was the first meeting that the county convened.
Regardless, I think that it's, it's important that the council is represented. Sometimes, unfortunately, the administration is not in agreement with the council. And so I think that it, there is value in having the council at the table as well. So I think that it is important. So I...
Yeah, I, I think having a couple council members serve with the administration would be adequate for us.
We can certainly, I just wanna make sure it's the county-led effort. We'll certainly push that information back. But I wanna make sure you also know that, you know, this group is not gonna determine the spending of any money coming directly to the city. That will come before this body.
But, but just for context purposes, the county's interest is serving rural communities and they're gonna do so via Wi-Fi. The city's interest is wires underneath the ground that tear up our roads.
100%.
And determines, so we don't have the same interests and priorities as the county does. And I wanna make sure that the council's in the loop because ultimately, whatever agreement we come, we're gonna have to approve here. And I don't, I wanna avoid any waste of time that we have in such an important issue as broadband connectivity.
No problem. We'll put the request in.
That's a very good point, Councilmember Arias.
And on, on that note, is there any opposition to the motion, the amended motion? Seeing none, we are finally done with the consent calendar. All right. So when we come back from lunch at 1:30, we will have two more items. Item 4A, have three cards on that one. And item 2A, we have a couple dozen cards for item 2A, the Club One. So that'll be a lively discussion. The meeting is adjourned until 1:30. All right, we're at 1:37. Going to call this meeting back to order. So before we proceed with the agenda, there is one housekeeping item. There was an agenda item added, a closed session, special emergency meeting. City Attorney?
Yes, there's been a emergency closed session called related to public security related to COVID-19. And that will need to be approved by five members of the council.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve that closed session. Second. So at the beginning of an emergency meeting or to authorize an emergency meeting, there must, there must be a vote that takes place. Actually, I think we're missing a member who stepped out to recuse herself from an item she thought we were going to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, sounds good. So any, we have a motion. We have a second?
I second it.
Second. Any opposed? Okay. We'll get to that down the road here during closed session. But for now, we'll go ahead and hear item 2A, which is, I'm gonna read that item off. Hearing on the Club One. Is there a presentation that staff has or...
Council President, real quick, I just wanted to mention again that Councilmember Soraya has recused herself on this item due to a potential conflict under the Local Reform Act.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Vice President. Thank you, City Council. At the last meeting, I think one of the council members had said, hey, we hadn't, was there a council, was a staff presentation and hadn't done this in 30 years. So we thought for the second one, let's just kinda, kinda review and recap what this process is. So what, we're gonna start by just giving you an overview of the permit process. And so it's a three-part process, investigative report, and that's what we have completed. So city manager received the information, the permit application, and we caused an investigation to be made covering all the matters relevant to that and the individual point holders and the managers. So that part has happened. Then there was a notification requirement. Once we had completed our findings and recommendations, the council, we came to the city clerk and got that at least 10 days' notice for the time and place of the council's hearing for this event. And that the official notification to adjacent property owners, as, as the ordinance is currently written, is that any property owner within 300 feet of the exterior boundaries of the premises would be notified about this. So we have completed that effort. And today, we're now in the third phase of this process, which is the council hearing and determination. We do have the full and complete application that we have presented to the council. The payments have been made and duly made to the city. And so now the council has this discretion to consider this item. Real quick on the investigation report, it's pretty prescribed, it's very prescribed in the ordinance, identify the character, nature of the applicant, the floor plan, does it comply, is compliance with the city's general plan and the zoning, the types of tables that they'll use in the proposed location, the degree of security personnel and facilities provided, and the financial stability of the point holders involved in the application. That one is a kind of a recurring theme throughout the process, but these were the items that were supposed to be part of the investigation and report. And we had the assistant city manager kinda guide this process through with the applicant. Now we'll get to the city council hearing and determination. At the time and place of the hearing, that's where we are today, council's gonna consider the application, the city manager's recommendations and findings, and then written in public testimony that has been submitted and then individuals will be commenting today. And then within a reasonable time after the close of the hearing, councils will make a determination. And then there are three things that can happen. Council will either grant, conditionally grant, or deny the card permit application. If it, if it is deemed necessary to deny, then that has to be accompanied by a written response as the basis of that denial. And then all, that written order will be published, whether it's to deny, conditionally, to grant, conditionally grant, or deny, that'll all be made out for the public to, to see. On the denial part, again, just reading right out of the ordinance, convictions of any crime, things to consider. There are about 13 things to consider. Convictions of crime, failure of the applicant to have valid registration with the attorney general, failure to propose business activity, not in compliance with federal, state, local laws, identification of any law enforcement agency, legislated by or crime commission as a member of or associated with criminal elements, knowingly making false statements, failure to satisfy as to the source of funds, prior, prior unsuitable operation of a card or gaming permit, applicant does not have the financial capability, you'll see that one again, see that one, applicant is presently under indictment, making or causing to be made any statement, provided to the city or orally to a city employee, which statement at the time in light of circumstances knowingly false, lack of evidence that there's adequate financing available, failure of any person named in the applicant when summoned to appear before the council, and then security inadequate, security. So worked with the city attorney's office and we just wanted to kinda, here is the process. Here's how this item works. Again, we hadn't done it in 30 years, so we had to dust off some of these items to consider it. And then we'll be available for questions, but we really would like the applicant to come up. But the city manager's recommendation is approval of the permit or granting of the permit. So with that, that concludes our presentation.
All right. Thank you, City Manager. I think what we're going to do here is, we'll go ahead and do the, the hearing first and hear from the, the public. When that concludes, we'll come back up here to the council for council comments. So I do have a large stack of cards from folks who submitted them this morning. If you have not submitted a card, you're free to or free not to. There will be an opportunity for more folks to chime in, even if you did not submit a card. So kick it off with Mr. Charlie Ving. And as a reminder to the public, we are at a one-minute time limit today on public comments. So please, please be succinct. But Charlie, you have one minute. Welcome.
Okay, thank you. So my name is Charlie Ving. I've been working for Club One for almost two years prior to the COVID pandemic shutdown. For the past 17 months, this pandemic has affected the entire world, having a real struggling and depressing time for all of us. I'm really excited to get my job back. Actually, I, I really need my job back. For several years, my family battled cancer. On September the 21st, 2018, we lost the war to cancer and the heavens took my mom. A dear friend of mine took me in to, took me in as a student to learn dealing, and soon after I completed and got hired. Club One Casino not only took me in as an employee, but they took me in as family. Months into my new career in the industry, I soon found out that the Indian casinos have been trying to shut us California card rooms down for several years now. We, as Club One, have defended our right to thrive and exist for the longest time. We have gone through a number of trials and tribulations. Club One has been in operations for 23-plus years, supported several families like mine, and has contributed a lot in taxes. Fresno needs Club One. My family needs Club One. City council, city council members, please, please approve of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Next, we'll have Nikki.
Good afternoon. My name is Kundara Terrakun, but my family back here knows me as Nikki. I've been working for Club One Casino for nine years. It would have been my 10th year, but COVID hit. I'm basically just here to ask for you guys to just approve us because I'm a single mom of four. I need to put my kids to college. I used to be on aid. I don't wanna be on aid. I don't wanna be on EDD. I need to go back to work. My kids need to go, go back to school. They need to get out, you know? They, they need to go back to work. I mean, I need to go back to work. Jeez, I don't even know. You know? I mean, like, can I get my job back? 17 months, too long of vacation for me. I wanna get out of the house. I wanna go do stuff for, you know, my community. Club One has given me that opportunity to earn the money that I can make and provide to my own community, you know, my Laos-Tipo community. You know, I mean, what else we gotta do? We wanna move to Granite Park? We, we were out there beautifying Fresno. We were, I was out in the back of the stadium digging trash, you know? Just let us get our job back. Thank you.
All right, we'll have Catherine, Catherine Soto. And after Catherine will be Tammy.
Excuse me, I'm kinda nervous. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Kirkland and Club One Casino. He's involved in animal rescue and he helps thousands...
Miss, can you speak up to the mic? We wanna hear you.
Oh, oh my God, on TV. I'm here and hoping you'll say yes to relocate to this business because once this man opens, he, it benefits so many animals in this, in Fresno County and all over. He's done so much. I don't even know what to say. I, I would just, we'd all in rescue and animal would like to see this open so he can help us. Cause he's, I don't know. I'm sorry, I'm very nervous. But would you please consider it? Not only that there's a lot of families that have children and they need their jobs. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have Tammy, and then Damon will follow Tammy.
Hi, I'm Tammy with the Cat House on the Kings. Club One and Kyle Kirkland and the Kirkland Foundation is one of our major partners in saving animals in the Central Valley. Kyle and Club One is a major donor when it comes to supporting rescues in this area. They have helped us transport hundreds of animals to other rescues out of state to get them adopted so they don't have to die in the valley. They have helped us fundraise and promote low-cost spay and neuter to the public. They have helped us rescue severely injured animals that need medical care that were living on the streets for months. It's what we all do together as a team of rescuers. I could go on and on with a list of wonderful things that Kyle has done for us in the Central Valley because of funding through his foundation, funded by Club One. They're a gem to the Central Valley and I hope that they are allowed to open and get to business soon. So please allow them to open in Granite Park and get back to business and put everybody back to work.
We'll have Damon. And after Damon, we'll have Joe. Joe Patterson.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Damon Fukushima. I work with PT Gaming at Club One Casino. In 2010, I was unemployed between jobs and I was offered a position at Club One. I'd never been to Fresno before. Don't, you know, didn't know anybody that lives here. But I moved my family up here to take this opportunity. I figured it'd be a, a good move for, for myself and my family. We moved here, bought a house, laid down roots and my kids are in school now. So I'm happy to call Fresno my home. I'm proud to be part of an organization that, that emphasizes honesty, integrity, and providing a good entertainment venue for, for all of Fresno. So I just implore you to, to, to vote with your conscience on this one. We really would like to, to get back to business, to, to be a good neighbor, to be a, a good, you know, yeah, just a, a good party for, for Fresno. So, so please, let us get back to work and, and vote for, to approve Club One's move. Thank you.
All right, we have Joe Patterson. And after Joe, we'll have Brad Phillips.
Hello, Council. My name's Joe Patterson. I'm the Executive Director of the California Gaming Association, which is the statewide trade association for card rooms. I also happen to sit on a city council myself. Just got done with a six-hour meeting. So I appreciate all your time and service, obviously, to the community. Kyle didn't ask me to come here. I came here because I've, he's president of our association and personally for me, he's been such an amazing mentor. But people aren't showing up here because, you know, he asked them to. They're showing up because they want to. I mean, this really is a family. And he's, he's been a mentor to so many people. But most importantly, he's loyal to all the organizations and everything he deals with. He's not only the CGA president, he's ob, obviously very involved with the zoo here, the Kirkland Foundation, and also serves on the California Council of Problem Gambling, which is a statewide organization. But as a city council member myself, I would do anything to have a business like Club One Casino in my community that hires hundreds of people with living wage jobs. I'll keep it at that. But thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you, Joe. We'll have Brad Phillips. And following Brad, we'll have Cindy.
Good afternoon. My name's Brad Phillips. I have 18 years in the casino industry and due to the pandemic, I lost my job. But was fortunate enough and very lucky to join the Club One family. So I am employed there and I think I could speak for everybody here. We, we just wanna get back to work. I mean, unemployment, we're beyond that now. It's been 17 months and truthfully, aside from that, we just wanna get back to work. So we're just asking, please, help us out, get us back to work. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Cindy will be next. Following Cindy, we'll have Aya. Aya Fernandez.
Good afternoon. I'm kind of nervous. Never been here and talk like this.
Pull the microphone down a little bit.
My name is Cindy Sopa. I am working for Casino, Club One Casino, for 22 years. And I'm a single mom, raised my kids, four kids. I, my kids is, go to US Army, and one of my daughters finished nursing school. I'm so thankful for Club One Casino to give me a job like Kyle. I would like to go back to work. It's been so long for me to stay home for 17 months. And would you please approve us for all of us, a hundred of dealers, hundreds of people, and many people need a job. And we promise you guys, we're going to support the city and so will my boss, the owner, Kyle. He's such a nice guy. He would like to help all the city and support. Thank you so much. Please approve us to go back to work. We promise.
We have Aya Fernandez, followed by Shane.
Hello. All right. Good afternoon, Councils. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak about why you should let Club One Casino to open up. My name is Aya Fernandez, and I have been working for Club One for 15 years. To me, it's not just a place to work, but also a second home. I have three young children, and they are only 13, eight, and six. I have been unemployed for 17 months now, and this pandemic has been very difficult for me and my family. I hope that you can find it in your heart to let Club One Casino to open up so that I can continue to provide for my family. Thank you.
All right, we have Shane. Shane Hamilton. Okay, we'll move on to Brandon Duenas. And after Brandon, we'll have Chu.
Afternoon. I first stepped into Club One Casino in 2004. I was part of that whole poker boom, and that's how I first was introduced into the casino. I have frequented the casino for the last 16, 17 years prior to the shutdown, and that's how I know the majority of the people in this room behind me. Fortunately, two months ago, I was given the opportunity to take on a managerial position. And being in my industry, you know, you do a little bit of college, but once you get into the industry and you start seeing how you can provide for your family and yourself, it's just like any kind of profession. One of the oldest professions in the world, bartending. I'm really good at it. Oh, excuse me. So me having this opportunity for this huge endeavor that's coming in here, the expansion and the vision in which Kirkland and everyone else behind it has, it's amazing. So please let us do it. You guys will not regret it. And the food's going to be bomb.
All right, so we'll have Chu, followed by Nicholas.
Good afternoon, Fresno leaders. I'm a dealer for Club One for many, many years and still like to continue to do so. I'm hungry, hungry to go back to work for Club One. I want to grow with Club One. I say, let's open Club One now. I'm Chu Hurd, and I approve this message.
I want Chu in my next commercial. So we have, Nicholas is up next, and after Nicholas, we'll have Ty. Nicholas Gross.
Hi, my name is Nicholas Riley Gross. I'm 27 years old. Since the pandemic started, I have gone through job to job after being unemployed, and it's been rather rough. I've tried being a security guard. I've tried being a assistant manager at Club, not Club One, at Big Five. I tried all these different jobs. I went through five different jobs. And I know that being a banker at PT Gaming, I was, I was good at that. And I want to continue to be good at that while I try to go back to school and try to support my future wife. Please, please approve of Club One opening. Thank you.
So we have Ty Mua, followed by Samantha. Ty? All right, we'll move on to Samantha. Samantha Fields. All right, next card will be John. John with no H. Come on down.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is John Dolan. I am the Chief Executive Officer of the Fresno Chaffee Zoo, and I'm here today in support of Club One's relocation to the Granite Park complex that you are considering. I have some prepared remarks, but I'm really not going to speak to those. What I really want to say is, I've been here for six months. I relocated here from New York City. The reason why I came to Fresno is because I thought this was a happening city where a lot of things were going right. But the other reason I came here is because the Board of Directors of the Fresno Chaffee Zoo impressed me so much. And Kyle Kirkland, who is the head of Club One Casinos, is the Chairman of the Board of the Fresno Chaffee Zoo. So I think I am actually in a good position to speak not only to the business savvy of this gentleman, because people behind me are talking about not working for 17 months. And every single one of the Fresno Chaffee Zoo employees have been working through all this in thanks, large part, to the leadership of the Board of Directors. The civic leadership that they have shown in this community is non-parallel. It is amazing. The fundraisers they do, the work they do in their own house about around diversity in terms of their employment, they lead the Fresno Chaffee Zoo. And they lead the Fresno Chaffee Zoo in our own diversity efforts, our own conservation efforts, and our One Fresno program that you know that we work with the city on. So I am speaking in support of that relocation, sir.
Thank you. All right, so next we have Erica Macedo, followed by Danielle.
Hi, Council members. I've been at Club One for almost 15 years, so I could talk a lot about how Club One has allowed me to provide for my family of four. It's allowed me to realize my dream of purchasing my first home in your district, Mr. Carvasi, and how I'd like to get back to work and get off my forbearance. But what I want to talk about is the community that Club One provides. I've witnessed and had some of the most insightful conversations with people that I may have never experienced otherwise. I keep hearing this ad on the radio, and it's like you can sign up to talk to someone who's not of your political affiliation for 50 minutes, and it's supposed to foster, like, inclusion and knowing people. And I feel like that's what Club One does all the time. You sit at a poker table with people. They might be old, they might be young, they might be rich, they might be poor, but they're all talking. They're talking about sports, they're talking about politics, they're getting together, and they're getting to know each other. And I feel like we really shouldn't take for granted what effect that has on the community. So if you could allow us to move and open, that'd be great. Thank you.
Next speaker will be Danielle, and Danielle will be followed by Jack.
Good afternoon. My name is Danielle Legler. I'm here to ask that you approve Club One Casino's relocation so they can continue to support animal welfare in the valley. My mom and I began taking care of a neighborhood stray cat around 14 years ago. Even after I moved out, my mom's passing, I would still visit that cat every day and take care of her to the best of my ability. However, she became badly injured, and I didn't have the financial means to help her. The Kirkland Foundation took a chance on my senior kitty and gave her the surgery she needed. They gave her a second chance at life for the rest of her days she had left when most would want to immediately euthanize her. Later on, after she eventually passed on, they went out of their way to pay for her cremation and a beautiful urn. It touched my heart deeply, not only because their kindness and care for my cat, but because that cat was a special connection that I had with my mom. It gave me a bit of closure to move on with my life in a positive way. It is something I will cherish forever. It made me so grateful for the amazing impact they have on so many lives, whether it be human or animals. They do so much good for the world. Please, please approve Club One's relocation.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jack, followed by Chef.
Hi, my name is Jack. Thank you very much for being here today and listening to me. I have a modest 501(c)(3) animal nonprofit rescue. I reside proudly in District 7, and been a nonprofit animal rescue for roughly three years. And it was shortly thereafter, I had met Kyle through a lady named Tammy at Cat House on the Kings where Club One was performing fundraiser. In the time that I've known Kyle, he's been real generous as far as being able to provide a little bit of infrastructure to my small animal rescue, and has just had a kind spirit. And because of that, some of the cats we've rescued have gone off and been adopted and taken care of. So it's because of that generosity and that spirit where a successful businessman is putting something back into the community where we all can win. So once the city council approves the permit for Club One Casino, the city wins, his employees win, and those who don't have a voice in this community, like cats and kittens, also continue to win. Thank you very much. Great day to y'all.
Next up, we have Chef, followed by Nee Fam.
Good afternoon, Subaidi. That's my language, of course. I'm a rookie. I just came on board about, what, seven weeks ago? I don't know what I got myself into, to be honest with you. But it's family, you know? Tell you the truth, it's family. Came on, came on board, and we're just talking, and we're just clicking and everything else, and, you know, I just want to get back to work. I've been out of work for 10 months. I've been with a different casino for 20 years. And like, the pandemic hit, and it was ugly. It was ugly. At the end of the day, I just want to provide for the family. As you can see this morning, you know, you guys had a handful of people asking for housing and everything else, and this is my first time here. And I'm sitting here listening to their problems, and we're fighting, right? Everybody's fighting for a reason. Everybody's fighting for a reason. We're fighting for Club One, and wanting them to just open. We want to just get back to work. I just want to go and cook, you know? I just want to cook. That's all I want to do. I want to cook for you. And I guarantee you, I make the best vegetarian sandwich. Okay? With that said, you know, I really don't want-
Chef, for the record, that only gets you one vote.
That's one vote, you got it. That's the one we need. That's the one we need. But to be honest with you, you know, I don't want to return here and then, you know, ask you guys to help house my family. Thank you.
Thank you, Chef. I'll be turning the meeting over to Council President Chavez, who graces with his presence.
All right. Thank you for that, colleagues. Apologize for being a little late. There were some technical difficulties on there. But next speaker is Ghee Fam. You'll have one minute, and then it'll be followed by Dempsey Eslick. Fam, who is yours?
Hello, good afternoon, Fresno Council, and my Club One family back here. My name is Nee Fam, and I have been at Club One since the end of 2017. And since I worked at Club One, I have been having kids back-to-back. And you see, this is like my third kid, and Club One doesn't mind that. Club One helped me deal with a work that can provide for my family a lot, you know? And I'm really truly thankful to be, say, how much Club One employed and their family, plus the community depend on Club One to be opened up again. And you see, what happened in the past 2020 and still going on, we lost our job, we lost our family member due to COVID, and like, stand up, like, being stable and enjoy our thing that we do to do before, you know? So we are in a state that, like, everything needs to open back up again, so Club One needed to open up again because Club One provides so much for helping with the Fresno with attack, you know? So please help us, and I wish everybody, like, happy, healthy, and be good to one another because we are glad to be here today.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fam. Next up is Dempsey Eslick. I think you might be one of our youngest speakers today.
Hello, Council. This, I'm Dempsey Vance, and I care about cats, and I think you should too.
Nice, clean, straight to the point. Very good job, young man. Very good job. All right, we are down to our last three speakers. Next up is Mr. Kyle Kirkland. He's the CEO of Club One. Mr. Kirkland.
Council members, my name is Kyle Kirkland, President of Club One Casino, and it's been very emotional for me listening to these folks today. I did not expect that. Expected to stand up here in front of you and talk about what we are committed to do for this community and our safe, responsible operation and our commitment to the community that we serve, both in Fresno, Granite Park. We're very anxious to bring value into that community and make the district proud. But as I'm standing here, I'm sort of taken aback by our folks because as we prepared for this, all of the signage, you can tell the professional signs that we put together, and then all the signs that our crew put together that are really heartfelt, orgiatic, and show their commitment to this. Is, more than anything, I just want to say thank you to the folks that are behind us today, from the community, from Club One, our family members. It's incredibly rewarding for us to hear them speak and to know that we're doing the right thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. And thank you, Ryan, for keeping us safe and healthy with that. Next up, I read it. I thought it might have been a typo, but I see him out of the corner of my eye. Former Councilmember emeritus Clint Olivier. Welcome up. I know it looks a little bit different looking this way, but welcome back to the spaceship.
Thank you. It's actually very good to be back, and I have many happy memories here, and so I'm happy to-
And you'll have one minute. Kidding, go ahead.
I can get it done, I promise. Council President and members of the city council, thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to speak with you this afternoon. My name is Clint Olivier. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of the Business Federation of the Central Valley. We're a standing coalition of about 70 members representing 30,000 individual businesses and more than 400,000 workers and their families throughout the valley. Our executive committee, our Board of Directors, voted in emergency session earlier this week to support the move of Club One Casino from downtown to District 4. Our Board of Directors believes very strongly that this move will be of great benefit, not only to District 4, but to the city as a whole and also to the region, not only in terms of tax revenue and economic activity, but also because I know that animals are going to benefit because of the good work that Kyle Kirkland does through his foundation. So in closing, members of the council, we request that you approve this move, you facilitate this move, make it easy for them, and make it happen the way that the City of Fresno can make these kinds of things happen. can make these kinds of things happen. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right. Our last speaker will be Mr. Tao Eslick. Mr. Eslick, you sure? You okay? Okay, all right. Then former council member Clint Olivier was the pinnacle of the testimony here today. All right. With that, I think we will close public comment. And now, bring it back up to the dais, Councilmember Maxwell. I believe this is in your area. Would you like to go first?
Sure, I'd like to go first, but I'd also like to go last. I want to first thank everybody who came here and shared your testimony today, whether you're a patron or employee. I do have some thoughts that I look forward to sharing with you, but I'd like to hear from my council colleagues before we bring it back around to me. So I'll pass it off to any of you folks if you have-
Yeah, we got Councilmember Arias punched up, and then followed by Councilmember Bretafeld.
Thank you. And thank you all for coming today. Just for the record, and in full transparency, Mr. Kirkland has contributed to my campaign, so I consider him a supporter, but it doesn't preclude me from asking some very difficult and direct questions about what we're about to consider. I see all the lovely photos of dogs and cats, and for the record, I'm a cat and dog lover, but today is about a casino and not the philanthropic work of the CEO. So I'm going to try and stick to what's on the record, get some clarity. As you all know, Club One used to be my district, and it was an anchor for downtown, and I welcome his relocation to the city in a place that he can flourish in a way that makes sense for the business model and for the neighborhood. For me, I'm really primarily concerned about any neighborhood that's receiving any kind of establishment, and that the concerns of the neighborhood are going to be taken into account. And I tend to default to my colleagues' whose area that is, because ultimately, they got to deal with the complaints and the phone calls and all of the resident issues that pop up as a result of a business. So with that, let me start off with a couple of questions. And also, for the record, I'm not a gambler, so I don't know things about gambling, so I'm going to try and stick to what I do know. But for the city staff, the report that was included in our package indicated that there's two applicants, for the record. Mr. Kirkland is one of them. Who's the other applicant? I don't have any familiarity with the other applicant, for the record.
The other applicant is Dana. Let me bring up her last name here. Messina, thank you.
And what's her role in the application? Is it part of, Mr. Kirkland, if you could answer these questions? Yeah, I'm going based on what we have in the report, and all we indicate is there's a second, you know, applicant to the license.
No, of course. And I'm happy to answer any questions for council members. Councilmember Arias, Dana Messina is a longtime business partner of mine. He's male. He's, so he's often, I think you've referenced him as Herb. It's a, he's a male. He's been a Club One shareholder for the entirety of the time that we were operating in your district. So in the entire time that I've been involved with Club One, he's been involved as well. He is, he lives in Los Angeles. We talk two or three times a week. I actually, in our business practices, chose to move up here and be the operating manager, but he's a 50% shareholder. He's been texting me throughout this process and margin.
Would you consider him a silent partner or an active partner?
Active in that he is, he's a shareholder. We talk frequently. He has a number of other business interests. He's the leading expert witness for the United States Department of Labor and certain things, and has chosen to take more of a backseat role in this. I think he trusts my judgment in this community and with the operation, but we talk frequently. I would not consider him a silent partner.
Great, thank you. And then, I also noticed in the staff report that the police department concluded that Mr. Kirkland, and I'm assuming his partner, have the sufficient financial assets to operate the card room. Is the police department qualified to make that determination? Or do we have accountants that determine somebody's assets and whether they have sufficient assets to operate a casino?
So I'm going to let Raj chime in just a tiny bit, because I think some of it is based back off the ordinance. But every year since that Mr. Kirkland and Mr. Messina have had the card room, they undergo not only a background check of criminal and financial for the city, but they also do that at the state level. So the State Department of Gaming does a similar background check. And so, yes, that is something that happens annually by the City of Fresno.
Yeah, I understand the criminal background.
There is a financial asset.
Correct. So is it the police department that looked at financial records and determined that there's sufficient assets there, or is another set of eyes? Because I don't know too many police officers that have the accounting background to make that determination.
I believe it's a combination of both, but I also believe that this is tied into what the ordinance originally said, that the PD would do this. It's similar to what the Department of Gaming does.
So for the record, city manager, are you comfortable that we've confirmed that the financial assets exist for the operator to be recommended?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Just want to make sure we're all clear, because sometimes we give our police departments more work outside their scope that they're really not trained for.
Councilmember Arias, if it's any comfort, we have audited financial statements and have had them since 2007. The last year was obviously a very difficult year, being closed for 17 months, but we've continued with those audits, and we've continued with our city audits as well. There's a City of Fresno revenue audit that we completed for last year, even though we weren't operational. So we do have accounting oversight. We also have Bureau of Gambling Control accounting oversight, in which we have to file our financial reports with them every year.
Perfect.
And Councilmember Arias, this is not just your regular police officer. This is your vice intelligence unit that conducts these background checks and regularly is into, in the facility, making sure that things are done above and aboard order.
Got it. Thank you. And then, your liquor license, I know here you had a unique downtown environment. Is the operational liquor license that was in downtown hours of operation, is that all being transferred to Granite Park? And are you proposing the same operational hours?
We are. We're proposing to move our license, which is basically a restaurant bar liquor license, which allows us to serve, you know, a full bar with our food service. It's similar to what the other restaurants in the area have. In fact, it's the same. It's from 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM. We have had, we've had liquor license, I think we've had eight different liquor licenses, myself and my business partner, over the last three decades. We've never had an issue with ABC. When we moved into that, or proposed moving to the community, we did outreach with the other businesses in the area, talked with them, talked about how we could be sharing. And we also had conversation with Councilmember Maxwell about concerns about alcohol service. I feel very comfortable with what we've done, based on our track record and also our 24-hour security and surveillance. We take minors on the property very seriously. We obviously can't have them in gaming, can't have them at the bar, but we've done a number of family-related events and managed that around the liquor licenses. So it's our, it's our proposal to have the same liquor license hours that others have in our community. And if anything, we're, I think we have more levels of checks and balance on us. Not only do we have the city and ABC, we have the Bureau of Gambling Control, which has us, basically have to answer for every call for service.
And if I understand your proposal, you're not only proposing to operate a casino, but also essentially an event center, where I'm assuming you're going to have events. So there'll be a mixture of populations and age groups. Is all that going to be filtered through the city process on the condition use permit at that point, or is all that already been addressed now?
So I don't know that it's all been addressed. And moving to our existing location, there is part of that building that's already been built out. It's our proposal initially to move into that and not use the event space, because we're very, we have a limited footprint. As we build out the rest of the building, we would consider doing events there. I'm not, I think I need to check on the CUP and anything else that we would need to do, but I'm not aware of anything that we're proposing to do that would be outside the realm of the liquor license that we propose. If anything, it's not going to be the nightclub that it was there before. It's a much more controlled atmosphere.
Yeah, that's, he has identified his layout in his application. And the old Club One, I guess we have to call it old now, also had an-
Former, legacy.
Also had a, an event space in it, too, right? When you walked in the door, to your immediate right.
Right, yeah. Okay. And are you planning to re-employ all the individuals that spoke today, the folks that were laid off? What's exactly your startup plan? Because I've been hearing that it's hard to find employees. I mean, are you going to be operational? And when do you anticipate being operational?
Yeah, and listen, we're very wired into the business community and very sensitive to that. That was an initial concern about, are we going to be able to bring staff people back? We've managed to stay in contact with most of our staff members, but we've been closed for 17 months. Some have just had the financial reality of having to move on. Some moved out of area, taken jobs with other casinos or other establishments. We've been very fortunate to have a nice response. I think we've hired back 150 people. It's our intention to get back to full strength, which is roughly 300 people working in the building. We, in certain disciplines, in the kitchen and what have you, we've been, you know, struggling to find folks and have to reach a little deeper, and we pay a little more, as everyone else does. But we're going to get ourselves back to full strength. If anything, we've told our crew, hey, listen, it's going to be 18 to 24 months of working extra shifts, and, you know, you're going to have to learn how to work the walk, right? So, but I feel like we're going to be able to get staff properly. In terms of the gaming function, fortunately, our jobs are good jobs for people, and they actually pay more than assistants that's out there. So as you've heard today, our folks are anxious to get back to work on the casino floor. Some of the other disciplines, we have to work a little bit harder. Been very fortunate in security and surveillance. We have almost a full complement of folks back. I was concerned about that. But we have almost all the same folks that we had before, fully trained, guard-carded, back up to speed, and actually, a number of them have already been employed on property.
And my final, my final question, what's your estimated value of the 51 tables?
Estimated value?
Correct.
In terms of-
If somebody purchased the 51 tables?
Wow. Well, so, that's a good question. I haven't thought about that. I mean, we would think about our business in terms of its ongoing operational value, and in the last year, it's been somewhat more limited. 51 tables for us is extremely valuable because of it creates a size and a scope, and it allows us to do events which attract folks from out of the area. We're a top 10 in the state in terms of cardroom size. In terms of revenue, we're probably not top 10, but what the 51 tables allows us to do is do tournament events, do televised events, the things where we can draw people out of area. It's not uncommon for us to be running, you know, a Labor Day event, a Memorial Day event, a St. Patrick's Day event, and draw folks from as far as Bakersfield and Sacramento. We've done televised, you know, events, and so there's tremendous value for us in terms of competitive advantage, because the other folks that we compete with don't have the size and the ability to do that. So critical for us in terms of operation, hard to say, to put a monetary value on those. They, and the value, since there's only one cardroom in the city, and there can only be one cardroom in the city, the way the moratorium works, essentially, if we don't have them, they just sit dormant. So in terms of competitive strength and value for the city, because candidly, we were in partnership with the city, it is in the city's best interest for those to be approved for our use.
Speaking of dormant tables, of the 51 tables, how many do you anticipate, you know, being operational on a daily basis versus being dormant?
Okay. Initially, in the smaller footprint, we expect to have at least 25 tables operational. We expect to have, as we build out the remainder of the building, the first thing that we're going to be working on is the permanent gaming space, where we would intend to put all 51 in place. And as it works out with the size typically, and this was true with the old, legacy Club One, where we had 46 to 48 tables on the floor, and then we'd bring others up and move them around if we had significant events. It's just, if we don't need them, we can have a little extra space for guests to move around. So, but it's not uncommon for us to use all those tables when we're doing significant events.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkland, and thank you, everyone, for attending and showing your support for this project.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Now, we will have Councilmember Bretafeld, you were punched up.
Yeah. Mr. Kirkland, you were shut down like so many, many months ago because of government mandates. Is that right?
That's correct.
When were you shut down?
We closed on March 17th with a number of, I think that's pretty much the full closure of everyone. We reopened, I'm going to say momentarily, in June, from, I think, June 18th to July 1st, about 12 days, and that was in 2020. We have been closed since. A number of cardrooms and restaurants were able to actually open and function outside, but we didn't have that. We had an underground garage, and we had streets bordering us, so we weren't able to move outside, as you've seen other restaurants and actually other cardrooms. A lot of cardrooms around the state were able to move into their parking lot.
Okay. But I think what is most important to me is that as of March 17, 2021, government shuts you down. People in state office, there are people up here who voted to shut down businesses. And all of these people that are here, and the stories that they have told, I hope resonate with those who wanted to shut you down and other businesses. That is, that they weren't able to pay bills for their families, they had to find other jobs if they potentially could. All the while, Lowe's and Home Depot and Walmart and all these other big box stores stayed open. Government, in its infinite stupidity, shut you down and shut the lives down of these people. So I want everybody up here to remember these stories, because these are the stories that I was trying to say, and these people are being impacted by the stupid decisions coming out of this building, out of state houses, which is shutting down people. That you could have run your business just as Home Depot and Walmart and Lowe's, and asked people to wear masks and to distance if they could, just like they did up at Chancy and other places, and put these plastic things in there. You could have been doing this all along. All of this pain and suffering over the last 17 months did not have to happen. And my fear, that as we're going with all the scare tactics of the Delta variant, and children are being masked up as they go to school, and now whether you're vaccinated or not, you have to put on a mask, as the goalposts continue to change, and if we had that stupid four-color-coded tier system put forward by Newsom that was completely unscientific, we today would be in the red tier system if you were not facing a recall. This is all fact. So I, of course, support you. You run a fantastic operation. You always have. You do it above board. You generate a million dollars to the city in the tax coffers. You employ hundreds of people, and you shouldn't have been shut down. I'm glad that you have made a decision to move to another place because it serves your business interests. I'm glad these people are able to come back. I wish you the very best. I appreciate all of the work you do, as I've told you privately, with what you do for animals is incredible. The fact that you fly them, I'm jealous, because I'm a pilot, and I don't fly anymore.
Used to. I had to sell the plane.
That's right. You told me that. So I appreciate all that you do, Mr. Kirkland, all of your generosity and the fact that you employ all these great people. I wish you the best. I, of course, fully support your operation and opening up, and I hope all of these fine people are not shut down again, and I hope your business is not shut down again, because frankly, I have fears about where this is all heading, because it seems like déjà vu. It seems like we've been here before. The goalposts always move. They continue to be shifted. Be vaccinated. You don't wear a mask, now you have to wear a mask. Don't wear a mask. Wear one mask, two masks, eye goggles, hand gloves. It changes all the time. So I wish you the best, and I, of course, fully support you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkland, for that. Council colleagues, does anybody else have questions? I have a couple of comments and questions, but I want to go, I'll go last if that's the case. No, no questions? All right. I want to thank you, Mr. Kirkland. You and I have had a number of conversations about your establishment, about your move. Personally, I would have loved for you to come to District 5, but I know you, you got to do what you got to do. But I also just wanted to make just some brief comments, and I want to always put things in perspective. I know why you did what you did with regards to shutting down. I understand that. And I just want to make sure that we do not lose sight that this pandemic is really what caused a lot of the hardship. I partially agree with my colleague, where some of the decisions, we could have, hindsight 2020, maybe done things differently. I think we're all learning. We're going through the learning process. We know a lot more now. But I just want to make sure that the public understands that this is a very real threat. I know that because I have hundreds of families in my district that sadly lost a loved one to this disease. And we need to make sure that we refocus this. We got to be safe. We got to have safeguards in place, but this is a very real threat to our community. And you have been at the forefront of making sure that your employees, that your business was safe. I've seen the precautions that you've taken. I don't think there's been any doubt on my support for your business. I think for me, it's always been a question of, obviously, my colleague, that it's in his district. I know he's going to get the calls from constituents, from people that live around the neighborhood. the neighborhood. I wanna make sure that all of those mitigating factors are considered, and I know you've been working closely with Councilmember Maxwell with regards to how do we be a good neighbor in something that I, I think there's, there's a way there of helping both the neighborhood and the venue and the business and your business, because I have a lot of respect for you as a businessman. I, I've known you for a number of years, Kyle, and I know you, you run a tight ship. I just wanna make sure that those measures were taken into consideration. I know staff went through a very long, lengthy process of, you know, making your decision and your recommendation. I have full confidence in that, in the, the folks that you employ. I thought I saw Danisi, oh, there, there's Danisi right there, retired police officer, by the way, great, great guy. I know you, you, you work with really great people, but I do wanna hear what my colleague, Councilmember Maxwell, has to say, 'cause I know he's been working really hard with you and your team. So, with that, I will, you know, now turn it over to the representative of the area.
Councilmember Maxwell, can I just ask one last question? I, I noticed that about half the people in the audience are wearing their masks, my assumption is they're not vaccinated. If you open up immediately, as you know, we're in the peak of the variants.
Sure.
And most of the folks that are now being victimized by the pandemic are much younger in age.
Right.
How do you plan to operate based on what we're seeing today and, and how soon do you plan to be operational? 'Cause we might be over this in a couple of weeks, but...
Can I ask legal counsel, before he answers that question, are we legally allowed to use that in the determination of our decision here today? Is this quasi judicial?
I'm not using that to determine, I'm using the, the record, but...
I know, I know, I'm, I'm sorry, I just wanna double check before we get ourselves into trouble.
Can we get clarification on that, on that legal question?
That's all, it's just a legal question.
Can you repeat the question?
If he answers that question, oh, I'm sorry.
My question is simply, what precautions will he put in place if he reopens during the pandemic, which is allowed under the state order?
Oh, okay.
And so, and...
So, before you answer that, Kyle, legal counsel, are we allowed to ask that question? I think we wanna get clarification on that.
To clarify, safety is one of the factors that you can consider, yes.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Kirkland.
Security and safety.
Okay, and like so many things, we answer to, we answer not only to you folks in Fresno, PD and ABC, we also answer to the state and county levels, to the Bureau of Gambling Control and California Gambling Control Commission, who has set out emergency sanitation guidelines. And I would tell you too, as I stand here, I oper, also operate under the shadow of my HR person back there, who's just like, what's he gonna say? Is he gonna step out of line? Our policy has been when we're hiring now, we're sort of, you know, getting a sense for where folks are with vaccinations, certainly looking at the guidelines at the state level. I think under the emergency sanitation guidelines that we have to operate under, we have to have guests with masks and things like that, and our staff members, if they aren't, if we can't show they're all fully vaccinated, we need to, you know, make sure they have masks. We have talked about this in terms of hiring, like what we can do and talk to counsel. I personally have been vaccinated, I feel like that's sort of my thing, but I feel like others may disagree with us. The, I've encouraged it of our staff members, I think we have some staff members that are pregnant or feathers, ailments.
That's sufficient for me, Mr. Kirkland.
Okay. And Councilmember, he would have to follow, as you are as an employer of fifty or more people, he has to follow the Cal OSHA guidelines, which would require the same thing as we're doing in our building. If you are vaccinated, want to rest, rest your mask, you must show proof of that vaccination, and there's three different ways to do that. And if you are unable to do that, both as a guest or as a staff person, then you have to wear your mask.
That answer your question, Councilmember Maradona? All right, Councilmember Maxwell?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you again, Mr. Kirkland, for taking the time, and I wanna say that this is probably one of the most difficult decisions I've had to make on this council, just because it is one that, there's a lot of interest at stake here, and there's a lot of interest to balance and a lot of considerations that I have to make, and I wanna go through some of those, just so my colleagues have a better understanding of some of the issues I've been tackling, so you understand, you know, why it has been a difficult situation to arrive where I am at today and, and understanding for the audience as well. And I wanna go through the good and the bad, and obviously, we spoke about this early on. One of the earliest hesitations I had was the location of the, of the proposed site. There are a lot of facilities in our city that we don't allow near sensitive use areas. I think the most obvious one that comes to mind is a marijuana dispensary, not allowed within so many feet of a school, not allowed within so many feet of a park. For whatever reason, the way our codes are written, that does not apply to a casino. And this, of course, will be moving into the Granite Park Sports Complex, which we know has been plagued with multiple issues over the past several months, as well as a block away from Duncan Polytechnic High School. There was the consideration that Fresno Unified opposed this. Now, whatever the reasons were, you know, I can't, I can't speak to how they got to their decision, it probably has something to do with the fact that Club One, the new site, is proposed to be the block north of Duncan Polytech, where children walk to school and walk back home every single day. I had concerns with the hours of the alcohol sales, which I shared with you, twenty hours a day, every day, Monday through Sunday, six AM to two AM, again, next to a large park in my district. And another issue was the parking. I, I don't think that there has historically been a long-term plan for the parking of that shopping complex, which has given rise to a lot of issues, and that issue persists for other businesses that wanna develop in that area and might have a hard time finding the parking unless there's a real investment into a lot of parking in the Granite Park Sports Complex. Now, all that being said, Mr. Kirkland, I wanna say what you've done right, and it's a lot. I wanna say some of the things that I think you've been doing right and which I appreciate. One of the things is you did reach out and you made yourself available to listen to me and my concerns as well as my staff, and you really took those into consideration. I know you did. And you even took us on a tour to the Club One premises, and I saw what a beautiful spot it was, and I know that place has been vacant and blighted and used as a homeless shelter unofficially for many years. And I've heard from the dozens of businesses nearby who have said what a boon this would be for them to have those added security measures. A lot of these places and that shopping complex, you know this, they're facing frequent vandalisms and break-ins, homeless people sleeping in the facilities, and I know that your facility could add incredible security measures, not just to Club One, but to everybody doing business in that complex. I've read the dozens upon dozens of emails and letters that I've gotten over the past couple of weeks from patrons saying what a great facility Club One is and what a great place it is to go spend their free time in the city. We lack a lot of things to do in the city, and Club One has provided a source of entertainment for a lot of people responsibly for many years. And I can't deny the benefit that a million dollars in tax revenue brings to our city every single year and allows us to do things like invest in police and parks and our broken infrastructure. And most importantly, you guys make a great vegetarian sandwich, so... I think one of the things that separates the mayor and the city manager from the city council is that they're tasked with looking at the forest as a whole, and we on the council are tasked with looking at the forest for the tree. And, and for me, that's neighborhood by neighborhood and taking into consideration the needs and the desires and the wants and the struggles of every single community within my district. So, I do wanna express to you the one cardinal sin that was committed, Mr. Kirkland, and that was the lack of outreach to the community around Granite Park Sports Complex. I think I told you, that's probably my top concern. There's been folks that have lived in those neighborhoods for forty, fifty, even sixty years, believe it or not. I've talked to folks who have lived there for that long, they still remember when Granite Park was Harpen's Dairy, walking through there and watching all the development that's taken place over the years, and I'm still getting phone calls from folks finding out, there's a casino going up across the street? Why have I not heard about this? And, and I think what you'll find, Mr. Kirkland, is not an opposition to the casino, but an indignation of the fact that they were not consulted and brought into the conversation, 'cause I think what you'll find is the people that have called that their community for forty, fifty, sixty years, they have a lot of terrific insight and they have input that they wanna give. So, I say all of that to say this, Mr. Kirkland. Considering everything that I've discussed today, the pros and the cons that weighed heavily on me for the last few months, I'm not gonna reject your request for the car What I am gonna do is I'm gonna continue this matter for no less than thirty days so that you have the appropriate time to do the outreach to my community and do to District Four what you did here today, what you did with the op-eds and the letters to the editors and the letters that I received and all the folks in the audience. If you can organize something like this, I know you could organize some good community meetings in District Four. I know that we could host it at Granite Park, some of our friends there I'm sure would be willing to barbecue and host an area for folks to give their input, share some of their concerns, give some good ideas that they've had. I'd also like to invite into that conversation Trinity Lutheran Church and St. James Episcopal Church, right across the street from you, which have been pillars of that neighborhood for almost fifty years, and they have some really great ideas as well. So, my office is happy to assist in any of that outreach, Mr. Kirkland. I think we're gonna have a really productive conversation, which is gonna get me to a place where I'm comfortable getting a casino in that location, and we'd be happy to go out, knock on door after door to give out flyers, to raise awareness, but at the end of the day, that's not gonna be the job of my office, that's your job, Mr. Kirkland. You're wishing to move into this community, which has a lot of roots, and they wanna give input, and to me, that's the most critical factor here. The, the sales tax and everything is great, but at the end of the day, I was sent here to protect my constituents' interest, and if they feel like they haven't even had an opportunity to express those interests or concerns, I have issue with that. So, while you meet me halfway, I would like to continue this no less than thirty days, give us both ample time to do the proper amount of outreach that is needed for development such as this, to go into that neighborhood. And that'll be my motion.
Second?
Councilmember, are you closing the public hearing or, and adding this as a condition? Just, I need some clarification, that's all.
What I am asking is to continue the consideration. I'm not rejecting it, I would like to just move that to no less than thirty days from now, to give Mr. Kirkland ample time to do some community outreach in District Four. So, just essentially bringing this vote back.
I, I got that part. It, it's the issue of the public hearing. Is that, is that, will that...
Legal counsel, what would be the process to do what the council member is requesting?
So, it sounds like what the council, and I'm just gonna extrapolate from what you've said, it sounds like the council member wants to continue the hearing to allow additional public outreach. Does that sound accurate?
Whatever the proper method is that would allow us to talk to those folks in that neighborhood, I, I've really enjoyed listening to all the employees and all the patrons, but for me, as the council member of that neighborhood, I haven't heard from those folks in my neighborhood, and that's really what's most important. So, if that requires us keeping the hearing open, I'm okay with that, but if we don't need to keep the hearing open, then that's not...
Mr. Kirkland, I think what my colleague is, is asking is just to have that community meeting. Here's what I'll share with you. Both my parents live across the street from there, and I can guarantee you, they're gonna wanna gamble across the street. No, here's why I'm saying it. So, so they live on Buckingham, and some of you know Buckingham is like senior citizenville because, you know, and, and they love to gamble. I think we all, we all know that. So, I think all my colleague is asking for is just to have one community meeting there, and I think what I heard was you have the commitment of supporting this going through and making sure we have that engagement piece so that he can have at least some, you know, ability to communicate to his residents that, hey, we're having this conversation, and, and I think there might be a couple of vegetarians there in the neighborhoods too that like the vegetarian sandwich. So, that's essentially what I heard the request was, and that's what legal counsel just advises us, what he took from that.
Council President, if I may, you know, Club One has been a longtime tenant of downtown, so you're gonna make this huge investment and be a longtime tenant of Granite Park, I think a face-to-face community meeting would be, you know, exactly what the neighborhood would, would need, in my view, and would not need from the perspective of you need it for our approval, but being a good neighbor starts with introducing yourself, talking to the neighbors, explaining to them so that there's no misunderstandings of what's gonna take place and what's not.
Okay. If, I'd just like to offer a couple of comments, just if I could, on that, and I appreciate that, that early on, we talked about outreach and as sort of somewhat savvy as I feel I am, I've never been sort of a community organizer in that regard. I did, what we did do, if it's at all helpful, is when we saw the feedback from, on the liquor license, which the, just to be clear, the school board didn't oppose the move of the casino, it was just the liquor license, and we immediately called them and said, hey, what's the issue here? We're well outside the bounds, here's how the traffic flow works, it doesn't seem like it would be a threat to Duncan Polytechnic, we're sixteen hundred feet away, and the feedback that I had from them was, listen, we oppose pretty much any liquor license move, don't personalize this, and, you know, thank you for reaching out. We did speak with PD and that, both Southwest, leaving Southwest and going into Northeast on that, and got the assurances that they felt comfortable with that. While they can't come out and advocate for someone to come in, they didn't see us as a problem based on our history and our track record. We have, there was a certain amount of sense of, you know, is there a sleeping bear? Do we wanna kick that? But when the conversation's with you, I basically said, let's let it rip in terms of, you know, talking to the media and talking to folks, let's give them a chance to come back, and when you've seen GBY or others speak on us, we're very careful to watch all the comments and complaints and feedback, and frankly, there weren't any of any significance that we would see. And then when we had, when you gave us feedback about what constituents were saying, we were trying to carefully think of those and think about, you know, how we address those. We also had meetings with all the business owners and sat down with them, talked about issues they had, and our understanding from those meetings was, those were more positive and productive and exciting than ones they'd had in the past, because where people had maybe conflicting interests, they viewed us as someone that was coming to provide some order. I do think that we reached out to the church. Obviously, it's, we haven't done the door-to-door, that's, you know, that's not our thing. We'd be happy to set something up and entertain that and hear the objections. I'm a little concerned to say, okay, well, I'm not exactly sure how we'd be, you know, we're gonna be characterized or whatever. I do know that what you've heard behind us today is, is our track record and our history and a number of District Four residents actually work for us, so I could set something up. The wording that you had mentioned, no less than thirty days, if it can be, you know, every month we're closed, there's about seven hundred thousand dollars in payroll, it doesn't happen to these folks, it's certainly an impact for you folks, a hundred thousand dollars a month, but it's a significant setback and it's a challenge on all of us. You know, to the extent that we can, we're gonna get going today and get this done, to the extent that we can get, you know, feedback that's gonna make you comfortable, I'm just, I'd like some sense of what the standard is gonna be for us to come, come back, because as you folks know, in public comment, anything, everyone comes in, right, and they can, they make their voices known, and that's how it's supposed to be. I guess what I'm saying is, what's the waiting, how are we, what's the decision-making that's gonna come from that? If, if you have any sense.
For me, you have done incredible due diligence, Mr. Kirkland, you're, you're almost there. My office is happy to go help do the outreach, if you need our help knocking on doors, if we need to help secure a location, just so we could have an open conversation from the neighbors so that you could hear from them directly, maybe some ideas that they have or some concerns. I'd like to take those into consideration. I think ninety percent, you're there, Mr. Kirkland. This is gonna be the last key to really helping me move forward on this project.
Is, is it enough for us to have some, to go and pass out maybe invitations to come to a public session in terms of knocking door-to-door like walking a district as I'm sure all of you had to do in party election? That's a little, it's, it seems like it might be a little impractical for us, but I can, we can certainly notice the surrounding area and say, hey, come and hear what we're about, and you have a chance to vote some, you know, defray any fears you might have or hear what we're about, or voice your concerns. That's somewhat easier, but, you know, taking a poll door-to-door might be...
We could figure out some of those specifics. Mr. Kirkland, my office is happy to help, we know the surrounding neighborhoods very well, and my office goes out every week knocking on doors for about four or five hours, so we'd be more than happy to help step in and just provide a flyer, hey, gonna have an open meeting, it's gonna be some hot dogs, you're gonna be able to talk to the owner of Club One Casino and give him your feedback.
Now, when they find out we don't have slot machines and they're disappointed, now what do we do? Right?
I don't know, some of them like to play cards.
And I wanna hear about that, too.
Okay.
And we're gonna take all of that into consideration, but I think for us to really do our due diligence here and team up, it's really gonna, gonna take less than thirty days to do the kind of robust outreach that should have taken place already, so my motion will stand as is.
Council, Councilmember Maxwell, would you be open to scheduling it for the next meeting? 'Cause I don't think that would take a long time to actually do. We, we do those all the...
those all the time in my district, where we, you know, take a radius of the area there, it's not a huge area. And I'm very familiar, as you know, 168's right behind it, so there's not a lot of residential area there. I think it's mostly the, the frontage parts of that. Would that be something that, that could work for you in, in scheduling that there?
Let's bring it back, nine to, Council President, September 2nd.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Karbasi, and then Councilmember Bretafeld, and then I think our city manager.
I just want to make sure the council isn't talking out of both sides of its mouth. I'm very sensitive as a council member about the needs of my district. I'm in a tough spot because you have a right, Councilmember Maxwell, to be worried about what your residents feel. But I just, we have a hearing so people can participate, that's why we're here today. And I'm worried if we stop the clock...
[applause]
No, it's, hold on. This isn't about a political speech, you're making points, I just want to make a good decision, I'm sorry, guys. I'm worried if we do this, people will come up, every, there's always NIMBY, there's always people. I had to deal with the situation recently. I brought both sides together, we worked it out. I'm just really worried that if we don't hit the iron while it's hot, we'll lose this opportunity. If, if, if there's really a concern about it being in your district and it's a problem, that's perfectly valid, council member. We can put it somewhere else, but we need to talk about that now and get it over with, because I don't want to keep them, keep these jobs waiting.
Councilmember Karbasi?
Councilmember Karbasi, I, I just want to make sure that we're all clear on what just transpired. From what I heard in the conversation up here, I heard Councilmember Maxwell say he was not going to oppose this.
Yeah.
He wanted a little more time, right?
Right.
We're all sensitive about doing the outreach to our constituents, and I know some of us have a very different comfort level, but I heard that come out of Councilmember Maxwell, like, I'm not going to oppose it.
I did, but I've had a very rude awakening about how politics really works and things change. And I just want to make sure, is there a way, this is tough, because we have to, look, guys, we have to respect, it is his district, we have to be fair about that. And everyone has to be balanced here, this is a really tough spot.
Councilmember Karbasi?
If we don't, one last point. Is there a way we can approve this? I mean, he's done so many things, he'll have a neighborhood meeting, he'll have 10 neighborhood meetings. That's all.
Yeah, Councilmember Karbasi, when you have these meetings, the last thing you want to tell your constituents is that you already made a decision, because then that makes it that much more difficult to get buy-in from, from those residents.
Why did we hold the hearing today before doing this? Why wasn't this discussed beforehand?
So, Councilmember Karbasi, if I may, and, and let me just preface, it's, it's not meant to be confrontational. You know, we just discussed the Sky Park thing in your district, we continued it a couple of times, because there was still more, you know, resident complaints that you got to work through, and we defaulted to you. We've, I'm having a meeting next week for a 500-unit apartment complex. It's going to be pretty rough waters, and I'm sure we'll come back once, and then there'll be more concerns. So, I, I just want to be extra sensitive to, that's going to be their permanent home and their permanent neighbors.
Right.
And if they haven't had a community meeting in the neighborhood, that's standard for any development in the city.
Right.
It may not be standard for casinos, because we do them every 30 years, but it is a standard practice, and, and at the bare minimum, I think that's a respectful request that we should honor.
Yeah, and that's the dilemma I have, because the council member has a right to do that. My concern is with the Sky Park, the neighborhood was in litigation, so I had to mediate all that stuff, and we should, we delayed it for 18 years. So, I get it. It's just, I'm nervous about...
We're all trying to get to the same...
Yeah.
Councilmember Bretafeld, and then our city manager, right after. Councilmember Bretafeld?
Yeah, I, I guess the question for me is, why wasn't these communities' meetings held before we have our hearing today? Why are we having hearing and then requesting community meetings? When you spoke with the council member, did he not ask you to do community meetings? Is this the first time you're hearing this?
No. So, when we talked about, when we spoke with Councilmember Maxwell, and met with him maybe a month ago, we talked about community outreach, and when we looked at that, we, we looked within the ordinance, within the ABC license, and then also within ourselves to say, what's the most practical way to get out there? Certainly, we met everything with respect to ABC and the, and the ordinance and state gambling issues. Then we subsequently said, well, let's, you know, we're not hiding the fact that we're going to be here, let's do what we can to publicize it, because it's, you know, the media's going to be a little more effective at that. It is not uncommon knowledge that we are moving there. We've welcomed anyone to come in and tour, any media requests that we've had, we've welcomed them to come in. We follow everything on social media, we've shared the information with others, and looked to, to see what kind of feedback would we actually be getting, and what do we need to address. We were very careful to look at every, every issue that Councilmember Maxwell put up, and, and actually go out and look at parking, and walk and count every one of those parking spaces, and talk with other, the different communities. And when we talked about Duncan Polytechnic, look at the traffic flows and how people move from that, and, you know, what was more, how it would actually be addressed. Did we go door-to-door knocking door-to-door? It just didn't seem sort of practical, and I think we communicated about that, at least generally, it's like, hey, we're going to try and do whatever we can, we're not going to hide what we're doing from anyone. We're very proud of what we do, and we're very proud of what we bring to a community. And the feedback was universally positive, right? And the, the slight negative feedback that we picked up from Councilmember Maxwell's officer, he said someone called about this, you know, whether it's light or noise pollution, we have to look, well, now we're in an airplane pathway, or flight path, we've, we've got, in terms of light pollution, there are huge light standards lighting the fields that are out there, you know, strains on parking. I stood on the roof of our facility during a 7,000-person event, country music concert, looked at all the parking, looked at the traffic flows on a Friday night at 10 o'clock, knowing what I know over a dozen years of operating, and said, could I accommodate our guests and staff people here? And the answer to me was absolutely no problem. Could, you know, in fact, we could probably do a better job for people in terms of putting them around there. They, you know, certainly, you can't walk around that facility and say, hey, we've done a bad thing, right? And in terms of, if you go to someone and say, hey, do you want a casino? They think you're going to build a tribal casino there. That's not what we are. We're basically a small, very small in terms of size. Just to put it in perspective, we maybe do 1/20th or 1/30th of what a tribal casino would do. We have no complaints from our neighbors when we're around. And frankly, we don't want them, right? Yes, maybe they're going to come to you, but you're going to come to us, but they're also going to light us up on Yelp or whatever they are, and we don't want that. That's, that's not what you've heard here today, and not what you see for us in the community. I want all of us to be proud of that, okay? So, I would look and say, it's not that we haven't done community outreach, maybe we haven't done the political door-to-door canvassing that, that you might be familiar with as an elected official, but we are certainly not hiding what we're doing.
I don't think most developers go knocking door-to-door...
Right.
...when they're trying to build a development. So, I'm not sure, is there a noticing that took place with, with this?
Yeah, so...
Well, I'm not finished, but I just want to know.
Yeah, there was a noticing requirement, notice requirement, 300 feet of the building structure.
Which I would like to add, does not...
So, I'm not sure that...
...reach a lot of residential neighborhoods.
Yeah, that's not going to reach residential neighborhoods. But, you know, we, we had a funeral home that wanted to come into, to my district several years ago, it raised concerns for a lot of people. We met with the funeral home, we encouraged them, and to have a community, we noticed the people, we were involved in it, we sent out the notices so people knew, and we had three of them, three different community meetings. We didn't wait for the hearing to say we need to have community meetings. We had the community meetings before the hearing. This is really unfair to you, to all these people that have come here, to now, at the 11th hour, the 12th hour, to say, now we want you to go knocking door-to-door. You're going to run into people who, when they hear there's a casino, will have that kind of thing, that your chances is coming in their backyard, and that's not the case. I think your history speaks for itself. This, this is just wrong. It's just wrong. If you, you, the council member said that he has his, and it was quote, "Our office knocks on doors every week." Why didn't you knock on doors every week in that area and hold a community meeting, and let the people know that this was going on, that there was going to be a public hearing today? We had this two weeks ago. I mean, this is not right, and just because you can have the power to sit up here and do this, doesn't make it okay. It's not okay. He came here, he followed all the rules, he did all the noticing, he's met all the requirements, and just because you have the power to sit up here and say, eh, ain't good enough for me, is just bullshit and wrong. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Bretafeld?
This should be passed today. If you want a community meeting, hold your community meeting. It should have been done way before this, not at the last minute. These people want to get back to work. You get paid every two weeks you have during the whole pandemic, and this is an outrage. This is disgusting, and this should be passed today.
Councilmember Bretafeld?
Council, Council President?
Let's maintain decorum, there are children watching, I think I saw, I think Dempsey, is Dempsey still here? Oh, no. Dempsey, earmuffs, earmuffs, Dempsey. Sorry about that.
Council President, if I could just provide a response to that.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Maxwell. Please don't use explicit words.
I never do.
Dempsey-friendly response.
I, I want my colleagues and everyone here to understand that I do appreciate the frustration. You folks have been out of job for a long time, like tens of thousands of people throughout this city. But when I say the outreach hasn't been good enough for me, Councilmember Bretafeld, I speak on behalf of 75,000 constituents in District Four who elected me to be here, to fight for their best interest. And I would like, I'm not finished with my remarks, Councilmember. I would like to also call out the hypocrisy of my two council colleagues. One is a conscientious objector to every marijuana issue that comes before this council, and he does that because it reflects the values of his constituents, and he's listened to them. And I would ask him to appreciate the fact that I would like the time, Councilmember Karbasi, to listen to my constituents. I have a feeling that most of them are going to be pretty excited, Mr. Kirkland, and the ones that maybe have trepidations. I think having that open forum meeting with you where you could address those concerns is going to bring them on board. And Councilmember Bretafeld, I might not have been on this dais, but I remember very well the Grizzly Fest debacle that took place.
Wasn't a debacle.
At your park.
It wasn't a debacle.
Which you soundly rejected...
Yeah.
...for a couple nights.
That's right.
This is a permanent feature in my district.
Should have had your community meetings before this.
I'm not finished, Councilmember, would you please...
Let him, let him speak, Councilmember Bretafeld, he let you speak.
And so, I would hope that you could also appreciate that neighborhood feedback is extremely important. This is not a two-night event. This is a permanent structure. Thank you.
Kyle, let me see if I can try to plan this.
Council President, can I just add one thing?
Oh, oh, sorry, city manager, you've been patiently waiting.
I just, I just want to just have some dialogue in front of you with the city attorney's office, because I just want to just, again, we haven't done this for 30 years. We went through that ordinance, we looked at what was required, and then how you guys have to decide based on what you have to decide. It's a three-step process, there's investigation process. That's our responsibility to do the investigation. So, I got to talk to the city attorney's office on just this request that's being made here. How does that really have to roll out? Because I think there's, it's very prescribed in the ordinance how this stuff's supposed to be packaged and presented to these folks, to the council. So, let me just, can you just help me, help us understand that step?
Right. So, to issue this permit, council must make certain findings as set forth in the ordinance.
Can you speak it to the mic, Katie? I don't think it's on.
Can you hear me now?
There, that's better.
So, to issue the permit, council must make certain findings that are set forth in the ordinance. It's within the council's right to ask for a reasonable time, if they needed additional information, in order to make those findings. The appropriate manner of, the process for that would be you, as the investigative arm, city manager, to conduct the outreach and report back to the council, rather than the council member or Mr. Kirkland doing it himself.
And, and is that, is that a requirement that council can put on the applicant to pursue this additional information that wasn't defined in the, I'm okay with doing, I just need to understand.
It's not a requirement they can place on the applicant. However, if they don't feel, as a council, they have the information necessary to make the necessary findings, and they need additional information, then they can ask for additional investigation.
So, it's not something we're going to require him to do?
Correct.
You're going to have to require us to do it?
It might not be a requirement, city manager, but I think best practices would dictate, Mr. Kirkland would want to be part of that open dialogue between the neighbors and city manager. We could help facilitate my office to work with you, but I would think Mr. Kirkland would probably want to be there.
Yeah, and, and just, Council, if I may, last point here. When we're, you know, we're doing a community for an apartment complex, we have to, we're notifying people within 3,000 feet for an apartment complex, not 300. And technically, it's not us, it's the city staff that sends the notices to all the neighbors, and they say, there's a community meeting at Gassett Middle School at this time of day, you all come, give your feedback. So, for us, that's the normal protocol. It may not be the case for a casino, because we don't do it that often.
It's not the legal requirement.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a legal requirement, but it does provide us a lot of sense of understanding and assurances that everyone has had the opportunity to get clarity on what the actual proposal is versus what the rumor mill suggests may or may not be going up.
I, I, I have not heard, I think we're all saying the same thing. This is one of those conversations where, I, I have not heard anybody on this dais, on staff, say they oppose this project. Matter of fact, I just heard the council member of the area say that he wants that, and, and to my colleague's point, anybody that comes through, at least through my district, I ask them to go and do the community outreach. And Kyle, I understand exactly what you're saying, that you're not used to doing these door-to-doors. My office helps. I, that's what I heard Councilmember Maxwell offer up, to have some of his staff members go door-to-door, which is not a lot, because it's really the frontage, again, properties. I've heard some pretty unreasonable requests. I really don't think this is an unreasonable request. Kyle, I know you want to get things done now, but I think you got the assurance of the council, at least on my part, that we support your business. We just want to make sure that we cross that T and dot that I, and it should not be a very difficult request.
Okay. The, obviously, listen, we want to be a good part, we'll continue to be a good part of the community, we want to be accommodating, and certainly don't want to get off on the wrong foot in District Four. I would, the, the only things I would say is, yes, be sensitive to the fact that, you know, we're somewhat on the clock with people with forbearances and such. I know this is a very, very stressful time for a lot of our folks and, and our business. We have, I, in my mind, in terms of openness and exposure to the community, we were not shy about telling people that we were there. And there's a side of me that says, hey, a whale's only harpooned when it spouts. And we went out of our way to spout and connect with as many different media outlets as we could, get different feedback, and certainly braced ourselves and said, hey, are we going to have some negative feedback? Are we kicking a bear awake somewhere that we don't know? We've been pleased with that feedback. And that included everything we were supposed to do and then some. So, I just asked this council to be sensitive to the fact that, you know, to, you know, September 2nd, when I heard that, I was like, wow, okay, this is, you know, how, how are we going to make that for some of our folks? To the extent that we can push that, I'm willing to start on this immediately and notice people and get out and tell them. We have not been shy about it, but I also want to condition people to, listen, we need some sort of reasonable standard of feedback, because we all know that, you know, when you start shaking the tree like that, you're going to get all sorts of feedback on things, and some, frankly, we can't handle. Whenever we were asked to do something by our community, it wasn't whether it was required or not. For us, we said, is it the right thing to do? And I feel like, at least over the dozen years I've been doing this, we did the right thing for our community every single time, including adding additional security, safety, doing whatever we could to support the surrounding businesses, surrounding, you know, organizations of faith, youth groups, whatever, even ones that we couldn't, we're out of our strike zone. And I feel like we're willing to do that again, but I would just say, please, we cannot keep pushing this out, okay? Give us a deadline and give us something, some sort of standard that we would, you know, understand.
Yeah, you need, you need, as a businessman, you need that certainty, and you need that, that, and, and the folks that are here, that their livelihoods, the pan, need that certainty. And I think that's what you're hearing up here from our council colleagues. And here's what I'll say about your operation, Kyle, and I've known you for a number of years. You're not going to get that pushback, because I know what type of operation you run and the folks that you have. I would feel comfortable taking my children to your establishment. You run a very family-friendly environment, your, your food's great. I don't know about the vegetarian sandwich, I got to be honest on there, but I think Dempsey would be comfortable going to your establishment, true, if we kept certain language out of the...
Sure.
But, but that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm hearing from, from, from my colleagues. I don't think I heard anybody say that they opposed your operation, they just want that outreach, and I don't think that's a very unreasonable idea.
Council President?
Yes.
So, since we're responsible for the investigative element of this, we'll commit to getting this back August 19th.
Okay, you'll have staff manpower and get all that?
We'll get out there, we'll knock on doors, we'll walk the pavement, we'll do...
I'm going on the record right now. Time is already looking at me. We got it done.
Even our assistant city manager is going to go door-to-door?
Hey, it's not going to be the first time, and it may not be the last time.
For the record, city manager, I can't get lights at Tower District for a year, but y'all can get this done today. So, just a reminder, when it's important to you, it gets done.
Wait, 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 that was a contracting, that was contracting.
Mr. President.
City manager, you're committed to. Councilmember Karbasi, I think you're going to have the last, the last word on this.
Okay. Regarding the comment from my colleague about the cannabis thing being a conscientious objector, that's, that's funny. I don't take that personally, I know these things get heated. True, we have to represent our districts, and you and I can talk offline about this, but I've had tobacco destroy parts of my family. Unfortunately, I've experienced cannabis, do the same thing. I know people may disagree on that, it gets political. Our experiences and the traumas we experience in our loved ones impact us, and I think you and I will talk more about that, and, and that's just part of the reason why I'm very, very cautious on that subject. why I'm very, very cautious on that subject. Um, and then to Mr. Kirkland, um, not how I expected things to go today. If more developers were like you, I wouldn't have to postpone items all the time. So I really appreciate everything you've done to this point. You've done exactly what you had to do. And, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Maxwell, you made a motion and it was seconded, um, to continue the, the item.
So we're, so the hearing will stay open, is that what I heard?
Legal counsel, w- w- city attorney, what is the process? Walk us through the process so we're all clear on the same page.
So I would advise that you leave the hearing open.
Okay.
Um, whatever date you choose, you show it as being a continued hearing set for that date.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and time, date and time certain.
And, and again, as, since we got the responsibility for doing the investigation, we'll commit to doing it August 19th and bringing it back, getting the information, bring it back to the dais.
The, the motion currently on the table that I seconded was, uh, no less than 30 days. So what date was that you suggested, Councilor Maxwell? September 2nd, I think, is two council meetings out. And the reason I propose that is just because I know my schedule and my staff's schedule to be able to wholly participate in these.
Yeah, but we're responsible for the investigation, the, the city manager's office. So we'll, we'll conduct that investigation, bring the information back to the council for consideration.
So if you're comfortable doing that information sooner rather than later, I think you said up to 30 days, that's going to be under your purview, obviously, right? The sooner you get that done, the sooner we get that addressed.
Correct. We want to, and, and again, we would have proposed, given the time constraints, to bring this to the-
You know, could I just clarify something? I mean, Councilmember Maxwell is wanting community meetings, you're using the term investigation, you're saying August 19th, he's saying September 2nd, and these guys are going to get in the crosshair. Let's clarify what we're doing here.
Yeah, I, I was going to ask the same thing, because the, the key here is, if we're continuing with a hearing, we have to continue it to a date certain. And so if you give us a 30-day window and we finish it before that time, the clerk cannot renotice it backwards.
Correct.
So if, if you want to, uh, notice it till 10:00 a.m. on the 19th, and if we don't succeed, it could go to the 2nd.
That's correct.
But what is the investig-, you're saying investigation, he's talking community meetings.
It's not an investigation, it's a community outreach.
It's just the way the ordinance is written.
Just the way the city manager phrased it.
We're responsible for giving the information that these folks need to make the decision. They call it investigation in the ordinance.
You're saying bring information back. I think Councilmember Maxwell's talking about participating in community meetings.
For the record, there's no, there's not an investigation, Councilmember Brettafield.
Tommy, do you want me to clarify?
Not an investigation.
You okay with the, with what they're saying?
Yeah, as part of our investigation, we will hold a community meeting.
Correct.
I mean, that'll just be part of the investigative procedure.
Those are part of the findings, Councilmember.
Correct, correct. Well, just one last question. I know we're getting over dates this time, but the last time I knew, your place is under construction, so wh- when are you actually scheduled to finish construction and actually be operational?
We could, we could be operational within three weeks. And it was our intention, with a positive vote today, to, you know, basically turn on everything else that we put on hold. We put on things like carpeting or whatever. We just, we literally have them sitting there waiting, I guess based on your comments. The last meeting, it seemed like you wanted us to push pause on that. We've spent $600,000 to date. Unfortunately, it doesn't have to be permitted, because it's all fixing equipment, doing things on the outside and-
So Kyle, to be clear, you're about three weeks away just from your renovations to be ready?
Yeah, but the problem is for us, if we, based on this today, we could have had ABC in, we could have, you know, to do their follow-up, Health and others to do their check-offs. So by pushing it out, it continues to push us out. So what I would ask this council today is if we, if there were a way for us to put this on the, the meeting on the 19th, if there was a way to clarify that this is really the only outstanding issue, and maybe, you know, I can get some help, you know, like on our CUP or alcohol permit and whatever, I can at least talk to ABC and have them come check their boxes, Health have them come check their boxes, so we can get up and moving as quickly as possible, assuming the next, the vote on the 19th would be positive.
That, that's a fair request. That's a fair request. Yeah.
Does, does this vote by Councilmember Maxwell and his council address what he just said?
Yeah, Councilmember Brettafield, I think, and I just want to make sure that we're, we're, because I, I'm, I'm hearing it, uh, legal counsel, and I think assistant city managers walked us through that, Councilmember Maxwell just said up to 30 days. They're in charge of doing the, not investigation, but the outreach, right? If they do that before, then that satisfies that. We're going to continue the hearing, which is technically going to be open for the 19th. If we need more time, that's an option, so that way the clerk doesn't have to renotice it.
Okay. I, I'm just saying that I think Mr. Kirkland-
It sounded like to, to me, when I heard from Councilmember Maxwell, he said no more than, or, no less than 30 days. No more than 30 days is more helpful, because it allows us to get it done in, in an earlier time if we could be, and we satisfy your concerns. So I, what I'm suggesting is, I, I'd just like us, I'm comfortable with us being on the clock, but I want to be on the clock.
Sure. So what if I say, uh, no, no later than the September 2nd meeting, which gives us some wiggle room in between there? So it would be no later than that date. It could come before then.
Okay.
And, and the question I have, if I could ask, of course.
Go ahead.
If it goes August 19th, what does that mean for these people going to work? What does that mean for what you're going to lose financially? I mean, I think that needs to be part. I don't want to gloss over that, because this has real impacts. What does it mean?
So, listen, let's, let's be brutally candid. No one's going to feel sorry for a casino operator, okay? Let's just be brutally candid in a public session.
No, I, I'm concerned about your operation, I'm concerned about these people.
That said, I'm concerned about, I have 150 people that are hired, that were training, trying to get up and going. They're all asking me when they can get back to work and make their living. Certainly their unemployments are running out based on what we're seeing out there. They, you know, I want them going sooner or later. We, we were looking at this today to get a vote, to be able to then turn people on to finish up what we needed to do, start our training in a week, and be prepared and, you know, to get up and going by, in, within two to three weeks, to function of the Health Department, ABC, and Bureau of Gambling Control checking their boxes. And I believe we are 100% compliant with them on everything. Um, the community outreach, one of the things I would, you know, if there's a way to get to a, a yes vote today, and I would commit to the, the council member, I feel like our organization has worked with our community consistently over, certainly over the decade I've been here, in the 35 years of my professional career, I've worked to get to consensus. And you can hear that from any organization that I've worked with and that we give back. I would tell you, you know, if we can have a yes vote today and get to this, I can, uh, whatever concerns that is community outreach, I believe that if I can get in front of them and I can get, reach them, I can find common ground that will work for all of us. And we've talked about that with parking and traffic flows and, and all the other, and, and minors and what have you. When people understand us, they tend to like us. So, um, but it is critically important on our timeline that we continue to, to stick to it. I mean, you say September 2nd, in my head, I'm like, that pushes us out to the middle of September, and then, it just starts being a, a stressor. And remember, we've got folks with kids and-
Well, that, that's what I'm asking. When you talk about being brutally honest, if we delay this, what is the financial impact to you, to these prospective employees? What is that?
So our organization is at least a million and a half bucks a month. It's $700,000 to, to this. It's, you know, $50,000, $60,000 to all sorts of animal rescue groups around town, um, to all the different groups that we work with. It's, it's a ton more stress on us, and I am hypersensitive to the community that are around us, so much so that I've drawn around, driven around, looked and looked at the flow and where our people would, you know, possibly impact. And I feel, I don't want to get into any situation where we're embarrassing to ourselves or to you folks. And I feel super comfortable with our operation. We can have safe, responsible operation that, and peacefully coexist, both with the businesses and the residents, where people are like, we love these people here, okay? But the best way for them to understand it is for them to see us do it, right? And I feel like, you know, we've put ourselves out there, we've promoted ourselves to the community, we've looked for feedback, and you folks all know, you put stuff on social media, people aren't shy. If they're going to give you feedback, they're going to give you negative feedback. And we haven't seen that. And we've had folks like GB Wire that tend to be a little more aggressive, and frankly, when they came through, I kind of braced myself, right? Fresno Bee, we don't advertise in the Fresno Bee, the tribes advertise in the Fresno Bee. And we're getting feedback, and we're, you know, talking to our community and business groups, and calling around to the folks like Toyota and the Zoo and whatever, Heron Motors, any of the folks that we know, and said, hey, can you support us? And they're like, absolutely. Sending in letters, all the animal groups. So, so those folks desperately need us. And frankly, we've been on fumes with some of those folks.
Mr. Kirkland, if, if I may, I, I understand your frustration, but just for the record, you submitted the application on March 30th of this year to the city.
Correct.
The city then did their investigation. Uh, this is on, on schedule to be approved in five months, which I can tell you, we can't get lights on Tower District in five months. So I appreciate your frustration.
He's going to keep mentioning that till the wheels on the mofab.
I'm going to bring you some flashlights.
Yeah.
Mr. President, just a clarification.
So I, I do appreciate it, and I am, you know, you know, really thoughtful of the employees that you employ, the folks that have been unemployment. But we answer to the neighbors. And with all due respect, my neighbors don't read GB Wire. They don't, you know, not all of them see the TV. And you should see how often I get screamed at, because they didn't receive a snail mail letter in their box, telling them about something going on across a mile away. So be patient with us, because we have that responsibility to those neighbors that we represent. And that's why I'm being very, you know, uh, respective of Mr. Maxwell, because I, I do this on a daily basis. And not everybody gets such a big project that they got to deal with, with the unintended consequences of people just not knowing the correct information.
President Chavez?
Yes, Councilmember Carbasi.
Okay.
Let's beat this dead horse a little bit more.
Yeah.
Because I have some lights in my district.
He needs to be-
No, um, I, I'm really trying to find a way to make a sound decision and support my colleagues' requests, because we all are in the point where we want more time, because we know our districts. I get that. Um, so maybe there's a compromise. I'm hearing kind of the same thing. What about the August 19th meeting? If they're committed and they actually do the, to a point where you're satisfied, can we bring it back August 19th? I think that's maybe-
Councilmember Carbasi, I think we just had that commitment from the city manager's office to that work.
Is that what they're doing? But, but the councilor didn't comment.
Because they're responsible for that, and that's what legal counsel just informed us. They're going to satisfy that component of it.
But I want to know if the councilor's okay with it, and then if everyone's okay, then we can move forward. Do you have a feeling on that?
I've committed to not pushing this past September 2nd. If we're able, I've already made that commitment.
And I just want to clarify with the city attorney and the clerk's office that how this, this, I want to just make sure we word this right, so that we do have the ability to bring it back for the 19th, because of the noticing requirements.
It's not, yeah, we're not closing the hearing.
Correct, correct. We're just keeping it open.
For the, for third time, we're not closing the hearing.
Perfect.
Continuing that.
Yep, perfect.
All right.
And city attorney, so if we're not closing the hearing, we'll notice it on the 19th, we, and then roll over. What about the quasi-judicial nature? Can, um, Mr. Kirkland have any contact and vice versa? For the record, I want to make sure we lay that out, because that came up last time.
The answer is no. It would continue just the way it's been, uh, moving forward. I think it's been breached.
So-
Excuse me? I think that's been breached.
But that was placed on the record and, and it was acknowledged at the last hearing. I, I want to, now I'm, I'm trying to protect Councilmember Maxwell, because now he will be active in this meeting, how does that record get reflected to the other six?
I'm not quite understanding. This meeting?
No. It, so he, if he attends the pub, the community meeting, how does that get reflected back to the other six? Because now that would be, uh, uh, under, under what we've been talking about in this judicial, quasi-judicial meeting, that means he's privy to information, the other six are not.
Can't you just give us a staff report like you did now and include the findings?
But I, I want that, I, I just need that put on the record, because I want to make sure he's protected.
Legal counsel, what would be the appropriate manner in which that information would be communicated to the council?
Because this is a quasi-judicial matter, Councilmember Maxwell should not attend the public outreach. A report should be provided by the city manager to the entire council.
And you know what? That's okay. This is not for me, this is for my neighbors.
No, and, and that's why I-
I think he just offered to help.
Yeah, no, and that's why I went the extra step to make sure we, we, you were covered, but then everyone else was, and no one got violated out in this.
And are we allowed to participate?
Yeah.
I mean, no, I'm, I'm not being facetious.
Yeah, you'll be there. You and I will be there.
Oh, okay, I just-
Kyle, you will work with the administration, with our city manager that has committed to, to, to taking care of, of that piece of it. All right, all right, folks.
And Councilmember, even in your absence, I would tell you, I understand your concerns and-
And, and I trust that you'll lead that meeting well, Mr. Kirkland.
Okay, and I'll make sure some of our, our employees who are residents of the area participate and hopefully reinforce.
And the city manager wants all the lights in the Tower District before the-
And I heard that. I heard about lights in the Tower District.
All right, folks. Hey, don't make me use this, okay? I drank a lot of coffee today.
I heard that.
Can, can you repeat the motion, uh, Councilmember Maxwell, seconded for Councilmember Brettafield for the third time?
I need to make the motion again?
Uh, I, I, this is what I understood, Councilmember Brettafield. He's making the motion up to 30 days. We're going to keep the, the hearing open. It's going to come back if we need more time. It's, it's, it satisfies that legal requirement. All right, motion was made, seconded. Any opposition?
No.
All right, one opposition, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all.
I'm sorry, I, I just want to clarify, I'm, I'm sorry. Just to make sure I got it perfectly on the record.
Okay, here we go.
Motion by Councilmember Maxwell, seconded by Councilmember, our Council Vice President Sparza. It is to continue no more than 30 days, but to continue the hearing to, uh, August 19th at 10:00 a.m. And then if that doesn't work, we'll push it to the September 2nd.
That is correct.
Thank you.
For the fifth time today. That, that is correct. Thank, thank you, guys. I had a lot of coffee today trying to get your guys, but, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item. From what I understand, we already, uh, heard item 2B, so our next item would be 4A, is that correct, uh, council?
That's correct. The last item of the day is going to be item, uh, 4A.
All right, let's, let's take a quick two-minute break and let our folks, uh, clear out and, uh, take a quick rest from break, and we'll be right back with item 4A. And I got quite a bit of cards to speak on that. And I got quite a bit of cards to speak on that. All right, let's get back in session here before we start having too much fun. Our last item will be item 4A and that's a vote to support the Farm Workforce Modernization Act of 2021. And I believe the sponsor was Councilmember Khorbasi. Councilmember Khorbasi?
Thanks. I do have a comment, but I'd like to ask Mr. Kuna to come up here and provide a presentation to us about what he's seeking today.
Good morning. Thank you very much, counsel. Mr. Chairman, Council President, welcome. Vice President, you did an excellent job all morning of controlling everything. And Mayor Maxwell, at the airport, we can provide you raisins that are very healthy and almonds and those type of things from our industry can be at the airport. So we can meet that vegetarian activity, okay? So you just call on us and we'll make that happen. But again, I want to thank the council very much. Councilman Khorbasi, thank you very much for bringing this. I've known the young man when he was a little kid. So I thought, okay, I'm going to give him one item that's not controversial to anybody. Nobody.
Oh, you spoke too soon.
Nobody.
Where's Gary at?
He's not in the building.
So, but again, I want to thank everybody. Before you is a letter that goes to the two United States senators. Feinstein, who was the senator probably of the grand champion or the leader of immigration for many years, and then the newest Senator Padilla. Two great senators we have. In that is the House passed the Agriculture Modernization Act this year and it went over. Unanimous support both by Republicans and Democrats, 243 votes. Thirty-three or 34 Republicans. It went over to the House, to the Senate, knowing that though there was some issues. And that was the definition that they were using. And that was for agriculture. They had excluded packing houses and processing facilities, which are agriculture. They're on the farms, the packing houses. They're part of it. You take away the packing house, the farm workers' den as they pick the product, where do they go with it? But to separate families, this just can't happen. Also in the bill is that definition to send to the Senate, have them add that to the bill that will go to the president on agriculture. Senator Feinstein has a bill from 2019 called the Blue Card. That's to take all these farm workers that have been here for an X amount of years, not somebody that came in yesterday or yesterday or last week, no. It's those that have been here for 10, 15, 20, 30 years of paid taxes, social security. All of those things have been done by these people. And they will go through a background check, they'll go through the FBI, just like the '86 law. This is not, and I want to make this, and this has been, always been an issue on all immigrants, this is not an amnesty bill. These people worked in 2020 on February 1st when the United States asked the farmers and the farm workers to produce food because we had a COVID virus going on around the country, the world. They did it with no vaccines. They did it on the premises, we have to feed the world and we have to feed this country and this state. And they did it. I think they did it very well. The second part of the bill is called Dreamers that have been here since 2012 with President's executive order, Obama. Those Dreamers have continually been told, on or off, depending upon the administration, you can't do that to these people. They need to know that they're safe, their families are safe. And so that's also part of its own legislation. So there would be two bills going to the President of the United States from the Senate. The Agricultural Workers' Modernization Act with the definitional change and Dreamers called DACA. So it's just got to end. These people need to know when they go home at night, they're going to see their mom and dad and they're not going to be hauled off somewhere because of an ICE audit. Today, I got a call this morning because he thought it was going to happen this morning that we were here at 9:00 and I messed up. But Secretary Mayorkas called and said, how's it going? I said, well, it's going to happen sometime. I'm going to be before the council. But the Secretary of Homeland Security is very supportive and he's been here. He has met with Jerry several times upon the human trafficking issue and the drugs. But even the Secretary of Homeland Security is excited about what we're doing and we're going to every city. I'm going to every city. If there's a police chief in here, I follow the laws and the speed limits between, even when I was in Corcoran and I had to go to Exeter the same night and they were only an hour difference, I did drive the speed limit and I got both of those. But we have 16 cities so far, 100% support of this coming from the mayors and the councils. And so I'm asking today for your support as the council president and the council members, as well as the mayor and from the city of Fresno, the largest city in this, and the fourth in the state. But it's a city that relies a lot upon the workers that are here and especially from my industry called agriculture, from the packing houses and processing are a very integral part. So apologize for more than a minute, Council Chair, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kuna. I have three speakers. Council, why don't we, Councilmember Khorbasi, okay with allowing the speakers or do you want to have the council chime in?
Speakers first.
All right. First up will be Mr. Peter Aguayo, followed by Mr. Kevin Romero right after. Just a quick minute. Dr. Aguayo, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, council, for taking up this item. My name is Peter Aguayo. I am the director and council for Ensure America Project, a nonprofit that provides assistance to obtain immigration benefits, especially DACA. We also provide COVID-19 outreach such as providing PPE and information on receiving the vaccination. And so to farm workers and the families in rural communities. We applaud this city for its support in expanding healthcare to undocumented immigrants. I'm glad that the mayor of Fresno supported that. We ask that you continue your support of the undocumented population and support the passage of the Farm Worker Modernization Act of 2021. The undocumented farm workers have shown their importance to our communities and the nation during the COVID-19 pandemic. Providing them a pathway to attain legal status is the least we can do. We ask that the council recommend in support of the act that the definition of what constitutes farm labor or services be adjusted. In its current form, individuals who work in packing and processing plants where the majority of the commodity packed or processed is derived from other farmers does not constitute farm labor or services. This can potentially exclude a large segment of the valley's undocumented population from attaining a life-changing benefit. And it's been over 30 years since we've had legislation passed for farm workers since ERCA. And so if we don't do it as possible to provide for our undocumented population, then it could be another 30 years or maybe never in providing our farm workers here, our undocumented farm workers who have given so much to us, this one thing that they want, which is to obtain, just to obtain the legal status and be able to come back and forth from the whole country. And this isn't too much to ask for. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aguayo. Next up is Mr. Kevin Romero and then our last speaker will be Mr. Luis Ramirez, followed by Mr. Kevin Romero. Mr. Romero, welcome.
Well, thank you, everyone, for having me. And well, I'm here for speaking on behalf of the residents of Mendota, which, as we all know, not just Mendota, Fireball, that part of 33, West Fresno County, seems to have been always known as the forgotten part of the county in terms of farm workers, in terms of water, in terms of immigration, you know? Always seen as the, there's always been more negative than positive, unfortunately. And I'm here, of course, that, you know, to ask for your support of this bill. Two of you have connections to Mendota and of course, one of you, a few of you maybe have been through there or stopped there or passed by there. But you've seen and heard how much impact it plays in terms of agricultural sustenance, sustenance, I should say. You know, our nickname, we are the cantaloupe capital of the world and we probably lead the county in helping out with food all across the county, helping out the state and even helping out the country. We, I believe this county provides around 90, maybe 95% of the state's food and around that same number to the nation as well. You know, I've seen pictures of Stomulus, Tri, all posted all the way up to as far as to Virginia and to the East Coast. So bills like these gives the community like ours a chance to continue to thrive, to continue to grow, to expand and to help out everyone as best we can. And, you know, like they said in, like it says in Hamilton, immigrants, we get the job done. And I'm a proud son of farm worker parents, both from Mexico, and I always am ready to step up and speak on their behalf for those that, you know, can't speak. I've been speaking before and I'm glad to do it again in front of such an amazing facility, of course. And that, you know, we just keep the, we fight the good fight. We keep on going. We get into some good trouble and do what we need to do to protect farm workers, not just in this area, but farm workers everywhere because they are doing backbreaking work that no one else really wants to do. You know? I hear someone complaining, you go out there and work 18 hours, five days, seven days a week on, you know, on end, no days off, really. So, you know, I say that for the residents of Mendota and I'm sure the other communities, Fireball, San Joaquin, Tranquility, they would also share the same sentiments. So I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Romero. Our last speaker is Mr. Luis Ramirez. I believe he's with the Nisei Farmers League this morning. Just a quick minute. Welcome, Mr. Ramirez.
Hi, my name is Luis Ramirez. Yeah, I'll be brief on my speech. A lot of you has known me as the brother of Jose Ramirez, a boxer. Well, thank you for having me here. Yeah, I want to, I want to tell you guys to support the bill that's at the House and going to the Senate. But we want to include the packing houses and the processing plants to be part of the bill, not just the field workers. I come from a small town, Avon, as you guys might may know from Jose, where mostly everyone there just works in agriculture. But it's not just the fields, it's also the processing plants, you know? Wonderful, it's a wonderful, it's a big plant from Los Sales and a lot of Avon residents work there. And those people are hardworking people that they don't come to, you know, City Hall from Avon or here to complain about, or asking about anything. They just want to, you know, they want to have their, they want to be able to live here and without that fear and, you know, here and there, travel to their country and come back without no fear. That's the main key and we're still fighting that fight. And we want you to support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. That concludes our public comment. Bringing it back up to DICE, Councilmember Khorbasi, this was your item unless you want to let your colleagues chime in before you do.
Sure. No, I don't have to go last. I'm just going to say thank you to the Nisei Farmers League for bringing forward awareness in the valley for the Farm Workforce Modernization Act. And, you know, I had this whole speech worked out, but rather than go through all that and save everyone time, I basically will share with you, as brief as possible, a little story by a president who, I won't say who it is right now or the person's party because it really is a bipartisan issue in my mind. A number of years ago, an American student traveling in Europe took an East German ship across the Baltic Sea. One of the ship's crew members from East Germany, a man in his 60s, struck up a conversation with the American student. And after a while, the student asked the man how he had learned such good English. And the man explained that he once lived in America. This was in East German. He said that for over a year, he had worked as a farmer in Oklahoma and California and that he had planted tomatoes and picked ripe melons. It was, the man said, the happiest time of his life. Well, said the student, who had seen the awful conditions behind the iron curtain, he blurted out the question, why did you ever leave America? I had to, said the East German. The war ended. The man had been in America as a German prisoner of war. Now, the president who told this story didn't say it to make the case for former POWs. Instead, he told the story to remind us as Americans of the magical intoxicating power of America. We may sometimes forget it, but others do not. Even a man from a country at war with the United States, while held here as a prisoner, could fall in love with us. Those who become American citizens love this country even more and that's why the Statue of Liberty lifts up her lamp to welcome them to the golden door. The president went on to say that it is bold men and women yearning for freedom and opportunity who leave their homeland and come to a new country to start their lives over. They believe in the American dream and over and over, they make it come true for themselves, for their children and for others. They give more than they receive. They labor and succeed. And often they are entrepreneurs, but their greatest contribution is more than economic because they understand in a special way how glorious it is to be an American. They renew our pride and gratitude in the United States of America, the greatest, freest nation in the world, the last best hope of man on earth. As many decades as it's been since the president uttered those words, they are more true today now than ever before. My father and mother both came to this country. My father is a student and I am the first generation of my family born in this country. We struggled. We struggled, worked hard, and thank heavens I get to be on this council today. But all of us are immigrants, one way or another. And I think that we've lacked comprehensive immigration reform, and this is definitely a step in that direction, because this old wound and this giving up, it's not helping, it's just dividing us. And there's real opportunity to actually move forward. So I'm looking forward to hearing from my colleagues. I believe Councilmember Soria has some thoughts and wants to propose a little addition to the letter.
Yeah, Councilwoman Soria, and then followed by Councilmember Arias after.
Thank you, Council President Chavez and Councilmember Carbasi for bringing this letter forward. As many of you guys know, I've never been shy about talking about the need to reform our immigration system. It is the right thing to do. It should have been, it should have been done years ago. As mentioned by Councilmember Carbasi, you know, like him, my family also came here. They came here undocumented, and I haven't been shy to talk about it. There were those that were farmworkers, the ones that worked in the empaques. You know, my mom was a sorter and an orange packer for, you know, over two decades. You know, after she graduated from the fields, she ended up in these, in the packing house. And my father did too. He started as a field worker and rose to be a supervisor and a manager at one of a packing house in Tulare County. And so I understand the importance of adding the language so that it is inclusive of the labor workforce here in our community. And I'm glad that the letter includes the Dreamers. But I think what the ideal solution would be in this, you know, council, past councils, you know, I've been on this board for seven years, we have supported comprehensive immigration reform. That is what we truly need. That is. That is what we need, because we know that currently we have a system that is broken where our Dreamers, I have a sister-in-law who's a Dreamer, who's an entrepreneur. She started her own business, and she's thriving. But again, because, you know, she came here as a little girl with her parents, she's unable to, even, even though she's married to my brother, who is a US citizen, is unable to get her citizenship. And she has graduated from high school, gone to college, but those are the real barriers that our families face. So these are my families. They're my neighbors, they're my friends, and I know the importance of ensuring that we have a system in place in our country that works for the families and that works for our economy. Immigration is not just about the folks that we know. It sustains our larger economy. If it wasn't for immigrants, all of us up here wouldn't have food on our table, wouldn't have our kids taken care of, wouldn't have our hotel rooms cleaned up. I can bet you any day that every day you're impacted by immigrant labor. They are the backbone of our economy. They are Fresnoans that sustain our local economy. And I think that this letter is a good start, but I do believe that if we can add something that, you know, ideally, comprehensive reform is really where we want to get to. I know that it's important to get something done, but I think the overhaul is really the ideal of what we need in our country.
Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Council President, councilmembers. For me, this is a little more personal. In my previous life, I used to work for Congressman Dooley in DC, and prior to 9/11, we were hopeful to announce finally a comprehensive immigration agreement between the Republicans and Democrats. And 9/11 occurred, and the world changed overnight, and that was put on the backburner. For those of you who don't know, I was born in Mexico in 78, came to the United States in 80, and President Reagan's amnesty of 86 is what got us our work permit and our green card and eventually naturalization. So, Member Betterfield, you have President Reagan to thank for me and our joyful relationship But with that, it also gave us the opportunity to become members of this great country with expectations of work. My mother worked in the fields for 40 years, and a brain tumor put a stop to that. For those 40 years, though, she didn't have access to healthcare, to the Affordable Care Act was passed. My father has been working the fields for 45 years, still to this day. And, you know, I always struggle with agriculture as an industry, as a policy matter, because it's so personal to me that I know inside and out. And for too long, agriculture in the Central Valley has meant farmers only and not farmworkers. When we struggle to get access to quality drinking water for rural communities, for too often, ag leaders have been silent when that struggle is being faced by farmworkers and rural residents. When we see farmworkers who don't have access to healthcare, agriculture has been silent in that fight. And for me, if agriculture benefits from farmworkers, then agriculture should advocate for farmworkers. In order for us to thrive, we must coexist and co-thrive. And for too long, I've seen those as separate matters. When we saw the last administration separate families and put kids in cages, I didn't see any agriculture leader, much less a Republican leader in the valley, stand up and say it was wrong. And for me, that hurts personally, because I know that for years agriculture in Fresno have been fighting for immigration reform. But there's a basic morality question for us all, and it's how we treat the most vulnerable. And for years and years, kids were separated, torn apart, kids were adopted to other families while their parents got deported. And too many of us stood silent while that occurred. And so I understand firsthand the opportunity that this country gives you with the expectation that you be a good member of society and a productive member of society. And I'm critical, because I've seen the opportunities that agriculture gives families who have a third-grade education from Mexico. And, you know, it's, I'm hopeful that comprehensive immigration reform will pass. I'm also extremely sensitive to the notion that there's different workers in our agriculture industry and in the country in general. Prior to the pandemic, essential workers were defined as government employees, police and firefighters. During the pandemic, everybody became essential, especially farmworkers and those in the poultry plants and those in sheds and out in the heat. But those essential workers picking our crops and putting food on our table and cutting the chicken were not treated as essential first responders. They weren't given access to healthcare. They weren't given pay and safety precautions. To be quite frank with you, poultry plants in my district left a bad taste in my mouth, because as the pandemic was at the peak, they added more lines to production, and people lost their lives. And these are all difficult decisions. But the fact is, the Latino community has had the largest number of deaths during the pandemic, and it's the immigrant community that took the majority of the blow of the pandemic. And yet, we still have to fight for a poultry worker to be considered an ag worker on immigration reform. It's unacceptable, and it's a long time coming. And I do hope that my representative at their federal level and his colleagues will find common ground. And maybe, you know, we should simply, instead of asking for immigration reform, just rename it more water for the valley, because that seems to be the only thing that gets bipartisan support in the Central Valley. And what good is water in the Central Valley if you don't have farmworkers to pick those crops? So I hope, Mr. Cunha, that you share my comments with some of your colleagues. I want to see agriculture thrive in the valley, but I also want to see those workers thrive, and it shouldn't cost them their lives in order for them to be able to provide for their families. So with that, I'll support this resolution.
Right. Anybody else? Mr. Councilmember Betterfield?
Yes. Manuel, when you got the call from, you know, you can sit there, when you got the call from Secretary Mayorkas wondering what this council was going to do, did he happen to mention if he was going to go to the border and close the border at all and shut the border down and shut hundreds of thousands of illegal people from coming in? I mean, I know he's focused on what Fresno is going to do today, but I think he might want to be focused on the drugs coming across the border, the human trafficking coming across the border, the people violating our laws, the people who have COVID. And there's no mask mandate for those folks. They're able to just come into the border, no vaccine mandate. I guess we'll be talking about mandating all our Americans here, but no vaccine mandates for them. You know, as far as, as long as the border remains as porous and open as it is, it's difficult for me to support these kinds of things. If you want to really reform immigration, you got to shut the border. You got to close the border. And frankly, the last administration, which was brought up to shut the border, and we saw an economy that boomed, and we saw people that had low wages, their wages rise. When you have this porous border and the border coming through, it's a complete travesty and a tragedy, and that's what we're seeing. Yes, and all of us are immigrants, there's no question about it, but there is a difference with legal versus illegal immigration. We can't ignore that. I know we want to ignore that, but I can't ignore that. And I've researched the bill, HR 1603. There are people who feel very much so that it is an amnesty bill. It does appear to be that way to me. I know, you know, I spoke to Manuel, he disagrees with that, and I respect that. But I can't support these kinds of bills if they are amnesty, number one, which it appears to me, as I looked at many comments from many congressmen on both sides, but also when we're continuing to leave the border open. And what is happening on the border just continues to allow a flooding of illegals coming into this country. And it's unacceptable, it's a tragedy. And when we talk about people in cages, we've seen what the Biden administration has been doing, and it is a tragedy. And when we finally, and I'll finish with this, when we talk about the most vulnerable people, it isn't immigrants, it's the unborn. And allowing abortion to take place is the greatest sin of all. And that's what's happening with the most vulnerable, abortion. That needs to change as well. But I'm sorry, I can't support this. Actually, I'm not sorry, I don't support this. And I would encourage, Manuel, when you speak to Secretary Mayorkas, he do his job and close the border.
Thank you, Councilmember Betterfield. I'll just be very brief. I'll say, Mr. Cunha, thank you for the work you've been doing. You've always been an advocate, you, your organization, whether it's agricultural formalized or not. I know you've always been at the forefront of really ensuring that our immigrant community feels supported. And I'll take a different approach than my colleague. Don't tell the secretary to close the border, because if you did that, the economy of this state and this country would collapse. We all know exactly the billions and billions of dollars that our immigrant community contributes to this. And here's what I'll say in perspective here for the city of Fresno. I know, because I represent a large immigrant community. And I know today we're talking about, you know, the farm workforce modernization specifically. But we all know that our immigrant community, whether they're documented or undocumented, are also entrepreneurs, they're employers, they're business owners, they pay taxes, and guess what? They pay the taxes that actually go to pay every single council member's salary, our meal reimbursements, and our mileage. So we are literally biting and talking about the hands that feed us in this city and in this country. And I just want to make sure that for the record, we all know and understand exactly who's driving this economy. Because I have 42 food processing plants in my district that contribute millions and millions of dollars to the coffers of this city. And I know because during COVID, I went out there at 4:30 in the morning, and I saw who was going inside those facilities working and why, because they didn't have a choice. They were deemed essential, if you recall, by the government. So they actually did not have the choice to zoom in or work from home or, I don't know what else, you know, folks ended up doing, dialing in or whatnot. But yes, I'm going to support this bill. I do also think that it's a step in the right direction, but we truly do need comprehensive immigration reform. I know that you've been at the forefront of that conversation, and I just wanted to publicly thank you for the work that you and your organization and all the folks that came and advocated today have been doing for a number of years. I think we're going to get there, and I think we're going to get there very soon, because I think this pandemic has shown our country exactly what the definition of essential means. And I know a lot of those folks that go out there in 108-degree weather, and here's, and guess what? They don't even complain about that. They do it with a smile, they do it every single day, because they want to put food on their table. They're not asking for handouts, they're not asking for anything free, they're just asking for an opportunity to be treated fairly, and I think that moves us in the right direction. And I'll, I know Councilmember Carbasi didn't want to mention it, but Councilmember Arias did. I will thank President Ronald Reagan for having the guts to do it. Hey, we got to thank him for having Councilmember Arias up here. What would we do without Councilmember Arias?
You know, if I knew this, I wasn't going to quote Reagan if I had known.
We would have been done at 3:30.
But with that, Mayor, not sure if you wanted to say a few words about this item before we wrap up and vote on this. I think Councilmember Carbasi, did you want to make a motion, or did you make a motion already?
I make a motion to approve with the changes.
Second by Councilmember Soria, and Mayor?
Council President, before the mayor speaks, I just want to say for the record that I enjoyed my 12 years of picking crops in the fields of Fresno County. I invite anyone to go pick fields with the farmworkers, and by all means, they will not be threatened by you taking their jobs. And lastly, this is, I think, first and only time that we will be voting on something in which Devin Nunes, David Valadale, and Jim Costa also support. So I just want to put that on the record.
Councilmember, you do a ride-along with PD for a full shift. I'll go pick the fields for a day.
Okay, before this goes, Mayor, I know you want to weigh in, because you've been very supportive of this effort as well.
Yeah, so thank you. And having worked in the fields many, many summers in my youth, having grapes all around me when I grew up in Fowler, I can tell you I do not want to work in the fields. And so I have a tremendous respect for those who come and farm our crops. I have a tremendous respect for those who work in our food processing plants. And we are the land of immigrants, and I believe in comprehensive immigration reform like all of you. And that includes controlling our borders, and that includes, you know, establishing a pathway to legal citizenship and a number of things. And I got to tell you, I spent many, many years in the Major City Chiefs Association and across the board, Republican, Democrat, police chiefs alike from major cities, we all agreed about what comprehensive immigration reform was. And we also agreed about what the role of law enforcement was in a community. And it was to not inquire about a person's immigration status. It was about making sure that people didn't feel that they were in the shadows, that they would be a person who would be willing to come forward with information, to be a good community member. And so I do believe this is the right approach, and I want to thank Councilmember Carbasi for bringing it forward. And repeating something that was said earlier by Council President Chavez, you know, during this COVID period, we had a lot of farmworkers that continued to work in the field, and they were undocumented. We all know that, we recognize it, we see it, and they took great risk. But the ones that took even greater risk were the ones in the food processing plants, because they were in a closed environment, where we all know that COVID spreads more rapidly in a closed environment. So they were deemed essential. And I think today, passing this resolution, quite frankly, demonstrates how essential they are to the city of Fresno. And in fact, I have a letter in front of me for Senator Feinstein and Senator Padilla that I'm going to be signing and providing to Mr. Cunha as well. So I know this is a controversial issue, but quite frankly, I think it's a human rights issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And I don't, the only part I disagree is, I really don't think this is controversial. I think most folks understand and see the value of the work and contributions of our immigrants. I know oftentimes we frame things in different contexts, but at the end of the day, I think we're all on the same page, and I think we're all rowing in the same direction. And I know we're going to get there. Sometimes we take turns and, you know, slow down, but we never stop. You guys never stop, because we can't. And so I appreciate what you guys do every single day. With that, I don't have anybody else punched up. There's a motion made by Councilmember Carbasi, seconded by Councilmember Soria. Any opposition?
Council President, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, can I just have one more thing?
No, we closed public comment already, Mr. Romero. Yes, yes, you're going to oppose. Okay, so we have one opposition to the item. Oh, I'm sorry, do we have to take public comment? Do we have anybody in public comment?
You already did.
You already did that? That's right. Okay. My coffee's wearing out for the day. All right, motion carries, six one, with Councilmember Betterfield voting no.
Let the record show all the Democrats supported it.
And the Republican mayor.
Our progressive, our progressive Republican mayor.
All right, last item is, we have a special meeting. All right, last item is, we have a special meeting at 3:30 that we are going to deal in closed session. City Attorney, you want to make the announcement and see if there'll be anything to report after?
Yes, there's three items on for closed session, conference with real property negotiator regarding Grizzly Stadium, conference with real property negotiator regarding Hotel Fresno, conference with real property negotiator regarding APN 438-022-21, on which Councilwoman Soria has a conflict, and the emergency closed session item, as earlier reported. There will be nothing to report out after closed session.